Good morning, folks. Welcome to our annual planning meeting. We'll do the first order of business, the call will call for board members. Who manages that?
Terry's not here.
Terry's not here.
Director Smith?
Yeah.
Director Chris?
Here.
Director Russell?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
And Director Samson?
Director Samson. Sorry. You're all.
It's a village.
Most of this day is going to be led by our facilitator and Ben. So I'll just open by saying thank you to all the staff who have, I'm sure, done an incredible amount of work in the background to prepare for this day. So thank you so much. I know we never see the full extent to which you spend weeks and many hours amidst the rest of the things that you have to cover on a daily basis. So thank you so much for making the time and for the folks who've taken their a day off to come and be here and be part of this and for the folks who are going to tune in as well. You know, we're not doing virtual, right?
Right. We'll post the video immediately.
Yeah. Which is great. So folks who couldn't spend their day here, it'll be great that folks can actually see this. We've got a lot of things to cover today and I think, you know, this is a chance foremost, I think, for us to see maybe the full arc of all the things that we have in front of us over the coming year, which is a lot. And there's no way that, you know, we could probably dive into any one of the topics that we're going to cover today. We could spend the whole day on it to really deep dive. So obviously, we don't have the time to do a deep dive on things. But I do think that there's an opportunity here for us to capture things that we want to follow up on and that we have our committees in which we can really deep dive if that's the appropriate place to make forward progress on things. But I think there's an intention to not lose track of anything so that we don't feel like if we make a comment of like, I'd like to know more about this, that's going to get captured so that we don't have to worry about tracking those things going forward. And I know that this is a huge chance for all of us to learn. And so I do hope with our time that we do have where we can have dialogue back and forth. And I think if we can, to the extent that we can really be judicious of our time because we have so much to cover, that if we can try to, you know, ask our questions and be really pretty quick with things, we'll have more time to have other people have a chance to ask questions because ultimately, again, we don't have enough time to really go into depth in any one of the topics. So I think therein, let's try to make time for others and listen to each other and add to the conversation, ask questions. So with that, I'll say that.
Yeah, so we're fortunate we have Brent Ives here today to support us in what we're trying to go through and Brett will introduce all of that. So thanks, Brett, for providing the support and also, of course, trying to keep us on schedule, which is maybe the challenge for him for the day. So with that, Brent.
Sure, thank you. It's a pleasure being with here with you. I'm anxious to learn out a lot of, learn about a lot of what you do too. I got to look a little bit at the short 84 slide deck last night. And so there is a lot of work to do and you do so much. And this is the tops of the, this is the icing on the cake, the stuff that you're going to talk about today. The baseline work is out there being done every day, as you all know. I am Brent Ives. I've done this kind of work for about 25 years, almost distinctly with special districts. I was also on your side of the dais for 23 years at the city of Tracy. I was on the city council there and the mayor for the last eight years of that in Tracy. And water and wastewater and things like, those are the real, those are the real essential services. And those are, after my time on as mayor, I learned being with water districts and wastewater agencies and others in the state, that's where you see the real challenges are. I mean, the life, lifeblood challenges. Today, my purpose here is to try to make sure that the intended interface, the intended interactions happen, that you all get a chance to ask the questions, that you don't be concerned, there are no stupid questions. I was on the council for 23 years. I remember my last few years, I was just up there, I just said, you know, I know I've been here for a long time and I probably should know this, but I don't. So please explain to me what that acronym means because I just think I'd never heard it before. Anyway, everyone can ask questions. It's good to ask questions. That's the idea of this meeting, right? Today, this aboard retreat is about a year's worth of information that can happen in one day. And so this is a really big opportunity, not just for staff who's really teed up and worked hard to present for you, but for you, we're going to let the staff do their presentation. Then we expect you to ask questions. We want you to have concerns, thoughts, different ways of looking at things. There's a number of ways to capture those. I'm going to put some of those on the board. If they're not captured somewhere, I'll just put a little note up here so we can have them for later. Those from there, they may go to committee. They may also go into the strategic plan that you're planning on working on later this year. And so lots of planning opportunities for you all. One of the questions I always ask as a board member or as a council member is, is this going to cost a lot and am I going to see it soon? How's this going to affect the rates? And let's just get to that one. Most usually when we're going to do extra stuff, it's going to affect the rates eventually. Okay, that's my first answer. I'm not even supposed to answer questions, but so that's the kind of way we're going to do it. Really needs to be open. If you need to get up and get something to drink or eat, go feel free if you need to use the facilities and so forth. But don't be afraid to ask questions and provide thoughts, ideas, et cetera, et cetera. And you know where it's going to go. If it's extra to what's being presented, we're ready here to make it work. The other thing I've got to do is watch the time for you so that we don't only get half of this done today, but get it all done, okay? Any thoughts or questions first? Anything that you all would like to make sure we talk about? One thing I really wanted to talk about at the board retreat was this. Yes?
How would you articulate our goals for today and how will we feel like we accomplish them at the end of the meeting?
Yes, good question. And Ben can speak to that too. My goal is clarity. It's all clarity between you that come and attend meetings and have to make policy decisions and those of you that are here every day, working it every day. Making sure that when, that as we're talking about things today, that eyes open up and you say, ah, I get it now, I see the connections. If there's something you don't understand, that we get to note it. I mean, we may not be able to, you know, solve that today, but we'll note that so it'll go to a committee or maybe go to you specifically or maybe get into the strategic plan, it may be on your agenda. There's a number of places it can be expressed, but you'll recognize it when you see it.
I would add to that, Brent, alignment. You know, you never have perfect alignment, but I think for me, this is an opportunity in these discussions for the board to move towards alignment among the board with staff in terms of the items we're going to be bringing to the committees this coming year, our sense of priorities. These items were developed. I'd say maybe in a more typical year, the process would have engaged the board upfront on your concepts. We, you know, obviously had a bit of a turnover and thought for this year, what made the most sense is what we did, draft up our ideas. Many came from your comments and discussions at board meetings and committee meetings. Others came from staff directly. So anyway, enough with that, we'll get into this and I'm kicking this off. You know, this is really a forward-looking day, but wanted to take a few minutes to look back, to reflect on really, you know, for me, another impressive year by staff in the midst of the historic drought. The work continues and a lot of good work. And in fact, the few slides I have, I'm calling them highlights, but it's really, in a way, the highlights of the highlights are illustrative because the numbers I got, I'm like, I'm not doing 20 slides. So I condense them. So I just, this reflects a sense of the highlights of last year. So.
Is it a clicker?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, he switched on.
Don't point at the screen. Point at the computer.
No, no, I didn't. Sorry about that.
No, no, that was on me. Okay. So there's a couple pages. I'll go quick, right? The pace is quick, but questions are always invited. Of course, the first one is so dominating and spread through the entire organization and it continued into this past calendar year. Organizationally wide, such impressive body of work from operational, conservation, finance, legal, I mean, the entire engineering, the entire organization coming together to address this historic time. We completed the final reporting this year, but this was our first time for a temporary urgency change petition. There was a lot of skepticism going into that, but we did work through with the stakeholders successfully. And now we do have this going forward as another tool in our toolbox to, for water shortage years. And I think the board knows what this was, essentially an agreed upon protocols to reduce stream releases during this historic drought period. We got 5.5 million this past year in grant funding, applied for additional 27 million with about another 27 million in outstanding requests. And we worked closely with Marin City Community, got a successful partner grant award there to address aging cast iron piping, completed Castagna Phase One and are beginning Phase Two. And as the board knows, this was a really important project that brought in capacity to bring in additional water during the drought and going forward. A number of capital projects in various phases, these are the ones that were completed. 13 projects, 10 pipeline, one pump station, a big retaining wall and a host of projects that are, you know, got through different phases of planning and design and are ready to move into construction. Completed a new lease for the Mount Tam site and increasing annual revenues for the district of about $400,000 with a lump sum payment. A number of important security upgrades on our computer system, improvements in the network, near completion of our water supply roadmap that, of course, we've been working on. Continued conservation activities exceeding the state's goal with one of the highest in the state demand reductions. It's very notable for the district, our conservation program and our community. Recognition from the governor, government finance on our financial accounting protocols and systems, it's notable. Completed the refi of the 2002 and have some annual savings associated with that. We developed and adopted our first hazard mitigation plan that in addition to a good informative document, also positions us for FEMA grant funding. Turf conversions, you know, continued that program, a bit of a dip from last year, I believe, but you know, these are permanent, long-term savings going forward. Again, we noted our residential gallons per day, 4% lower than even 2021 and among the lowest in our history and really well positioned statewide in terms of that being an indicator. A lot of work on our website in so many ways. It's really this continuous improvement process, revamp. To have a 50% open rate for something that goes out to, I don't know how many people, hundreds if not thousands, is remarkable and speaks to the quality and value to our customers. We began, you'll hear more today about our DEI training efforts. The initial phase was completed. That's diversity, equity, inclusion that you're probably aware of, not to start the acronym, but we'll have plenty of those. So much work in really acknowledging Vicki, who really takes most of this on in terms of COVID, employee support, all the compliance activities and hopefully, I think we're all feeling we're on the downside of that. A number of recruitments and a nice balance of internal and external. Many of these are cascading recruitment, so one vacancy, you fill it internal, then you have another internal and another. So it's a high number, but a number of those were the cascading. We updated a flat staffing program that allows for non-competitive promotions. We've talked before, but it's a really important element of what we do, our district employee recognition program. This past year, through the quarterly efforts, over 100 employees received recognition. We got a very nice recognition from MCL on our fisheries program.
What does that mean, non-competitive promotion?
Yeah, so there's certain select job classes that move through like competitive standards through a job kind of set of classes. So you come in as an entry and once you've been here a certain time and can have the competencies and pass an exam, you move up into the next without going through the competitive process for some.
For hire.
Yeah, for hire.
Can everybody hear, did everybody hear the question back there? Okay, just want to make sure we're talking loud enough.
We can hear the conversation. We cannot read anything on the screen.
Oh. The font's too small?
Yes.
Yeah, so this, I don't know who said it, was that you, Roger? Sorry about that. All the other presentations will be legible.
Yeah, the font gets bigger on the remainder of the slides. It's like two or three.
This is.
So many good things to cover.
Yeah. This, of course, will be posted for reference. Anyway, you know, a lot of work, of course, at Lagunitas Creek in terms of restoration sites, you'll be hearing more today. Record high numbers of Coho juveniles, which is great, of course. Work on the BIFUP, we'll be talking more about that today. So looking forward, just briefly, Brett mentioned strategic plan. We do think we have an opportunity now to, this coming year, begin a strategic planning process that I think in future annual sessions will, right, the goal will have this long-term strategic plan and link our annual plans to the broader strategic plan going forward. But I think many ideas today may be captured for the strategic planning discussion. So if something comes to you that may not feel like necessarily an annual goal you want to put, but you'd like it captured because it came to you now for the strategic planning discussion, feel free to raise those. I also just wanted to touch on organizational efficiencies and, you know, I think it's important for our customers to understand and appreciate during times like this, really all times, we strive for continuous improvement, but particularly when, you know, we're going to be asking our customers for a relatively, you know, heavy lift in terms of rates, that we're doing our part, which means looking for opportunities to do our work more effectively and efficiently. So as you know, we're currently piloting the customer service office open Monday through Thursday instead of five days a week and communicating that to our customers. It's a pilot at this point where, you know, at this point, it's just a concept, but we do want to move the idea forward of considering more of a partnered in terms of the metering and billing services we provide to a good number of sanitation agencies in our service area that get our data and use that for billing and actually refer questions to our customer services staff that, you know, have them support our efforts a bit more. We're looking at, in our lab, should we have certification and competency for every analysis under the sun, even those we do once a year or quarterly? And we'll be talking more about that as well. There's opportunities to think about that. We are going to be talking somewhat about managed services for IT. Again, what's the right balance ultimately to use our limited resources for the work of the district and where may it make sense? And we'll talk more about that coming up today. And you'll hear a bit on increased paving costs and really starting to develop a thoughtful approach of how we engage our jurisdictions on their ever-increasing paving requirements. You'll see today, it's a pretty dramatic issue for it. So with that, I got through it in, you know, 10 minutes. Any questions? You know, that was just more a high level.
Any thoughts or questions on the review summary?
Sure. Sorry.
I'm good.
So help me understand your thought process around having a strategic plan that won't be done for a year, yet we're making huge decisions right now on rates, water supply, on infrastructure investment that'll have a four-year impact. So it feels like we're, we're making these massive decisions right now without a strategic plan and they're going to, they're going to be in place, these decisions really for four years. So how do we think about either accelerating the strategic plan or what goes into that strategic plan? Are we going to cover that here or is that the end of the strategic plan?
That's the end of the strategic planning discussion. It's a good point, you know, it's, I'd say it is what it is to some extent in that we don't have today a current updated strategic plan that naturally would link to what we're talking about today. But the concept and why it's brought forward is I'd like us, and I think your question supports it in future years, we would have a long-term strategic plan and these annual would be referencing and supporting the initiatives that are identified in those long-term goals. So I agree, I think with your implicit question, that that would be a more natural way to go and I agree with that. And I think in future years, we'll be positioned to do that.
Let me, let me just say, Ben, I work on strategic plans for other agencies and I can tell you, this is informative for a strategic plan. And this is the meat of it, basically, for the first year and maybe some of these aren't going to get them in the first year, maybe it's the second year, maybe they're three years sometimes. And so you're really into the beginning phase of a strategy now. If you know you're going to do a strategic plan, then this will be perfectly integrated to that in some respects. And none of it should be left out. You should have it all captured. So you can almost call it the initial step.
So our next one, I think, is Sean, you're up, so I'll pass this. You know, the setup obviously is intended to be less formal. Oh, so you are going to stand up here.
We were going to have everyone just see where they were. See the lines. But yeah, whatever makes.
It's easier.
Yeah.
The U and the slide, so thanks for doing that.
So we're going to focus in on the watershed and some of the major priorities that we've got for the watershed over the coming year and the touch points that we'll have with the committee and the board throughout the process. So the first one we're going to talk about is kind of our intentions for the biodiversity, fires and fuels integrated plan and then go into the important work that we're doing in Lagunitas Creek in terms of the restoration planning and implementation. And then go back to the watershed and talk about Azalea Hill, a long-term planning process we've been on with the trail project and the work that's going on to implement that and then move on to our watershed recreation management.
So in terms of, one more process comment, our thought is, but we'll play it by ear, is that Sean just has a handful of slides, he'd get through the entire presentation and then there'd be questions on the different elements from the board and discussion and then we'd move to public comments at that point on the watershed element.
Great, thanks, Ben. So surprisingly, or not surprisingly, we've actually crept into almost our fifth year of implementation under the BIFIP. The BIFIP replaced our 1994 plant. Our 1994 plant was really focused on building and constructing fuel breaks through and around the watershed. And now with some of the more modern issues that we've been seeing in terms of expansion of invasive plants, pathogens on the watershed, this form of sudden oak death, climate change, kind of extreme wildfire conditions and weather, we've been seeing a need to scale up and expand some of our fuel reduction work in new ways. And that was the intention of adopting the BIFIP and it really had these overarching goals of minimizing the risk from wildfire and really protecting our water infrastructure and assets, preserving and enhancing our existing biological resources and provided an adaptive framework for making updates periodically. And that's what we'll be doing in this next year is really going through that adaptive management process. And we're going to be doing that with some baseline work that the district has been working on with some of our partners from One Tam over the last couple of years. In 2019, 2020, the district and other public land managers invested in an updated fine-scale vegetation map. That's become the foundation for this forest health strategy that the land managers have been working on. And that's a critical piece to understanding how we can kind of scale up this important work in a meaningful way across all the public lands. And more granular, the district has been working on refining some wildfire modeling work on the watershed using that fine-scale map and working with a consultant to understand the efficacy of our existing vegetation management work and looking at where we can do more work in a more kind of focused way to improve the watershed function and also protect our critical assets. The thing to kind of keep in mind is when the BIFIP was developed and adopted, we kind of identified a funding target that the district could sustainably fund over the years. And then we backed into these management numbers from that funding target in terms of our invasive work, our forest restoration work, our Douglas fir work. And now we're seeing a lot of funding opportunities at the state level, which we've been successful in getting grants from CAL FIRE, Coastal Conservancy to help us implement this. And so there's a kind of timely opportunity to amend our BIFIP through an addendum and actually expand some of our management acreage to allow us to be more successful and able to receive more funding on an annual basis to do this work. So that's really the intention over the next year. That's going to allow us to be kind of targeted in expanding some of the acreage and then also making some refinements to our best management practices and mitigation measures kind of based on the best available science that's been updated and some of the things we've learned over the last five years of implementation. Now, this is really all positioning us for a block grant with CAL FIRE, the Coastal Conservancy and the Department of Natural Resources that One Tam land managers have been having a conversation about. So we're really hopeful that kind of moving forward with this One Tam forest health strategy, this wildfire modeling and this addendum will give us kind of a framework to ask for some significant funding that'll carry the BIFIP forward for the next five years. Now, moving off the watershed and downstream into Lake Lagunitas Creek, we're moving forward with a lot of restoration planning in the Lagunitas Creek. We've been doing this for over 20 years. This is a portion of our Lagunitas stewardship plan and a requirement of our water board order WR95-17. This is important work. We've gotten a significant amount of funding to help us with the planning and we're really targeting some of the early studies that identified about 10 large woody debris structures per 300 feet upstream reach. And so that's what this restoration design is developed around and really recognizing that dams do two things. They cut off the input of sediment for spawning gravel sizes and also wood into the stream system. And so we're trying to restore those processes through this project. We've got two restoration phases that we've broken this up into. This is all downstream of Kent Lake and through the Samuel P. Taylor State Parks. We partnered with State Parks to allow us to implement this work on their property. We have eight sites in Phase One that are fully funded through the design phase and then we've got a second Phase Two with five sites that will require an additional $1 million of funding and we're currently seeking grants for that. The entire project is going to cost about $8 million and that has some ancillary support components to support our monitoring work as well as our implementation. Now, the really success of this project to date is that we've been able to get this all grant funded. So we've partnered with our, partnered with California Department of Fish and Wildlife for two planning grants for over $1 million and that's taking our first phase all the way to the 100% sign. So periodically through this year, you'll see updates on the design work that we're doing and have an opportunity to comment. We've also secured our first implementation grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation's Watersmart Program that'll take us through Sites One, Two and Three with $1.4 million. And then recently, we've submitted two grants through DWR to help us with additional sites. And then we're targeting funding this month and in the subsequent year for CDFW, the Wild Bed Conservation Board and others, to get us the funding that we need to design Phase Two and start to collect the funding that we'll need for implementing Phase Two. And so this is a long-term project. What you're going to be seeing is restoration design being advanced with the final design intended to come forward in April 2024. We'll be working with our engineering department to put together the construction bid documents in May and then we'll be, begin implementation in the June through October of 2024 timeframe. And as we secure more funding, we'll be updating contracts to advance that design of Phase Two as well. So moving back up to the watershed, we'll touch on Azalea Hill. This is a project that the district has been at for over 10 years of planning to get this project in place and we started implementation about two and a half years ago. This is the project sign that we developed out there just to kind of keep people updated on the progress and the different phases of work that we have. We've kind of broken the project up into three phases, a hiking trail on Equestrian Route up and over Azalea Hill, a multi-use route along Azalea Hill. And the project. And the project is really intended to provide real safety connection through the watershed up to Bellinas Fairfax Road into the Pine Mountain road area. It's also designed to help protect water quality by getting some bridges installed and keeping people out of the stream systems that are adjacent to our lakes, and providing the community with access to these reservoirs so that they connect with this landscape in a new way. The really neat part about this project is this was all social trails. This section was an old road cut that was called the Liberty Gulch Road that went to the old branch that was in Alpine Lake. And then this was a fisherman's trail. So we were able to utilize these kind of social trails on the landscape when we were making this multi-use trail. That's really critical. So the last year and a half or so, we've been focused on constructing these bridges on the watershed. These are significant features. All of this material is in remote locations being packed out there. We've gotten a grant from the California Conservation North Bay to help us with that material movement, all in that Phase 2 of the project. And then our maintenance crews have been constructing these features on the watershed through the last year. We have two more of these to build this summer, and then we'll be done with Phase 2. And then in the next year, we'll be focused on a large retaining wall at Bellinas Fairfax Road among the Liberty Gulch section. And that's a really critical connective feature, and we have a grant from the State Parks Regional Trails Program to fund that of about $1 million. And that'll also fund a number of additional kind of stream crossings that are smaller than bridges, the rock crossings and puncheons and features like that that we'll be working on. You'll be seeing a construction package later in February that'll come forward for review, and then we'll be working on actually implementing that May through October. And then simultaneously, we'll be continuing with our rare plant work. And I think the key piece to keep in mind about this project is that rare plant work is really a long-term effort and a really expensive component. So when we think of future trail opportunities on the watershed, we really want to be looking at how we avoid working in serpentine habitats that have these rare plants, because that creates a lot of complexity for us to implement projects. That rare plant monitoring comes with a lot of conditions from CDFW, long-term monitoring plants and mitigation requirements that we'll be implementing and conducting a lot of monitoring for the years to come. Now, we'll also be starting our planning work around the hiking trail and decommissioning the social trails, as well as making the connection to the Azalea Hill parking lot, and we'll be seeking grants for that improvement of the Azalea Hill trail bed in the future. So now, moving on to our watershed recreation management planning process. Over a year ago, we started this out with a public scoping process where we got early input from the community about how they wanted to see this planning effort move forward. For the last 10 months or so, we've been moving through community workshops on various topics and getting input from the community about how they wanted to see the watershed make some adjustments to our recreation management efforts. We've had site visits to connect community members with the area that we're talking about, and then we've conducted a visitor use survey. We're updating our 2013 INTERCEPT survey through direct contact with our visitors and getting input on what they want to see and how they're experiencing the watershed. The next steps in this is we hope to have a report of our updated watershed census survey in April, and then in early fall, we'll have a draft of the recreation management planning process, which is really kind of a feasibility guiding document. And then we'll be looking at opportunities of how we can make adjustments to our operations through either addendums, amendments to our roads and trails plan, or it can actually be incorporated into our current roads and trails plan, or might be just kind of stewardship programs that we can implement without going through SEQA review. So implementing the recommendations, we're hopeful that we'll have, you know, good discussion with the watershed committee over the next year. We'll start bringing this plan into formation and then moving forward with some implementation projects in 2024 timeframe. So in summary, BIFIP addendum, that's one of the key pieces. The thing to keep in mind is that is a supportive component of the One Tam Forest Health Strategy to really position us for future grant opportunities to help fund this important work on the watershed with the intention of continuing to protect our surrounding communities and critical water infrastructure. Azalea Hill retaining walls is going to be the focus of our 2023 work, as well as additional rock crossings, culverts, and puncheons along that Liberty Gulch section. A lot of opportunities for volunteer engagement through that section as well, and then also a lot of rare plant monitoring work that's ongoing. Lagunitas Creek restoration, we'll continue to fundraise for it for the future phases. Design work will continue through 2023 with implementation in 2024. And the watershed recreation management plan, as I just mentioned, we're hoping to have a draft in early November. So that's the watershed report. Any questions or comments? Happy to take this.
I was going to say, for the BIFIP piece here and the addendum piece, I think there's way more work that needs to be done than it's supposed to dollars out there. So what would be helpful for me is understanding how much money we need to get us back on track to the initial implementation cycle without grants and not rewire it to get us back up, and then any grant money we're hopefully fortunate to get and start to sell some other stuff as well.
Yeah, so we have, like, right now, the BIFIP target at five years was $3 million. We're currently internally having about $2.3 million for implementing that, and we're , you know, filling that gap with grants currently. And so, you know, our intention with this One Tam strategy is to have a proposal go in that brings in about $1 to $2 million a year for the next five years through grants.
Sean, thanks. Thanks for another great presentation. Appreciate it. You know, regarding the Azalea Hill project, you've mentioned the timeline now that it's been about 10 years. You did speak to the cost, but nevertheless, I imagine it's quite high. Overall, it's, it illustrates how daunting it is to undertake trail improvement projects within the watershed, all the various factors that add up to those timelines and probably high expense. Are there lessons that learned from this project that we can apply that may improve the efficiency of future efforts at trail improvement? You mentioned one regarding, you know, maybe avoiding serpentine rock environments and the rare plant surveys required. Are there other key things that we could learn that could facilitate this?
Yeah, definitely. So I think really specifically, it is kind of looking at our resources, overlaying those with our existing trail network and our social trail network, and looking for opportunities on our social trail network to, one, close social trails down that are redundant, and also kind of change of use of some social trails is a more efficient way than trying to build brand-new trails. And Azalea Hill used that model, right? That was the approach it took. The thing is, that was about, you know, creating a safety connection, and we should be thinking about areas where we can make those improvements that avoid serpentine habitat in order to reduce kind of that environmental burden of compliance on the project.
Great. You also spoke about volunteer opportunities. Are there options for further leveraging community participation or stakeholder groups to, again, accelerate?
Yeah, and so the last year, you know, COVID was pretty disruptive to the One Tam collaboration. There was a real big effort going on with One Tam to create a trails crew and kind of a centralized area to have some trail volunteer support that could go around all the land managers and to support these kind of projects. Due to COVID, their staffing in that program has gone away, and so that's kind of a gap that we were putting a lot of resources into, and maybe as part of our recreation management plan, we start to think about what does revitalizing a trail volunteer program within the district look like, and how do we bring that about?
Thank you, Sean. The stuff you get to work on is like a lot of fun, and I think it's also it's a piece of running our district that is most poorly understood by our customers, that we're not just a water district, that we have all these other, we have all this land that provides us our water, and this is what it takes to manage it well, and so that it continues to provide water. So I think the first question, it's kind of more just, and maybe there's an answer, a short one, or just something to follow upon, is how are we going to tell that story better, especially as we go through a ready setting process, to explain to people what that, you know, what are the money that we dedicate to our watershed, what it really is about? So I'm sure you guys are already thinking about this, but just something to highlight. On the fisheries side, I'm wondering if you can talk about what is happening in Walker Creek, you know, as another really important, potentially really important COO stream. We focus largely on Lagunitas Creek for good reason, and we're far from done, and the work that's being done is fantastic. But I'm curious, especially as we maybe start thinking about a long-range plan, what do you see happening in Walker Creek?
Yeah, I'm going to call a friend and bring in Jonathan Kaler, our fisheries biologist, to kind of give an update on Walker Creek a bit, and then that's something we can absolutely bring to a future watershed committee as well.
Yeah, I would just say that Walker Creek has, it's a very different creek than Lagunitas, in that it's mostly privately owned, so that presents a significant challenge in terms of what can be done there. We've really collaborated with the Resource Conservation District of Marin County, that's, they've really taken the lead, and they have long relationships with a lot of the ranch lands out there. And so we, we're certainly involved in those conversations. We do some limited monitoring. We're not legally required to or mandated to do that, and that's, I think, you know, something we can discuss. But yeah, it's a very different watershed, but it does have potential. We do collaborate with the agencies that are involved there.
Great. And as, something that's downstream, absolutely, I think that's a really important nexus for our water supply. Also, you know, a lot of our conservation objectives for fisheries are tied to fish population numbers, and the more that we understand COO life history, we understand the importance of not relying on one single stream to be the stronghold, but it's a network of streams, and Walker Creek being in proximity, it makes it really, I think, more important than maybe what we've thought about in the past when it comes to fishery management. Jumping over to the recreation management plan, what do you see happening between April and November as you go from your last meeting to drafting the plan?
That's a lot of like the behind-the-scenes work, right? We've been taking all this opportunity to get input from communities, we've met with stakeholders, we've gathered all this information, now we actually have to put it down on paper. And so we'll be actually developing kind of the structure of the report, starting to populate it, working with staff to understand kind of outcomes that are aligned with some of the comments we've heard from the community, and try to figure out where we have the capacity to carry forward different elements.
I think, building on Matt's question, I'm curious about your feelings about how appropriately funded your efforts are, and how integrated they are with Brett and the rate-setting budgeting that we're doing. Are you woefully underfunded? Are you adequately funded? Are you so much money you don't know what to do with it? And what are the options? Like, what are the scenarios that it asks that you have from your group and your department that you're getting and you're happy about, or that you're not getting? And maybe in the next watershed meeting, you can highlight the ones that you wish you had, or as soon as possible, because we're doing this rate-setting process now, so that we can understand the trade-offs that you're making and the investments that we could make and that we can consider in our budgeting process in detail. I'd love to see.
Great. Yeah, we can bring that back.
All right. I did want to just check in for public comments, so if you could just indicate by raising your hand if any members were public want to comment on this thing. We'll start right there.
Me?
Yeah. Just to keep us on track, I will time for three minutes and just give you a second.
I can't see it. I'm David Piar, I live in Corred Madera. Sean, congratulations, number one, on all the great habitat work that's going on in the creek. Marin Water has a long history of doing incredible habitat work in that creek, and maybe it's paying off. The COO juvenile numbers are, seem pretty impressive to me, so maybe we're making some progress. I ride regularly in the watershed, and so one of the things I observe is French broom, maybe Scotch broom. Honestly, I don't know the difference. But broom seems to be everywhere, and people who ride with me know that I'm constantly railing about it. In the past, we've had an acreage expansion number for broom in the watershed. Do we have that now, and do you know what that is?
Yeah, so we map broom every five years. We'll be mapping it next year. The last time we mapped it, we saw that we were having an expansion of about 50 acres a year, I believe. We know that that's reduced because of our management. We kind of do a perimeter control of our broom, and we're managing about 600 acres of broom a year, and there's about 900 acres that we're not managing.
I would just comment that 50 acres is higher than the 30-acre number we had in the late 2000s, early 2010s. So we're losing ground. I just, I'll make a comment. I really would like to see us get a hold of that in whatever way possible, and hopefully that'll be a big part of the watershed management plan process. Thanks.
Sean, I'm going to put you on the spot. You're doing incredible work with a very limited budget. If you had unlimited funds available, what would you be able to do, and what is that number? Do you need 50 million to do the job right, or 30 million? What's the figure?
I think we're doing really well with the grant funding to supplement the district's budget, and I think that grant funding gives some insight to the need that we have on the watershed. But some of those projects, right, are temporal in terms of, you know, we go through phases of trail projects or restoration efforts. I think there's lessons to be learned as we amend the BIFIP, and things we can talk about in terms of the biodiversity, fires, and fuels funding, and then recreation is another category, and restoration of the watershed generally has other needs. So that's a complicated one, but happy to continue that thinking with the watershed committee.
Well, watershed management is now eligible for capital funding. So what is the number you're going to ask for in order to increase your efforts as part of this whole discussion of capital replacement and meeting the capital needs of the district? This is one area that's been underfunded for years, and I'm just wondering whether or not you've got a number in mind for capital funding for the watershed.
No.
So we're just beginning with the committee?
Yeah.
Sean, thank you.
Just real quickly, and you may have pointed this out, when do you expect to dedicate Azalea Hill to an opening? I assume it's somewhere in 2024, and you may have had it up there, but I missed it, so...
We didn't have it up there because it is a little dependent on how much progress we're able to make in the next year. We do have two major bridges that we're working on right now that have to be completed. The retaining wall will be done, but will we complete, I think, there's like 20 stream crossings that need rock armoring and things of that nature. So we're hopeful by the fall of, by 2024 is a good, you know, goal, and we're hopeful that that Liberty Gulch section, right, the multi-use, potentially could be open by that time frame.
Because it's a star project, so it's important for the community to have a sense of what they're waiting for and how long they're waiting for. Thanks.
Are there other public comments? I just want to go backwards, because I have a good question. And I think this is partly what we're getting at. I'm aware of the amount of funding that's available right now for resource conservation work, and so a question to, not leave on the slide, maybe if we back at our watershed committee, is are we, could we be going after more grant dollars if we had the staffing capacity to keep up with the pace of what comes in? So, you know, in essence, are we staff limited to go after funding?
I think we're currently maybe project limited in terms of, right, to be successful for funding. Like, Azalea Hill is a project that's gone through SEQA, is ready to go, and that's been very fundable because of that. But I will note that trail projects historically have been really difficult to fund. We've just been kind of at this right time and very forward-thinking in how we're funding that. With our BIFIP, I think we're getting as much money as we can. We've been turned down in recent years because we have money, but there's this big ask going through the state right now for the regional grant, and that's going to be huge. For our fisheries restoration, I don't know if you can find a project that is being more successful and going after more grants in such a consistent way. So I think the next thing is, you know, what other projects do we want to do on the watershed and focus on? Getting those ready for funding is probably the need, more so than staffing to do them.
Okay, thank you.
And I think I'll just note that we are starting to think really about putting staff resources into some of our fisheries grants so we can have some more capacity to do that longer-term implementation monitoring.
Great, that's great.
Okay, I'm going to, I was just going to do a quick review. I think I've heard a couple of things. Most of what the public asked about, it seemed like it can go to committee. What you just talked about, Mr. Chair, seems like it's part of the strategic plan because it's kind of, what's the strategy for watershed? Well, that's a longer story than we're going to talk about today, but that's, would fit right into your strategic plan. So again, it gets back to committees and strategic plan. But there was one thing I picked up from you, Mr. Chair, about the public knowledge of what you, about what you do, all that you're doing for the watershed, and how the adequacy of that might be another thing that the committee would study, because it occurs to you when you see it all put here in one place, how much you're doing. But it doesn't mean you couldn't do more, but the public needs to know that you're... But the public needs to know that you're, you're adding that value in a, in a real way, as best as you can let the public know, which is always difficult. But I'm going to put it on here, that, that kind of communication of watershed project.
Yeah. The, if I could.
Yeah, you were there.
I, I captured some of the board comments and it's just an opportunity to kind of talk about how to go, you know, through the day, what do we do with these comments? Of course, every comment is being tracked some up here, but a number of us are taking good notes. If I go through these, a volunteer program, right, the suggestion is to wrap it into the, the rec planning process. And the Walker Creek, that may be a item that we think about as part of our strategic planning effort. Is it right, it's a long term, big issue that really needs that kind of conviction thought. This wishlist, I'm calling it, but Director Smith question in terms of, in context of the budgeting, we'll bring that as part of our rate discussion, an element of the watershed going forward. And then the kind of telling the story of what we do. The, we'll, we'll hear a bit from Adrian in an upcoming session about our overall story and likely how the watershed fits into that. So each item, I won't necessarily go through this at the end of every, we'll come back to the board with all the comments and how staff is proposing to address them, in what venue and what manner this coming year. So that'll be at a near term as we likely bring back a refined list of these goals and milestones as well, informed by this conversation.
Any other questions for Sean or Ben? Okay, let's move on to the next item. Ben, you want to? And that is human resources.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. I'm Vicky Gurey, Human Resources Manager. And I'll be presenting from here, but I may move over there. I do have challenges. The lighting over here is not so great, so I just wanted to let you know that in the beginning. So thank you for your attention. And I'll get started with our priorities. I'm going to talk about enhancements to our recruitment program, our onboarding, our new performance evaluation system that we kicked off, diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative that we've already started. We're geared to move forward to the next phase on that and employee engagement. So I'm going to start off with, again, like I said, the recruitment enhancements. So I recently attended a conference, CALPERA, California Public Employee Relations Board. And the theme there was recruitment retention. That was the challenges and those are the challenges that all employers are facing right now. That, you know, great resignation, great reconsideration, we're dealing with those things. But particularly as public sector employees, we are also dealing with a large number of retirements. So according to ICMA, and if you don't know what ICMA is, International City and County Management Association. For the next few years, public sector employers are going to be dealing with a large number of baby boomers retiring. But I think it's more than baby boomers. So we just, it's just a phenomenon that we're all dealing with right now. So with that said, we need to maintain a competitive edge in the market and in us in the employment market. And so we're trying a few different things. And one is a pilot program with LinkedIn. And so that program allows for us to have greater visibility and direct, have direct connection with passive job seekers. So the passive job seekers are people that are not really looking for work, but if something lands in their lap, they may look at it, right? So right now, the way our program is set up, if we have a job, we put in keywords. Those keywords match up with the profiles of people who are LinkedIn users, and they will receive a direct message into their email box. So some of you, if your LinkedIn profiles, you may get, if you have LinkedIn profiles, you may get emails that say, this company is hiring. So our, we send emails, Marin Water is hiring. And then, so with that said, just to show you, for this particular position, and I don't know how to use this pointer. Okay, I thought Sean, okay, there we are. We had over 1,000 views for this position. And this is the Water Resources Specialist. And this is a very specialized position. We have 41 job starters. And once the person starts a job, as a recruiter, I can direct message that person and say, hey, I noticed that you started looking at this position and find out why they didn't apply, you know, or just encourage them to apply. So it just have a wider range, a wider reach, rather. And so, and this is in addition to our other outreach. So like BC Water Jobs, Water District Jobs, nd.com, those type of things. So you have that there. And yeah, so it's, it's looking pretty good in this room. On Monday, we will be interviewing eight well qualified candidates for this position. So it did, did as well. So that's the LinkedIn program, but, and that's a wide reach. But we also want to have a local reach, and that's working with community based organizations to build a relationship around careers in the water district, in the water industry. And so right now, we are, we send job announcements to a couple of agencies like Multicultural Center of Marin, SPA HR Center of Marin, and Community Action of Marin. Local community colleges and parks and recs. We're just trying to build a relationship, but we do need to do some more building around that, in that area. So that's what we're doing, that. And in addition to that, we are in the implementation phase of moving to a new recruitment and applicant tracking platform. And this, this platform, this is the go to platform for government jobs. So we're going to increase our applicant tracking with this program. But we're also going to be able to partner electronically with other larger boards. So while this is the go to for government jobs, we're just going to link in with other companies, oops, like ZipRecruiter, diversity.com, that type of thing. We also, with this new program, have 24/7 customer support, which we don't have right now. Customer support is limited to business hours. So that would be great for our applicants, because some people are applying for jobs at night, you know, when they're not, when they're not at work. And additionally, this, I didn't add this here, but I do want to add that this program allows for us to text message candidates, because a lot of times people are not looking at their personal email right away. We can make contact with people and move things along a little bit faster. So that's one good feature of that program as well. We will be able to gather metrics to establish, to determine whether or not our recruiting efforts are working well, because we will have numbers of clicks on this particular platform as well. And then the data from this platform will automatically move into another platform, which is our onboard. And so this is going to streamline our onboard process, make it more modern, where we're having, where we have an opportunity to have electronic perform, sorry, electronic offers, excuse me. Forms and offers will be electronic. Employees, new hires can self serve through this program. And then we'll have a nice little landing page for our new hires, and there'll be a welcome page right here. And we'll say, welcome Marin, welcome to Marin Water. We'll have a nice welcome message. And then we'll have a checklist of things that they need to complete before onboarding. So that's our new onboarding program. Oh, and yeah, one more thing. So, and then also it provides for a 30 day and a 120 day check in. So right now, our employees receive a three month, a six month, and a 12 month performance evaluation as probationary employees. But we want to encourage, we want to encourage more check ins, especially for probationary employees, for new hires, making sure that they have all the resources that they need. So that will be our, part of our onboarding enhancement. And then we have launched our new performance evaluation system. So training has been provided for all of the users, and this is a big change. So, you know, it's with change, there's, you know, there's change. I'll just leave there. Okay, so, but the program's running well. What I like about this program, and it's different from our old program, is that we had own a Word document. It was pretty antiquated and so, and one template for all employees. So for example, our communications manager would have the same template as a treatment plant supervisor. So, you know, this, this particular program allows us to create different competencies for different positions, so that we can measure things that are really meaningful for that particular position. So what we have done so far with those interchangeable competencies, we've added leadership competencies for all of our leaders in our organization. So our division directors, our mid managers, and our supervisors all have competencies around leadership and engaging employees. So we can also create annual work plans, and that's really just setting goals for the year. And once you set those goals, you can check in throughout the year, you know, make notes into the program. If, let's say, for example, a community member sent a nice email about an employee, you could have that move into that program and into your notes, and then you can refer to that at the end of the year when you are looking at evaluating your employee. So there are a lot of nice features. And then metrics, the division directors can see what's happening evaluation wise within their departments, like who's creating, who's completing their evaluations? What are my strong competencies within my division? So all of those types of metrics are available there. Now again, like I said, there are some problems. We, we did have, we did, we did pay for the 360 degree review program. Well, it actually was part of the package, shouldn't say we paid for it. It's part of the full package. And it's not really giving us what we want out of the program. So we may end up going with an off the shelf program. I have pinged the president of the company several times, but I think it's just a not a used module within their organization, not as, not used as much as.
If I could just speak to this, this is an area that there was board interest, is moving into kind of a modern performance review that incorporates 360s. And I know Vicky's been frustrated that we couldn't get this module to work. It turns out this company, as I understand it from Vicky, there's not a huge interest in the use of the 360s. So they aren't going to invest in giving us what we need to make it functional. So we are looking at different simpler off the shelf, and there's plenty out there, 360 programs, less ideal than what this would have been, because it would have been integrated into the overall performance review program. But it kind of looks like that's likely where we're headed. But we are focused on bringing 360s into the performance review as quick as we can.
Have we asked how much it costs to upgrade the software to get that?
For the current company? It wouldn't cost us anything, it's just, it's something that they need to update their module.
What I'm saying is, can we pay for them to do it, to get it done?
I did not ask that question, but I can check in.
I think that would be the, you know, if they like it and it integrated, you know, that'd be a ways motivate them a little bit, see if that can get them kind of kicked off.
Okay.
It's more of like a cultural decision than a software issue, right? You just have to just do it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think ideally, I mean, it's part of the package. We push them to get it working. It's really not functional in ways we just.
I think he's talking about our culture.
Oh, our, oh, yeah, I mean.
We should just do it. I don't know if we need to wait for the software program to, I mean, it just, it, it shouldn't be too hard to interview above and below, you know, the leadership and management to help get a 360 degree review.
Yeah.
Their performance.
Maybe we should let Vicky finish and then let Scott, because I think a number of comments.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah. So, so we'll, I'm sure there'll be questions about the 360 at the end. Okay. Great, okay. So diversity, equity, and inclusion. As Ben mentioned earlier, we've already started some of the training with the senior leadership. And we did training, and these are some of the classes that, that senior leadership took with respect to diversity, equity, inclusion. And those classes will be rolled out to all staff. Plan to have work groups to talk about the logistics and the training focus for the organization. Each employee will receive initially three hours of diversity, equity, and inclusion training. Some of it will be online for some people, and for some employees, it will be in person. So we kind of have a mix of training options here. Just checking. So we plan to launch that in September. And we're, oh, we're working with Circle Up. And they do a lot of work with public agencies. I think they've worked with the Port of Oakland and a couple of other agencies. I can't think of them right now. Right? So that's diversity, equity, and inclusion for now. And so with respect to employee engagement, we do want to increase our onboarding program for new hires. So onboarding is just not, not just new hire orientation. A lot of times people see it as just new hire orientation. It's continuous efforts to make sure people are successful, especially during their first year. So we want to enhance that program and do a little bit more work around that with respect to, you know, communication, making sure people have what they need, check ins and things like that. And that's what I mentioned about the onboarding, which is pinging them to check in. That's the kind of the technology way of doing it, but you know, we really need to have more of a human approach to this and make sure that people are being, are well connected to their new position and to their new organization. And we also want to support, to support Marin Water as a learning organization. And, and that's going to be done through continued core leadership training, which we have done some leadership training. And I'll talk about that on the next slide a little bit. And then training needs assessments, like what type of training do we need in terms of soft skills, technical skills? We would be working with our division directors to find out what skills people need in order to be successful and to advance in our organization. And then building on, building those skills will help us with succession planning. So we'll have people who are, we have talent within the organization to move, move up when people leave or when they retire. So, and then again, we want to sustain diversity and equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. We don't just want the three hours training. We want to continue the education, and we want to find out where we need to build that into our organization. So for example, we updated our policies and we ensured that our policies have gender, gender neutral language in terms of pronouns. So, you know, things like that that are important to making sure that people feel included. So that's an opportunity. The way we post jobs may be an opportunity. You know, when people get here, what type of things can we do to, to enhance and sustain diversity, equity, and inclusion, not just a three hour training? So, and then to support us in all of this, we definitely need to more support in HR, so.
And I need to say, this is the one additional position, even at the time of, you know, financial strain we're under, that we're looking to put in the upcoming budget. And I think it does signify the general priority we see and the need for implementing what you see on the slide and really more. So as we have comments, maybe I can hear from the board on support for, for that effort. Or not, I mean, we could, well, your thoughts.
All right, okay. And, um, this is my last slide. So for, um, regarding employee engagement, we, um, the district, um, conducted a Gallup survey in 2016 to, um, to measure engagement within the organization. And this, um, will over here was the will of engagement. That actually was a, um, a product of the whole Gallup survey. After the survey was completed, um, a committee was formed and, um, some tasks were, there was a list of a, action items, um, and also some focus on, you know, what would engagement need, mean at the Marin Water, at Marin Water. And then at the center of that, of course, is leadership. So, um, and in response to that, um, we did provide some, uh, we provided leadership training for our managers and supervisors and our lead workers. And it was right before COVID, so, um, we do plan to pick that up again for our new people who haven't had an opportunity to participate in the training. But again, back to the previous slide about Marin Water being a learning organization, we don't want to just have the leadership training that we had. We want to build on leadership and keep on in that area as well. So we plan to launch another survey. Our goal is to get that launched at the end of the year, December 2023. And, um, another initiative that we think would be important for employee engagement is communication. Communication is even on that will, right? So, um, it's really important. It is one of our, um, competencies in our performance evaluation, um, with respect to leadership. And so we want to, you know, have a protocol where we have, ensure that we have some kind of continuous communication such as one-to-one meetings and weekly staff meetings and quarterly and all staff division meetings. So that's, um, you know, a protocol that we want to implement within the district.
And I, I think, you know, we're envisioning this would be an outcome of a, kind of a good stakeholder group that consists of managers, supervisors and employees in terms of what's a reasonable expectation. Once we develop this, this would funnel into the appropriate, um, performance plans of managers and supervisors for accountability. It is somewhat of a kind of granular operational activity that these sorts of things don't always rise necessarily to a board level, but, um, what we do see some needs and opportunities around this generally. So we are putting it here to hold ourselves accountable for moving forward with this effort.
So that, that concludes my slides. That's it for now.
How about we do it, we do it publicly first?
No, board, board.
Board, okay. Board, what thoughts do our board members?
I'll jump off by saying, um, thank you, Vicki, this is a lot, you know, and, um, and I, and I think, um, you know, HR is probably, all of us who, you know, if we work in different organizations, we realize how much HR has, has dramatically shifted, you know, even in the last five years in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion and, and just sort of modern practices of how we, um, how employers are, can be great employers of people. And, and to not, you know, see, um, performance, um, management as a, you know, how do you catch bad actors, but how do you grow great partnerships and great staff and create a really great environment that, you know, brings out the best in us? And so I really appreciate the efforts that you're making and, and really support that this is really fundamentally important. We lose good people because they're unhappy or they're not, you know, something's not working. The, the amount of time and effort and cost that we lose by losing good people is, is tremendous. So, um, I just really applaud this effort. I want to, um, probably say probably what I think maybe a couple of folks are thinking. The 360 review thing, if, if that program, I would like to encourage that if the program that we are currently looked at is not proving to really be what we want to use into the future, I would encourage considering ditching it and finding one that's integrated for all the things that we want to do. I mean, not, there's no one platform that's perfect, but the 360 reviews, I think, are just so foundationally important to, um, to having input and engagement, you know, from, and, and really understanding how to best support a, a, an employee to, you know, again, achieve their highest and best. So I would, I know that it's hard to, to leave programs when you've already gotten into them and, but let's, you know, realize how foolish if we stick with something that's just going to be a pain.
Yeah, well, I have, um, a demo scheduled for next week.
Okay. So. Great. So one of the other things that I think is really, you know, in this, particularly in this environment and particularly related to our rate setting is how competitive are our salaries with the industry? You know, we, we live in an expensive location. A lot of our staff can't afford to live in the area, which is, I think, really a problem that, that is a challenge. And I don't, I don't know exactly what the full solution is, but we at minimum ought to be paying what is commensurate for our region. Otherwise, we're just going to lose good people. And that's, and, and that's, I think, not again, to the, the benefit or the, the health of our district. So I don't know if, if we, if part of, whether we done, uh, that's, whether we've surveyed salaries recently or whether that's part of your intention.
Right, so we, we had a survey years ago and it was before I was here, but since then we've kept up with respect, um, with, um, cost of living adjustments. And as far as I can tell, we are in line with the market.
I encourage us to, to take a, a fresh look because like even just keep track with cost of living is, I think, um, it's, it's overly simplified because some, some positions, especially highly technical positions, may actually be, um, growing in competition. But just keeping pace with cost of living may not be sufficient. I just want to make sure that when we, when we budget into our future, that we are budgeting in to pay our people a competitive wage. We don't have to be the leaders. We're going to pay the highest, the most, but if we don't pay commensurately, we'll just lose people and lose money because we're having to rehire. And I just want to also really encourage, when it goes back to the hiring practices, um, the, the local community engagement. We ought to be hiring from our community wherever we can. And, um, I think that's a really great effort, so I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
With, um, I think a lot of the common theme for all these presentations today are going to be we have a lot of work to do. And with the high number of vacancies we have right now, I want to make sure you have what you need to be able to onboard all those people, get them into the organization, start filling those gaps as we move into this next budget process. So if there's anything you need to help me do that, that's a lot of work. Let's see if we can do some work on it.
Great.
Vicki, thanks a lot for a great, another great presentation.
Thank you.
Could you just clarify the difference between an employee engagement survey and an employee satisfaction survey?
So it's, it's, it's the same thing. It's Gallup, Gallup is the company that does the survey. And, um, they, that is the term for interchangeable.
Okay, so, so the outputs are essentially focused on employee perception, satisfactions.
Exactly, yeah. Are they, and engagement, yeah.
It may be interesting to send to the board, the past survey and the results and the findings. It's actually very interesting. And then, right, as you hear, the goal is to do it again with a similar survey, right? And you start to develop trend lines and that sort of stuff.
And the next one is scheduled for December.
Our plan is for December, yes.
And who did, how's the survey developed?
So it's a Gallup Q10, Q12 survey. And so they have 12 questions that they, 12 dimensions that they, where they ask questions to employees about, um, their job satisfaction, um, how, how much they're engaged, how much communication they, they receive, um, and with respect to engagement.
Can we add?
They ask questions like, do you have a friend at work? You know, because that's important.
Can we add questions to that survey?
I don't think so. I can check, but I don't think so.
I, I would, I would encourage us to, to, if it's not flexible enough to add questions to it, again, I think a, a survey can't be, there's probably a lot of other options for that. I just think, again, like, we are a, a unique organization, like all organizations, I think, are unique. And, and I think it would be really good for us to have a survey that, that, and, and to take, you know, uh, some input from staff and from management and, and from the board about questions that we want to, because if this is a chance to learn how people feel, like I don't want Gallup's vision. I want our vision of what we want to know so that that can help us to, again, be, be informed by what's, how people feel.
Yeah, it, it's a good point. What was done last time is interesting too, which is a model we can consider, which is, taking the results of this kind of generic survey, but that's, when you see it, it seems pretty thoughtfully designed, at least in my recollection, and then develop a follow-on process internally based on the indications that are coming out of the survey. But I think we, we need to get the board a copy of it and kind of gauge, do we think it hits the target of what we're looking for and what you may be looking for?
Yeah, I, um, so I think you're looking for direct feedback on funding the position and I'm all for it. Your team is, is amazing and, but also clearly overworked. So you're, you're the fulcrum that keeps the place going and, and we need to get you the support you need. So I, I'm in favor of that funding. And, and all the more to the point of, of this satisfaction and engagement survey, I, I think the cultural aspect of, of your role, not just recruiting, but really having an awesome, happy, successful workplace is critical. And I'm, I'm concerned that we haven't had this kind of survey done in seven years and we're going to begin the process in December, which means we're not going to have it until 2024. And I would highly encourage us to accelerate that, right? And, and at least some of the feedback that I know the executive, the management team has had and the board has had from internal surveys, were not very positive. And I, I'm sure that there are better ways to do surveys than we're done, but it's so clear that we, we have some cultural issues in the organization that I think need to be worked on. And I hate to wait a year before we have a, a baseline that we can start from in identifying what the issues are. And then we can help you try to resolve and, and, and figure out what they are. I don't know exactly what the roots are of the problem and, and, or problems, or, and what the opportunities are for us to, to engage in a healthy, happy way to help have a great culture that people want to stay here. So things like churn, why are people leaving? Are they happy with their jobs? How can they be happier? Real clear diversity and inclusion metrics so that we know where we're behind and where we're ahead. But having those baselines like as soon as possible, and, and I'm not sure why it's going to take us a year to get this going, but, uh, I, I would encourage you to get it going as soon as possible. And, and then lastly, as part of our strategic planning process, I, I'd like to make sure that we don't have another seven year lapse before we have this kind of input from the staff, that we have it as a regular, clear part of our culture and our institution. And I'd like to also make sure that you participate in our finance and administration meetings and that you have the A, the administration part is, 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 uh, rises to the top of board oversight and inclusion. So updates on this regularly, I think, would be really, really important. Appreciate your effort, Vicki.
Thank you. And just by the way, our turnover rate is lower than our industry standard.
Awesome.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's always good to know why, right? Why, why is it happening? And, and, and it's not, it's not like saying it's bad. It's just, it's just how can we do better?
No, I, I'm just making that point.
Yeah. And show us that too.
Right.
What's the industry standard? I mean, we're, you know, let's see the numbers. That's great.
And, and on the other side, also good to know what's working, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And the, the timing is important because throughout our industry and well beyond, as you're likely seeing in different ways, there is this, um, post-COVID phenomenon going on in workplaces that everyone's just trying to struggle to even understand. It's accelerated some retirements, but it, there's also a unique sense of malaise or something at many, many workplaces generally that, um, so anyway, that, that's a topic of discussion and associations and meetings Vicki's going to and everything. And looking at the big trends are important too.
Yes.
Are we ready? I'll get on. Yeah. Maryette?
Hi, my name's Maryette Shin. I'm a board here in IT department in UTIS for almost 22 years now. And I just wanted to say thank you, Monty and Jed and Monty, even Matt, for all your comments. I was on the employee engagement committee for about nine months. Uh, it was a facilitated group of representatives from all different levels of the Water District. And it, uh, started in 2016. I was on it and I can give you, provide you more information on, on basically what happened as a result of all that time invested in it. And, uh, the other comment I wanted to make is that, Monty, I agree with you, certain classifications do fall below the, you know, salary average benchmarks. Over time, we haven't done a full-on salary survey since 2013, so it's been 10 years. And so obviously, like you said, some competing classifications, their salaries have gone up far greater than the two to three percent COLAs, uh, that we've been getting. Not that I'm not happy about the COLAs, and, uh, but obviously you'll see a separation of salary numbers over that 10-year period. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention is, Vicki, thank you very much for the, um, performance evaluation system, but, um, we did, as an employee who's actually used the system compared to the older system, we do also have issues with not being able to see supervisors, being able to see employees' comments, employees not being able to see supervisor's comments, um, which we reported to HR, uh, last year. So that's another area that needs improvement, um, is to be able to see each other's comments. Otherwise, it's, how can we discuss what's happening? And there's been other feedback I've gotten that the new performance evaluation system is much more detached. It's a, so, uh, there's less interaction in general between the supervisor and staff member in person. And so I've gotten feedback from field staff saying, it feels so impersonal now, whereas before it was an opportunity to just sit down with your supervisor and in the same room and chat about what's happening. Now it's all online, um, so certain field staff feel like it's way, it's much more impersonal than it used to be.
So I will say this, um, it's not intended to be that way. And there is actually a sign-off on the performance evaluation that says that you actually met with your employee. So those managers are, they're supposed to meet with the employee and sign off acknowledging that they did have that meeting with, uh, the employees.
I think the meetings might be briefer than they, they were with my supervisor and, and myself. The actual meeting was very brief. Um, and part of the issue was also we couldn't see each other's comments, so we didn't know what to talk about.
Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, I have the benefit of going back to the early 90s. And from the early 90s forward, the public has been complaining about bloated staff being overpaid. And it's really important in this rate-setting process to get the message out that employee retention is critical to an organization of this kind, that competitive salaries are necessary because the last thing you want a district, this district to become is a training ground for new people who then rotate out to better jobs, better paid jobs, because it is competitive. And this really needs to be explained to the public. It comes up every rate hearing, I can tell you. Thank you.
Just like to confirm the importance of that messaging. It's something that I heard about a lot in the campaign trip.
What he said, that they're bloated and overpaid.
Exactly. So the messaging around us as Larry is emphasizing.
Not the same, yeah.
I just want to say it's been very, very hurtful to the district these decades because it's been, it's been listened to.
I think it would be helpful as part of the next few months to talk about a salary survey, much like the engagement, if one hasn't been done in a decade.
You know, I didn't want to come out and say, but I did assure competitive compensation per the chair's discussion, we were kind of talking around that whole comp and class study thing, but, but it is there. We captured the, the sentiment that it might be time to do that. I, I, at least it's on here, a new employee for HR. At least it's on here, a new employee for HR. This survey started earlier perhaps in the year. And then that software package that works with the 360 was, those were the four notes that I took. So Ben, okay, and Vicki, congratulations.
I think there's probably more than just, there's just these things.
There's a lot more comments to be captured.
There's a lot more comments, but I mean in general terms, these.
I would say that, again, every comment from a board member this express will be coming back. How specifically are those comments going to be answered? I did want to, Maryette, respond that I do think there's still bugs in the system and I've heard some of those comments too, that we do need to work on for sure. I mean, it's just ultimately has to be a smooth working system that works for all the parties and is somewhat accessible for everyone. But I think we're getting there, but those were fair comments, so thanks.
Okay, I was going to recommend a short break and then we'll let, we'll let the, the next, what is the name of here? We are ready to resume. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just before we roll into the next one, I did want to mention that Sean had a clarification for Mr. Behardt, for all of us. The most recent was 25?
For management is, we're currently 25 acres of spread under our management scenario. If we were not to be managing, it was 50 acres of spread.
Next we.
Hi, I'm Adrian Martin's Communications Public Affairs Manager. And I'll start just by saying that the Communications Department, our work is really guided by the needs and priorities of departments throughout the entire organization. And so there, not surprisingly, are a few overlaps with our priorities that I'm going to go through with you and others that you've already heard from today or that you will hear from later. We do also have a couple pretty significant projects that we're working on this year in Communications that will have a benefit to the entire district as well as our customers. And so I'll just say, I'll first talk about website improvements, our work on the Agenda Management System, our outreach support of key district efforts, Psychoameric three, and then public education and storytelling collateral. So first, for website improvements, heard about it a little bit before, but we are working on a redesign of our homepage. Our homepage, as it stands right now, is difficult to navigate. There's a lot of things and a lot of interest from all of our different departments to have things front and center. And we are not organized in a way right now that does that. This has given you a little sneak preview of what our redesign looks like. You know, calls to center, you know, items of importance when we've got big, important initiatives coming up, when we've got new programs rolling out, and also organizes things by our kind of key hot topic issues in a way that it does not right now. And this is really important, especially as we're talking about organizational efficiencies and making some changes where we really are pushing customers to our website more. You know, when you go to the phone tree right now, it references you to the website as an option. Obviously, we reference people to our website in all of our outreach as kind of the home base of our information. And so we want our homepage to be really strong. And so that's a project we've been working through. And then kind of another piece of that, we'll work together. We've started working on this, is site mapping. So it's nice to have a homepage, but you also want the rest of the website organization to make sense. And I've been here just over a year now. And when I came in, one of the things I did was an assessment of our website and figure out how we could make it better and did realize that the site actually lacked a site map, which is problematic when you roll out a new program or you're working with staff to create new content and set up a new page. It's not clear where things live and it's not organized in a way that makes it easy so that we can manage that going forward. And then it makes it hard for the customer because they cannot find what they're looking for because it's not set up in a logical way. And you end up with orphan pages that are kind of just orbiting in our site, but not, there's no breadcrumbs, you can't find kind of a logical navigation to them. So we're also working on redesigning major landing pages within our site. This is actually a screenshot of our site map that we put together after going through the entire site. And this is an example, Customer Accountant Billing is one that we have redone. We're working through the rest of our major landing page areas to kind of collect that information, make sure it's in the right place and that it's very easy to find what we're looking for. And so connected with the project benefits, I talked about them a little, but certainly improve overall user navigation and accessibility of district information. We want that front page real estate for our timely, important topics. We want to really draw attention to them with the spotlight. And then supporting, this effort supports outreach needs of all of our departments who compete for that space, want to put their stuff front and center. We certainly want to be supportive of that. And so, and then we're looking for completion of our homepage by April. And the site mapping work, we hope to actually finish in March. And then Agenda Management System, also talked about this one a little bit before, but we are getting this underway now. What this is, is if we've secured a third-party vendor who is going to help transition our agenda documents, all of our board and committee meeting documents from where they live on the website now into a new portal, which will integrate with our website and make it really easy for our customers and the board and staff to find documents and meetings and videos of previous meetings going forward. We've heard about this a lot from the public. In fact, I think one of my first board meetings, a public comment about our, how it was hard to find, documents came up and specific staff reports on individual items within an 80-page agenda packet. And so this is going to help solve some of those issues. This right here is a sample of another agency, but the same product that we'll be getting. It allows you to easily toggle from upcoming meetings to recent meetings. And then everything is listed very nicely here. And then if you actually click into a specific agenda, so this is what the agenda looks like and individual staff reports and any associated documents with that agenda item are all easily navigatable through a list, like a menu of options, rather than you get this PDF of 100 pages and you got to go find your item. So, and with this project, there is a lot of behind-the-scenes kind of internal workflow that we also have to transition to. So there's training components for our staff. They have to learn how to use this new system. And it'll ultimately have a benefit for our efficiencies in working to put agenda packets together. There's a lot of work that goes into that. Certainly, our board secretary is corralling all of us to make our deadlines and make sure we go through reviews and get all the information that needs to be in there to publish them for the public and the board. And then we're also, with this transition, going to migrate our last, the last 10 years of all of our committee and board meeting documents into the portal. So we won't be losing anything. And we're actually getting more back. We only have the last three years of board documents on our current website, so this will kind of enhance the record. And then finally, there is a component of integrating it with our public-facing website, which will, it'll have a spot on the homepage, and so we'll be working through that as well. And so I talked about the benefits already. And we do anticipate April 2023 is an aggressive timeline. We may miss it by a month or so, but we're going to do our best because we do really want to get that out there. And then, so this is one of those areas where I overlap on other folks' areas today that they'll be talking about. But in particular this year, we've got three big initiatives that we are supporting the outreach of, the outreach needs for throughout the process. That's our 2023 rate-setting process, our Strategic Water Supply Assessment and Watershed Recreation Management Plan. Obviously, we've been working on all of those already. We have outreach plans for each. And we'll continue to support throughout the process, making sure our public is aware of where we are at, where we're at in each project, where there's opportunities for them to be involved, reasons why we're doing these things. And then we'll have a really important component when we get to the ends of them to make sure everybody knows where we landed, what next steps are, and any other important details of those. And so the last thing, public education and storytelling collateral. And I think this gets a little bit back to what President Schmidt brought up earlier, is how are we telling our story about the district? And we do have a few things in the works. And you'll see the target completion date is by August of 2023. As said by all items, that some of these things will get done sooner. But we are looking at different opportunities to share our story. We're certainly going to do that through the rate-setting process. It's part of our communications plans, it's in our messaging. But we will continue even after rate-setting to tell that story because it's important going forward and it always has a place. And there is definitely that lack of awareness out there. And so we've been looking at other kind of point-of-service locations, other opportunities where we have real estate and where it makes sense to kind of meet our customers where they are and helping to talk about what happens behind the curtain of delivering water to customers. And so we have plans for a short video that can be used on all of our digital platforms. It could also be put out through different advertising opportunities. And we have event outreach display. So we have a booth display. It's in need of updating. It's a little worn at this point. And so there is real estate there that really, using beautiful images of our watershed and just some of our amazing photos we have. We have amazing drone imagery too, both folk stills and video. We're figuring out how we can incorporate some of this into what we do to really connect people that when they're talking to us about their water, we're actually talking about all this other stuff too and trying to make that connection, both through messaging and through visuals. And then finally, we have, oh, sorry, point-of-service signage. And there's kind of a mock-up there, but even in our lobby, we average between 30 and 50 customers coming through the door a day. There's certainly opportunities with bare walls and just not a lot going on in there where we can do some temporary inexpensive signage to help to tell our story in those locations as well. And then we are looking to do a direct mailer project for our new customers. This is an idea that originated from our Water efficiencies team. They wanted to do something to engage when we get new customers after they've been in our service area for about three months. We would send out a mailer to them, introducing them to our conservation programs. But in talking through it, it is also an opportunity to do public education right there. We can, once we have our video developed, you know, add a QR code. You can then watch the video when you get your mailer. You learn about all of the opportunities that are available to you through our water efficiency programs, but you also get this overview of what all goes into delivering water to your tap. So that's kind of our big storytelling projects for the year. And that wraps it up. Looking for discussion.
Board thoughts? Thanks a lot, Adrian. Yeah, it's exciting to see all of the new energy going into Communications. And certainly looking forward to supporting you, supporting these efforts through the Communications Committee. I've asked this before, Adrian, you know, but I'm going to come back to it. I'm really curious to know how you envision board communication efforts. Or do you see us as, you know, as a concern in terms of getting in your way or not messaging correctly, or are all having different messages to the public? Or do you see opportunities to give us some training and, you know, get us all on the same message so that through our interactions with the public can build upon what you're doing?
That's a great question. Thank you. I think, no, not afraid of getting in the way. I think consistency is important, of course. I mean, we do a lot of coordination just with our staff internally and how systems set up. And maybe there's opportunities there if the board is interested. I send out, or my team sends out public information update every other week. Usually the time I'm at for after a board meeting so that all of our customer service-facing staff kind of know the latest, you know, kind of top-level messages in all of our hot areas or hot items in the city, or, oh my gosh, city. Old brain, in the district. And so that they can at least provide just a little bit of an answer. You know, if someone digs in and has more questions, they also are provided the website resource to send that person to or to the right staff member who can talk to them through things more. But so we've created those systems internally just to help with consistencies. And there could be something similar there for our board as well. I mean, we produce a lot of material that we put out. All of it is shareable. We're on, you know, four different social media platforms. We have a monthly e-news going out. We put a lot of time and effort into that. And certainly if you have engaged audiences, sharing that information with them only helps us. You're helping to amplify what's already getting out there and expanding our reach. But, you know, I would be interested and maybe that's a topic for a Communications Committee meeting going forward is, you know, what is the most helpful tool for, for the board? Something that's consistent, that gets us in, we're good with routine once we've got a tool in place, having that, you know, that weekly, whatever it is, monthly thing that we put out, that could be a great solution. And we are already doing some of that stuff too.
Right, because I think I've heard that, you know, in some cases there may even be formal trainings for board members to be effective communicators for their agency.
Yeah, certainly, like the media training. I've done that in past capacities with elected officials. We bring someone in, you do a little mock interview.
Right.
And yeah, so those are definitely opportunities we could explore.
I think we're just coming up on such a critical phase with the rate-setting process and the Strategic Water Supply Assessment decision-making. There will be so many questions, obviously related to both, and then not to the Recreation Management Plan as well. So being on message, I think is going to be, you know, if we can, if we can make sure we're doing our best to be on message, that would be productive.
Yeah, and specifically just to speak to rates and being on message. We are working on some tools that we're really getting out to the board to help just so you have the same messaging that we're working on developing and so that we are consistent across the way.
I'd like to just reinforce what Ronji said about how critical your role is going to be for us for the next few months. And I think we talked about this today, but I really encourage us being proactive and telling our story as opposed to having to react because we've got a very educated, engaged public. But I think it's very good because they care. They're really investing their time and effort to make sure that we're successful as well. And if we can get out and be proactive to our messages, that would be a core part of it.
I might build on that and a couple of thoughts. It would be really, something I would, that I think would be helpful is there are a lot of community groups out there that, they, I've done a couple of presentations about, about the district. And Adrian has created great PowerPoint presentations that already exist. So it's like, there's stuff right out of the can that's fun and interesting. And you get great questions from people. I've had a great time doing it. You know, it's really, you get unusual questions, but you also really feel like you're talking to just ordinary people. And so I think, you know, with all your spare time, you know, it would be great to get a sense of, like, if we can identify just like lists of community groups that, you know, that we could just reach out to, even maybe as board members. I would, I would love to frankly have a list of community groups in my division to reach out to and just be like, hey, I'm willing to come and do a half-hour presentation if you want. And, you know, we have lots of messages depending on what phase we're in with our rate-setting and our watershed management plan, you know, our water source, our water supply planning. All these are great topics and I would be, I would love some help to actually just identify people who'd be interested. I think that'd be great. One other thing that comes up, I feel like a lot in our board meetings and in conversations with people is people want to know where most, the most recent report is on something. So I, the websites are so challenging, but if we can make sure that somewhere on the website, hopefully in a fairly logical place to get to it, our most recent reports on different topics so that when people, you know, and even older reports of things have been superseded because these, those resources I think are really important for all of us. I mean, it becomes a library. And let alone we can direct the public to when someone asks a question on a, you know, at a board meeting, we can say, we can provide some feedback. to you there, but we can also say that you can find that, it is there on the website. And if you've got questions after you've taken a look at it, then it would just be helpful to be able to point people to that. And I've searched the website, I can't find a lot of things. So I encourage us to make sure that our website is a library resource for things. So, thank you.
I think I'll just add to the, I guess all three of the comments. There's an enormous, I think, gap between the perception of our community and the reality of our, some of our situations, mostly around the finances and our rates and the view of our, that we have below, you know, that we're, that we're overfunded. And so I think that your role and our role in communicating the rate process is critical to a success and figuring out how we can be really, really clear about how those perceptions are probably not right and why we're doing what we're doing and aligning our decision-making with real action and investment so that we're not just raising rates because we want more money. We are investing in these critical programs for our community and for our district. And the way we articulate that will, I think, be the key to our success in this process. So we'll do everything we can to help you be successful and as unified a message as we have, as Monty was saying, that the better it will be. But there is a gap and we should be clear about it. There's a real gap between people's view of, almost everyone I talk to thinks our rates are really, really high, we have too much below, you're not going to raise our rates, are you? And it's like, well, I mean, there's a real reality of the shortfalls that we have in our infrastructure and our staffing and, I mean, across the board. So how we articulate it in a multifaceted, multimedia approach with our PR, with community engagement, et cetera, will basically determine the success.
Anybody from the public? Yes. Go ahead. Mr. Chair, you want to analyze? You can, if you'd like.
I've traveled all over North America and all over the world for that matter, and there is no place I've ever been that has better quality of water than we have. And when I talk to people in the neighborhood, they don't realize they're only paying a penny a gallon. Why they don't know that is because nobody's told them that. So I think you've got a good message. You've got the highest, some of the highest quality water anywhere in the world and you're only paying a penny a gallon. And we've got problems that need to be addressed in terms of capital replacement. We've got problems in ensuring water supply for drought. And if we have to pay two cents a gallon to get it, that's cheap for the quality of water we're getting. And I think that's a fundamental message that you have to get across to the public. Thank you.
Double the rates, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I want to acknowledge that I think the website has come a long way in the last couple of years here. But what would really be helpful, particularly to the new board members and possibly even help to save money, is there's no real way, there's no library of technical documents or past presentations. You have to dig for that. So if I want to find the BIFIT, I have to do a search on that. If I want to find that Sula Huli study that was done several years ago, there's no easy way for me to locate it. I've actually got to go to the internet, search page after page to locate some of these documents. Be really helpful to pull all this information together in a library form, particularly for the, for the new board members and because it can also help to inform where perhaps a study isn't needed because previous studies have shown, why repeat what we've done before? Maybe update, but maybe there's no need to repeat. I think it'd be really helpful to have more information there. Thank you.
So this is a comment I thought of this morning and I thought it was going to come in under the, what, it was a comment on stuff not on the agenda, but we didn't have that. So I'm going to do it now, but it's very related to communications. So again, I'm David Behar. For staff who don't know, I was on the board from 2006 to 2012. My day job is with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission where I'm the climate program director. I've been there for 17 years. So I have both a board and a staff perspective on everything you guys are facing. I also ran an environmental nonprofit for six years, the Bay Institute, and so I have an environmental and a water management perspective on all the challenges that the district faces. I love this district and I really love this board of directors. I'm extremely excited about the moment in time that we collectively are in right now. And I want to say that, this is my comment, the thing we have to watch out for most, in my view, the biggest danger is the danger of time. So that's the subject that's not on the agenda, time. Time is the enemy, not because you need to hurry up and go, but because you need to slow down and think and plan and come up with long-term solutions that are, that reflect the complexity of what we're facing right now and take the time where you have it. Obviously, on the rate package, there's not a lot of time, but on a lot of other things, there is enough time to do it not fast, but do it right. And I think that's a really important part to communicate to the public, Adrian. I think we're going to have a lot of folks who are looking at the outcomes of the elections and saying, now it's time to get to work and get action. And that is very true. I also think this board has a lot of running room to take the amount of time on water supply, on long-term financial stability, on the capital plan apart from water supply, to really dig deep and do it right. And so my recommendation is take the time to do that. How many people are a fan of the NBA? Anybody? Raise your hand if you are. All right, Ben, thank God. Monty, are you, really? So Luka Doncic is one of the best players in the NBA. And one of the great things about him is that he's slow. He moves slow. And a commentator the other day said, nobody can speed Luka up, meaning nobody can make him move faster than he's supposed to do. Savant athletes often go, can really keep things slow. You guys are a very skilled district and a very skilled board of directors. Don't let anybody speed you up and you'll be as great as Doncic is in the NBA right now. Thank you.
I would just have a minor disagreeing with David, just the semantic is not slow per se, because I think that can be interpreted in many, many negative ways, but deliberate and at deliberate pace. Sorry, David. I don't play basketball, maybe that's my problem.
That's it.
But, and I think I'm going to take a leap out here because one of the co-founders of the Brain Coalition for Water Solutions, I am willing to speak for my group without having spoken to them, to do a Zoom conference call, maybe with Jed and whoever else would be interested without getting into too many of you on board. But I think we did a pretty successful Zoom gathering of a lot of our members around the elections and that reached out to a lot of people and got a lot of questions answered. There was a great, I think it was Elizabeth Colbert article in The New Yorker a few months ago about different ways to get these environmental messages out. And one of them, she drew attention to the, she went through the alphabet and one was "N-narrative" and be careful about how you're treating the narrative. You don't want it to be all sun and flowers and everybody's great, but you have to make it a realistic narrative that people can hold on to, not be frightened by, but can take action from. I'll try to watch more basketball.
Thank you very much. Any further comment? Yeah? I did want to say just a couple of things about board communication in the public. One is there's probably policy regarding how the board is to engage the public and so you want to review that before you just run out there. Two is this is a really good word, proactive means you're planning with staff. When you're on staff's message, then you know it's a message that's been, that's been vetted properly by the board. And one of the things that a community group will drive or ask of you is they may drive you to questions the board hasn't taken up yet. And so you really can't speak for the board on those things yet. So you got to, those are things you just, that needs to go into training or the time you set because you don't want to, you're not able to talk about unvetted policy yet. You can talk about things that boards voted on, but you shouldn't go out there, you shouldn't go out there on your own talking about things that the board has, is, has pending. Okay, those are just the three things I wanted to bring up relative to that. Other than that, I've got some notes here. I know Ben's got some notes regarding what you said. That was a really good discussion and everybody knows it really comes down to a good communication and great people doing it. And yes, it's a great interface, good comments. Thank you.
We're moving very, I mean, at a nice pace, so we have an opportunity to take one from the afternoon and fit it in. Now, you may have seen lunchtime, we do have two speakers coming in, Tony Williams, general manager at North Marin, and Grant Davis from Sonoma to engage us during lunch. So we're thinking to move up the water resources with Paul since that's such an easy, quick topic.
No further Paul.
Let us see now the questions you can pass.
You actually include my presentation.
Paul, it's also, it's also good to do this when everyone's getting pumped.
It's moving along, Paul. If you've ever taught a class and this looks very much like a classroom, and I see you back at the back. Right, right before lunch, everybody's ready to go. This, this presentation on water resources, this is not in the same way that we've been thinking about it at our board meetings and our special meetings. I want to try just to think about what we mean when we talk about implementation. So while we have, you know, today it's, it's the priorities for the water resources division and it's all about, surprise, surprise, water supply. That's going to be dominating our conversation for the next few years. Now, there are other things, of course, in the water resources division, but today I do want to talk about implementation of our roadmap. And we have with us Kerry Pollard, our water resources manager, who will speak to the last section of this, this presentation. So in general terms, we know we're looking for water supply. The good news is that, right, there's a range of options that are available for us to fill that need. And we know that in a generic sense, whatever goes into the roadmap that the board selects, there'll be a range of projects, if you think, right, that's going to comprise that roadmap. We need now, before we've even got there, to be thinking about what that next step is, right? We're in the middle of thinking about rates, we're coming up on a budget here, even if we weren't into rates. So we need to think about how are we going to afford to implement what we're thinking about. And as we look at that, I think we can say, just generally speaking, that where we are in this planning process for water supply is very early on. To David Behar's comments about time and notwithstanding the basketball player that I can't pronounce his last name, not, can't speed him up, there's some things that we just can't speed up and we need to take a very deliberate approach, I think was another nice comment at the back. And so a lot of these projects, where we are with them is going to take a similar, they're in a similar spot in terms of how well fleshed out, how well thought out, what level of design that they're at. So we have, right, if we will look at this example roadmap that we presented at the last board meeting, there's a range of, what we're looking at is short-term actions and low regrets, no regret actions. And those may be items that we can think about as being reasonably well-defined that we could move forward with in a fairly short term. So implementing those, we can put some numbers down for budget purposes and start to move forward because these are projects that we've sort of thought about outside of the context and prior to this water supply resourcing effort. On the other hand, you might have a number of other options, you know, resolving bollonecks, developing conveyance to storage, participating in regional groundwater banks and so on. Those are still in the very early stages, almost concepts at this point. And we're going to need to do a lot of work in the form of pre-design to really bring those to a level where we can even think about, right, what's an accurate number to be asking, you know, for bonding capacity and things like that. So there's still work for us to be done. And so looking at that, if we were to think about budgets to support us across the next four years, right, we're talking about rates potentially and what do we need to put in those rates to make sure we're not slowing down our basketball game or player, but allow us to move forward. And what I've got here is just two columns. The sort of middle column is operational cost and the far-right column would be capital cost. As we know, some of the options that we're looking at filling the deficit in the short term really are on the operational side. So things like conservation and what's represented here is the investment in conservation to support the elements that are included in SMUSA over four years. So if you want an annual average, you divide these numbers by four. So if we were to connect Phoenix to Bon Tempe, we know we can't do that overnight, it's going to take some time and effort, but maybe in the last two years, we can, we can do it. So there's some pumping energy costs associated with that project. And similar for Sula Huli on the operational side, were we able to electrify that within three years, maybe we can pump it for a couple of years. So there's, we need to be able to pay for it. If we want to think about, on average, buying 2,000 acre-feet extra water from Sonoma, we need to be able, so you get the idea. So we've included these, the four-year total for operation looks like about 19 and a half, it's rounded up since we're all friends, 20 million bucks on the operations side. And on the capital side, you know, in order to pave a Phoenix to Bon Tempe, it's about a $5 million estimate, Sula Huli electrification, 6 million. And then we've got work to do to help us define more accurately, more confidently, confirm some of the assumptions that we've made in this sort of conceptual planning phase that we're in at the moment. And that's pre-design work. So pre-design work on, pick whatever it is, if it's DCEL, there's still a lot of work that would need to occur on DCEL. If it's local storage, a lot of work there. And I've got a couple of slides, just to kind of walk us, yeah. I'm sorry, the conservation number, could you just explain that? How that's a bit different than the other numbers? And it's also different than some numbers the board has recently seen, so. Yeah, so I slipped in an important word in terms of investment. So what we're, in order to support the conservation element that's included in the strategic water supply assessment, which is distinct from the larger conservation program, right? The water conservation element in the strategic water supply is a piece of our larger program. In order to deliver all of those services and incentives, it's about $1.7 million a year. The total conservation plan budget is closer to 3?
Yeah, 2.8.
Yeah, so about 3 million. So that gives you an idea in terms of, and then when we, when we start talking about rates and the budget for the next cycle, it's an increase of our historic of about 300,000 to 400,000 dollars. So that may be what you saw from Brad at the last, the last presentation. So hopefully that clears that up and we can, we can pick that up if there's more there.
I have a question, Paul.
Yeah?
Are you sure that the Phoenix to Bon Tempe is worthwhile at 600 acre-feet in Phoenix plus the water quality that enters Phoenix?
Yeah, Phoenix is about 350 acre-feet or so. The yield of that project isn't great, but it's on the order of 260 acre-feet per year. And in terms of water supply projects that we have that can be done, A, in the short term and B, even with those economics, it's still a pretty decent project for us. What's a dollar break or foot approximately, do you know? I don't know.
But it is how long you take acre-feet, you know? That's the complicated part about these.
Yeah, you're right.
It's a one-time investment and then it returns and returns and returns.
Right.
So it's a little complicated that way.
And I do think, we're getting into the content, but just as part of that project, were the board indicate to afford with these early actions, the first step in that one for sure would be confirming that the assumptions in the yield and the costs, really understanding it, as well as the potential to partner with County Stormwater and there's some interest there, so that.
And the water quality.
Right.
Because now we're collecting street runoff, which is very different than our normal water.
Well, Phoenix is above any paved surfaces, so we don't actually have any street runoff going into Phoenix. It's pretty similar to our water. And this concept would move Phoenix Lake water And this concept would move Phoenix Lake water into Bon Tempi Lake. So Sulehuli would be more of a project that moves immediately into design. Boom. The Phoenix-Bon Tempi does have that pre-analysis work. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we're just looking at examples, right? Without even trying to pick a roadmap, just examples of, you know, that earlier statement where a lot of these options are in a very similar place in terms of additional work needs to be done. So we're. I'm sorry, Paul. We're using these examples because there's an understandable question and concerns from the board on the timing of the budgeting process and how it links with this effort. And what Paul's trying to show in these upcoming slides, that generally we feel we're able to budget appropriately for these studies in advance of knowing precisely which roadmap and which set of projects will be selected. Because it's where we find ourselves. But that's the intent, to try and address that with these examples. Yeah.
Yeah. Something else I think is interesting about that. I've been thinking a lot about Paul Mann's issues. He's the guy with the gray water. If we were to install a gray water installation at each of our 60,000 locations, it's about $300 million based on the $5,000 number that Sonoma Water grants to Cisterns. This project is pretty big, the Phoenix one, relative to the collecting from the gray water volumetrically. So it's only 5 million versus 300 million to do that. Now, there are obviously values of individual systems. It's just the cost of doing it over and over and over again versus taking one like that and getting 260 acre-feet on top.
Right. Definitely economies of scale there.
I don't think you're going to convince Paul, man.
No, of course not. I'm not trying to. Yeah. The cost per acre-foot for gray water systems, well, you include the investments from the consumers, of course, as you know, is much, much higher than maybe almost any of the projects we've looked at in water supply here. So just looking at this example of Marin Sonoma options, what is the kind of work that we still have to do even on something like this, right? Even if you just take the one statement, maximize the water from Sonoma, there's studies that we need to do to figure out what are the triggers for us to deploy, right? When are we going to purchase that water? When are we going to, right? How much of that water is going to spill? And then if we were to think about, okay, are we going to bring that water into one of the reservoirs directly or are we going to try to improve our own system? There's a comparative analysis that requires some modeling, right? Some design thought and process before we can just move forward and, you know, ask for bond funding to support some huge project. So there's quite a bit of work to do here, up to and including, you know, the level of design that we need to support CEQA, right? You heard Sean earlier, projects are grantable when you get to this, that sort of landmark and that's where we, what we need to be thinking about. And then similarly here in terms of local storage, there's a lot of work to do, not least of which hands up anybody who knows which reservoir we should be thinking about raising either the spillways or the dams on, right? There's just a level of analysis and detail that we need to get into to really confirm these concepts that we're talking about. And then again, another option that's out there is Edeluna DSal. As a concept, again, there's a lot of work to do and the first bullet there shouldn't be underestimated in terms of establishing a regional group to collaborate on that. We don't own any property in Edeluna, so, right, we're going to need partners. There is, just to give you a flavor, in terms of what, a lot of these projects that we've looked at just need a level of work and confirmation that need to occur over the next three to four years. And then how are we going to do it? We're relatively small, right? In terms of dedicated staff for water resources. I'm at the moment, right? We've got a water resources specialist, you saw Ricky, who's talking about hiring. Lucy supports the group, Kerry, of course. So we're going to be combining our resources with Crystal's group and their planning group to combine water resources and engineering planning to start to deliver some of these, this pre-designed work that we need to do augmented by consultants on the technical side and in terms of, we'd like to bring in a program manager as well. Because this is a big effort, kind of well beyond the scope and effort of anything and anyone on staff here at the district has really dealt with in the past. These are big, big, big projects that we have coming. So our milestones, you know, in terms of water supply side, we're hoping we can get through roadmap selection in February and then we can hit the ground running and start bringing on the consulting teams soon after that. And if, should the board decide, move forward with these sort of no-regret projects that we've talked about. And then we'll have, hopefully by around August timeframe, we'll be able to come up for air, we'll have a schedule approach so we have a better idea of what the timeframe and schedule will be going forward from there. So next up, I have Kerry, who's going to.
Yeah, maybe.
You want to pause?
I might suggest that we separate them out.
Yeah.
In this, just because it might, you might lose thoughts, but I think, just maybe, not to jump ahead, it is, I think that going, can you go back a slide a little bit? So I think that, I think that there's some challenging perceptions about what we're, so in February, a roadmap selection, that roadmap is going to include still continued, and this is, I'm throwing out a statement of, have you, y or n or clarify, is that there will be still continued investigation of some of the, the options that we've already all been seeing thus far in the process, of which there could, will still be some winnowing down to what, and I'm trying to use the language, is a final roadmap that is basically, here are the projects that we are saying we are going to pursue with further, with further commitment of design, planning and permitting and ultimately construction. But we're, but what we would have in February, if, which is the month we're in, I'm assuming that's the end of February, that there will still be alternatives included in the roadmap that, that will eventually be selected out. Or are you, are you thinking that by the end of this month, you know, that the many, you know, I'll just say the Intertie and DSal and the Sonoma connections, that some of those will be winnowed out and we will be down to a final roadmap?
I think what you'll, you know, if I was to go back to the sort of example roadmap, maybe that's more helpful. I think what you, you know, you might see additional categories added here, but we're not, I don't think, you may not see Interties appear on the roadmap, for example, right? So the board would sort of select these areas, right? We're not yet ready to tell you which is the optimum conveyance to storage, right? There's work that staff need to do. It may take another year or more for us to develop which of those is, right, the right approach for Marin Sonoma options. I do think the question, it's a really good one and it gets into the meat of this, but the, this is really an adaptive management process, right, that we're beginning. And, you know, when we looked at Armin's, Jacob's initial, right, these decision-making points where we continue on this path or we go to this path. In addition, let's just say hypothetically, this was where the board wanted to go. The way we think about it is, it's a prioritization more than a selection. Meaning, where does the board want us to invest all of this pre-design work now to better understand these concepts? Because it probably doesn't make sense to do that level of work on everything. So we're kind of prioritizing, yet I would expect, for example, were this the one of the roadmaps or the ultimate one, there'd probably be DSal here as well that would be kind of continue to monitor DSal projects and track refinements and technologies and costs. And then there'd be a point before we move to construction to confirm, you know, the ultimate decision of where the large dollars would be spent, something like that. So it's not, would Interties be here? Maybe, maybe not, but that's a discussion with the board. What of these broad categories do you want us to continue in some way, understanding, you know, out of the gate, as Paul mentioned, we do want to get going on the work. So it's a bit of a prioritization effort and less so we're excluding concepts versus what are we focusing on today? If that makes sense?
I think that makes sense. I think that the, I know this is just a concept that you're, we're reacting to. I think that there's, that if you, if you put back on, you know, the Intertie and DSal and have it all there, people are going to look at it and go, you haven't made a decision. You're not making any decisions. You're just, you're just continuing more and more study. And I know that, I believe that what you're saying is that, that we will begin at points to say, we're no longer going to continue to study X option because we're prioritizing, focusing more on another option. And that is a winnowing process, for lack of another word. I think that that needs to be shown in the graphic.
Right.
Because there is a point in time, there are projects we will build in the next, you know, in the next, you know, if we were to just use these numbers as fact, that by 2025, we are going to have 3,000 acre-feet of new water supply. And by 2028, 8,000 in there. Here is the roadmap that gets us to it. And it needs to, I think, start showing also the process where we will eventually, maybe it's 2028, we'll be like, here is our, here is kind of like our next 10-year plan. And it is, and things have come off the list and decisions have been made so that folks know that we have a process that's not just planning and planning and planning, but it is, it is that we are going to reach a decision point and make commitments. Are there other board comments?
Yes.
Questions?
Maybe just starting with a high-level remark. It feels like many of the water suppliers I, you know, I engage with, and I don't know if Larry would agree, but it feels like that, you know, new supply development is an ongoing, never-ending activity. And MMWD to me at least, again, I don't know if you're going to agree with me, but I feel like MMWD is striking in the fact that that has not been an activity that, you know, I see in other water districts. So I hope with the New Water Resources Department that we are actually transitioning into that and this strategic water supply assessment is going to be never-ending to some degree, although the need to make decisions is, as Monty is emphasizing, is also equally important. More specifically, Paul, you know, I, I think I'm surprised and I suspect a lot of the public will be surprised and this is just due to our lack of understanding of engineering planning, but, you know, I would have, I think we're going to have to be able to explain why the over 12 months of work now by Jacobs and the substantial investment in their program doesn't put us further ahead with pre-design. You know, it, it's, this is naive, but I would have thought that, you know, given the amount of time they've spent, things would be a little more advanced so that, you know, ways decisions were made, you know, we're pulling plans off the shelf because those have been prepared in this last, you know, in the 18 months or so that they've been working on this. Very naive, but it would just be, you know, if that, this is obviously not the case. You're saying that there's going to be major time spent now in pre-design and we just have to be then again, be prepared to explain that.
No, I think it's a good point. And, you know, classically, if you're an engineer, you've got one project and a couple alternatives around that project to consider. We're talking about water management alternatives. I think we had 41 different flavors of projects to think about and make sure the concepts behind those were solid. Those concepts now, we believe, are solid and crystallized to the point where we can use that information to start making decisions. Now, the next phase is to go off and start confirming those concepts, right? There's a lot of assumptions that are built into the conceptual planning. Yeah, I, I think the comment, and it's a good one, and I'm feeling it from, you know, the board and it's largely kind of a communications more than the substance in terms of, wow, the results of your year-long 700,000 planning effort is more planning, right? And we can't let that narrative take hold. We really need to explain that we're moving to implementation. And the first step in implementation is getting all these detailed answers so then you're ready to spend the big money for construction. And I don't know if calling it pre-design, we're trying to capture the right way to reflect that work. Maybe it's pre-construction, but, right, traditional engineering, planning, design, construction and, you know, probably many of these will be taken to a 30% design, but that's just engineering jargon. So we do have to work with Adrian and the board of, how do we capture this next phase that we're moving into in a way that resonates and shows progress and really shows implementation? What we're moving to implementation, so.
I think there's two things that stand out here. One is, maybe twice, cut one. We have as a board and a district, one chance in this effort. We have to hit the nail on the head for the first time. But I wanted to pick up on something that you said, Paul, that you brushed over, which bothered me, about raising spillways. To me, raising spillways is equivalent to driving a car without brakes, disabling the brakes. Assuming the spillways were designed properly, they are a failed, safe, no-moving-parts method of saving the dam. If you overtop an earth-filled dam like Kent, it is gone forever. That's why they were so worried about Whorville. A concrete dam like Alpine could probably handle the water going over the top. An earthen dam will fail if the water goes over the top. So we've got to be very careful in our thinking. It seems like a simple thing that Larry Bragman proposed is raise the spillways, but the spillways are critically designed to the hydrology of the site and they are your last-gasp effort. I worked for LA, for LA Water Power and had the opportunity to review Mahal's work on the San Francisco Dam. Mr. Mahal, who is not at all like the Chinatown Mr. Mahal, a very fantastic engineer, never returned to LA Water Power when the dam failed. He just walked out the door and never came back. And it was a, an engineering mistake in the anchoring of the wing walls of the dam that they didn't have soil mechanics when he went to school. My dad went to USC in '55, they still weren't teaching soil mechanics in '55. So, you know, the key thing here is that there's no room for error when you're messing around with spillways. They have to work precisely. And while, like I say, it seems like an easy concept, just raise the spillways, yeah, it's a lot more involved than that, assuming the original engineering was not problematic.
And we are going to hear today at lunch from Tony Williams and I did peek at his presentation. He does have some slides on what he's doing and I think what we'll find is they have a very unique circumstance that allows them to do this.
Two spillways.
Right. In all likelihood, well, we don't have that and, yeah, so that would, if the board, if the roadmap is local storage in addition to all the geotech and other work we have to do looking into three large dams, we do want to look at smaller opportunities, but I think Director Russell's on point that, you know, this is a real deal, this work when you're working with dams. There's only a few firms in the country that will do that work, given the liability associated with it. So this is one of, be deliberate and we will. War that in the roadmap. It's a really good one.
I'd like to build on what Ronjeep said and David Behar, Behar's comments and Christie's comments. And I think what you said in the beginning, which is that we are really early in this process and I think as a new board member. process, and I think as a new board member, that kind of blew me away how early we are. You know, I, I think it's pretty clear that at least two of the new directors won their seats because the public was disappointed with our lack of a water supply plan. And we're still even just talking about like maybe a roadmap and then we'll start to do design review. So I was actually really surprised how far behind we are, I think. And, and I, I'm not maybe as patient as David Behar might be here in the short term. So, you know, we spent $10 million to build an emergency Intertie across the San Rafael-Richmond Bridge because we didn't have a short-term emergency insurance plan. And so in the short term, we need that plan like now. And, and I think you got it. So I, I don't think we're that early in that process, but it has to be articulated to our community in a very, very clear way that we have the ability to get that 2,000 or 3,000 acre feet, and, and, and that's not something that we should delay on. I think we're actually pretty darned close to a medium-term plan in that kind of 5,000 acre feet area that you were talking about with not an enormous amount of, of new research and new consulting work. I mean, there's some, but I think we can start to say, we, we can go for it. Now, the 10, I think I saw 16,000 acre feet, which I hadn't seen before in a longer-term plan, that's going to take some work, that's going to take some more research, but the sooner we get going on that, the sooner we'll get access to the federal funds that have been allocated towards us and sooner we go after grant money. So, so I'm, I'm trying to reflect what I have heard from the constituents that I've spoke to and have been speaking to since the election, that they really are thirsting for a plan. The grand jury wanted it, the voters have said they wanted it, I think the people in the room have said they wanted it. So it's, I, I think we need to be talking more about a true plan and not just a high-level roadmap as, as soon as possible. The only thing that I saw missing from here, and I'm sure it's in there, is at least a little bit more work on recycling. Now, I, I know we think it's an expensive option, but there probably are significant grant funds available for recycling and there are, there are potentially some private contributions or public-private NGO work that we can do so, you know, it, it feels like that should be part of the thought process here as you're going forward and, and the coming.
One more comment. One, it's an interesting comment about recycling. All of us support it that have been here in the staff. The problem is places like the city of San Rafael, the other ones need to break some, ripping up their streets. That's the hooker in this end, but that's not the comment I really wanted to make. Hidden beneath the surface here is the issue, you, you mentioned something very interesting about a, a lack of progress in getting alternative water supplies, but the project that Ben put through with the, the standing pump station is a perfect example of, of an action now. It, it's a project that could have been avoided with better design from Northern End, but that's how life goes. It is what it is. But the point I really made is the hidden part of the conversation that you don't hear is really about growth and no growth. That's, that's the part why you're seeing what you see. It's not a reticence on the previous board, it's a reticence in the public that there's this undercurrent of whether you support growth or you don't support growth. It was a deciding factor in board elections in the past of which way a board ever went. I was probably the first of the pro-growth people that came in because I see it as, you know, everybody has, you live somewhere and you have to do what you have to do. But, but that's the part of the dragon anchor that you're hearing that you, you don't see it, but it's there. Half of our folks are going, no, no, no. I mean, if you were, oh, you weren't at the board meeting, but in the board meeting, there was a board meeting where a gentleman came in and said, in 1947, Tipperary was a wonderful place to live. Yeah. You know.
Larry, it, it seems that the whole arena and the state process may have shifted. Do you feel that may have shifted some of the dynamics where now there seems to be an understanding to some extent that the state is forcing it and they aren't taking any excuse, including water, we'll find more water, so.
I don't know, what I'm reading is the cities are suing the state. That's what I hear, places like Mill Valley and that are taking a pretty resistant approach.
Well, right, instead of coming at, that's what I mean, their attention is focused more on the state than on the water district necessarily.
Oh, I think that's true.
Yeah.
That's true. And I, I think it's important for us to understand as a group that we don't have an option as a water district. Our job is to supply the water. We're not land use planners, we don't make the decisions. We have a job to bring the water to the need. And, you know, so as, as we've talked, the windows in Ben's office are bulletproof. They're bulletproof because in 1976, when they put the moratorium in place, things got hot real quick building moratorium. And that's the kind of two-polar things we've got going all the time. One going, yes, we need to look at the future, and one going, the past is the best. So just keep that in your mind, you know, that there's this undercurrent in Marin that is a difficult one to deal with.
Good reminder, Larry, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I take something from the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
So I hear the undercurrent about time, so I'm glad I brought it up. It's obviously there for everyone in different ways. I agree 100% with Larry, growth is always underneath, and so there are people that you will not convince no matter what arguments you make. I agree with Ronjeve that there are a lot of folks who want action now and are going to be expecting it. I think that's what you were kind of getting at, and that's understandable. And I agree with Larry that there are people who stand up and say you're wasting money, no matter how strong the arguments are. Thing I didn't say in my first comment is there will be people at all of these meetings when you need us, who will say, who will stand up for you guys making the right decisions financially and on a water supply side, no matter how difficult they are. I'll, I'll be there, I predict the folks in this, who are sitting near me here will be there, and we'll get other people to be there also, because as a board member, I know how valuable that can be, because you're going to have the pitchforks out at the rate hearings, you're going to have the pitchforks out on, if you do, if you take anything off the list, like DSal, say, early on, there'll be people who say it's outrageous. And you can't get away from that, you have to let the, just advising my, you know, successors on the board is just recognize that it's always going to be ugly in a certain way, but perseverance is what, is what matters and, and doing the right thing. So on the, on the timing of water supply and on the winnowing, I agree that is really a nice option, maybe in the medium term or shorter term, to, to meet the kind of schedule objectives that Jed was expressing. I think essential to that will be a report, a robust and lengthy report that goes beyond the PowerPoints, I said this at a meeting two months ago, from Armin and his team, that goes into details on all of these elements and then can give you the undergirding for a decision to winnow, something like a 10 MGD plan at wherever, or whatever it is that, that might be winnowed. And so I, I want to just suggest that that's an essential part because I do think that winnowing without a lot of transparency about the reasons is going to be a weakness in the public process and make it harder for those who want to stand up and say, you guys are doing exactly the right thing, keep going, even if it costs us more money, et cetera, et cetera, is, is, it'll, it'll make it harder for, for those of us to do that. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to riff on something Ronjeve said about being a little frustrated after almost a year's study now, and I guess we've spent $700,000. To my surprise, we have learned, and I'm concerned particularly about DSal, we've learned virtually nothing about DSal operating characteristics. I expected that by now, the world's second-largest engineering consulting company would have pulled off the shelf what the world knows about DSal. Can it be ratcheted down to 2% or 3% of capacity? Probably not, but all we've heard from them on DSal is DSal can be shut down for two days to a week. After a year's time and $700,000, we should have learned more than that about DSal's possibilities for us. So I would encourage the board to push for that in the remaining meetings with Jacobs and express some disappointment that you have not learned more specific things about these more important possible supply alternatives. I think the board needs to speak out in the next few months or in the next few meetings to try to get Jacobs to come up with some of this important information that they just have to have for this 50-year-old technology. Thank you.
One more, and we, you've got three minutes.
I will, I will be brief. I think the board should start looking at beginning a winnowing process, agendizing this, this goes back to the previous board meeting, and starting with the ones that seem really obvious right now to put to the side, then as you learn more later, winnow it down a little bit more, but it would probably help the entire process to do this. And I want to point out something about Phoenix Lake. It's an engineering issue. When we have a major storm, when we have, or even storms, you can go by Phoenix and it will be brown, it will be filled with soap for multiple days. You can go over to Lake Lagunitas, Lake Lagunitas will clear up in about a day, but Phoenix will stay very turbid for a very long time. And I'm bringing this up because I've been concerned for years about eldritch grade primarily shaver and fish grade less so, the amount of erosion that's actually accelerating off Eldridge and coming directly into Phoenix. And so if you're going to pump that water up, will this be a problem for the impellers? Because you're going to have a lot of material in there with each storm. And so I think that's something that has to be considered as well. Thank you.
Very quick, I would, I would like to say, I'd like to see more about recycling in there, I don't think it's been addressed enough. And I, I also, it's also an education and communication issue, as is growth versus no growth, because growth versus no growth in water use across the country is very, very successful in many places without losing our beloved gardens. So it's education, we need that more. And there's a great Jack Black video about recycling that's hilarious that I recommend.
So we talked about water research, but water efficiency will be after our presentations at lunch, and so we're going to break.
Yeah, you know, five or so minutes, we'll grab lunch, come back here, and we'll start the lunchtime speech if that will turn.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Tony Williams, I'm the general manager with the North Marin Water District. I actually came from the county of Marin and worked with this gentleman right here for many years. I'm glad he's on your team now. And I worked with Sean years ago when he was at Napa County Flood Control, so it's good to, good to see some old faces here. I've got a lot of slides, but I'm, I'm not going to necessarily spend a lot of time on every slide. Really what I want to talk about is the outcome of our local water supply study that we completed back in July. Just real quick on our district, we're kind of the tale of two cities, where we cover the Nevada area and all the surrounding unincorporated parts of Nevada, but we also have services up into the Highway 101 corridor in Sonoma County, and that's a kind of legacy of our aqueducts that connects us with Sonoma Water. And then we, we cover Point Bay Station, Emreness Park, Bear Valley, Olima, and what's called Paradise Ranch Estates just north of Emreness Park. And we've got, we've got boundary in the Marshall area, you see a large area along the east side of Tamal's Bay, but we really don't provide any services there. I'm working with LAPCO to get that removed. And then we have a sewer system, a wastewater system up in Ocean and Marin, and we actually don't provide any water in that area. This year is our 75th anniversary, so I got to show our new logo on that. You know, we've been, we've been looking for water since 1948 when we formed. We, we took over the Nevada water system, which was all groundwater, and right away determined we don't have enough water. So this is just a snapshot of all the various studies we've done over the years. Basically, 1950s groundwater, we did build Stafford Dam in the 50s, so we relied on Stafford, but quickly that was sort of not keeping up with growth in Nevada. Really, our partnership with Sonoma County Water Agency, Sonoma Water began in the 60s, but really the 70s, we were pretty reliant on Sonoma Water. We did raise Stafford Dam in the 80s, but, you know, today and since the 90s, we're, we're pretty much, you know, we always use 75, 80% dependent on Sonoma Water. We did spend one of the largest capital expenditures we've ever done in the history of the district is our recycled water program, which began in earnest in 2011, about $30 million invested. I'll talk a little bit more about that. So just real quickly, we, we did put out an RFP in July of 2021. We selected West Yost, a really good team that looked at what we wanted to do, and they, they actually completed in April after our second workshop, but we did some analysis on backfeeding of Stafford Lake that I'll talk about, and so our board accepted that in July of last year. And again, just, you know, summarize, Stafford in the last two years only provided 8% of our demand, and these are all Nevada area numbers, by the way. And so again, 70, 70 to 85% is typical for Sonoma Water imports, and then recycled water is kind of hovering around 7% to 10%. So the things we looked at was, I'm sure, some of the things that the Jacob study is looking at and, 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 you know, probably, you're probably doing more, but we did look at, since we started out as a groundwater water company, is there any possibility of groundwater and coupled with that, this whole notion of aquifer storage. We looked at expanding our recycled water system, we looked at some of the, two different ways of doing indirect potable reuse of recycled water. We looked at our treatment plant at Stafford, we looked at capturing stormwater, kind of a mini version of what's called flood mar. And we obviously wanted to look at increasing this capacity of Stafford Lake, which is really what I'm going to focus on today, and we did look at DSal. So the goal was to try to come up with a 1,000, a 2,000 acre feet per year local supply, and I put this little graphic, this is the number one hit on our website, is what is an acre foot? So I just had to share that. We looked at both, when we evaluated those options, we looked at both a quantitative criteria as well as a qualitative criteria. And again, I think West Yost did a really good job of kind of categorizing those, those areas. So maybe not surprisingly or surprisingly, these are, these were the lowest-ranking alternatives. The aquifer storage and recovery is really not an option in majority of Eastern Marin County. There's just not a good groundwater basin, it's a very shallow groundwater, you know, what's, what is available is shallow. We looked at a potential of maybe 50 to 100 acre feet per year of yield, but we're in the tens of thousands of gallons per minute. We're at a very low pumping rate that really just make, didn't make any sense. Recycled water expansion, we kind of, we kind of, we're very strategic when we rolled that out, so expanding that system gets very complicated and very expensive. Not to say that all, just about all the new development that's happening in Nevada is kind of within our recycled water corridor, so it works out pretty good that we will continue to really push recycled water, it's, it's actually a requirement for new development where, where it's available. Indirect potable reuse, there's two, two common ways of dealing with that, you can inject it into the groundwater, or you can put it, you can supplement a reservoir storage, and those just didn't really work out for us as well. The problem for DSal in Nevada is, is really not a good location for it, and of course there's an economiescale. Having said all that, we, we think aquifer storage and recovery, which is something Sonoma Waters is doing, indirect potable reuse and DSal are definitely regional opportunities. We, we are willing to partner on a regional basis for those types of, of projects. So what we did come up with was So what we did come up with was three projects. One, very low hanging fruit, not a big yield, but we think we can make some improvements at our treatment plant at a very low cost. It doesn't really give us a whole lot of additional supply, but it's an operational efficiency type project. So we're going to be looking at that starting this year. The one that really is something that the district has been thinking about for many years in conjunction with Marin County Flood Control District is modifying our spillway. We have a very unique spillway, and we'll get into that. And then kind of down the road a little bit, there are some opportunities in the upper parts of Nevada Creek to capture stormwater and either, you know, try to get it into the ground or get it into our lake. And that one's a little more challenging, but it's not something we're jumping right into. I'm just going to skip over the water treatment part and just go to the dam. This is a Google Earth image of Stafford Dam. What we're talking about is modifications to the spillway. We actually have, we actually have two spillways on this dam. It's very unique. The yellow line there is the original spillway before the dam was raised. And when the dam was raised, it got shifted downstream, and that's why we have this second spillway. It's a passive lake, which I think most of MMWD's reservoirs are passive. In other words, when it gets to a flood control elevation, it just starts spilling. We don't, we don't release water. We don't have to do a lot of gyrations of management like our partners to the north have to do with the Army Corps of Engineers. So here's a shot of an area between those two spillways. You typically don't go into this area, but for purposes of this discussion, you know, I actually got a chance to climb down into this area and take this photo. So we're talking about this notch. It's a flood control notch. It's designed to attenuate the volume of water as it's starting to spill. In other words, instead of this huge slug of water going over spillway, it's like a kind of a smaller slug of water initially going through. It's only three feet by 10 feet. So it's a tiny little notch. So what we're talking about doing, and this is not the greatest photo, but we could put in a raiseable or adjustable gate, literally a piece of metal, that in these last atmospheric rivers, we probably would have raised it and captured that additional three feet of water. That gives us about 725 acre feet of additional volume. It is a, and there's actual spillage. You can see the notch. You can't see the notch because it's full of water. But that's what we're talking about, is holding back that additional three feet and, you know, eventually treating it and putting it into our, into our system. Just real quickly, downstream of the dam is, there's actually two small watersheds that tie into Nevada Creek, the Leveroni Creek watershed and the Bowman Canyon watershed. And so there are, you know, there's very little development in that area, and I don't think there ever will be. There is, I think the, this Bowman Canyon site is a potential county housing site, but it's kind of a long shot. So, and this is not a project we came up with necessarily. This is a project that, when I first met Drew McIntyre, who was my predecessor, I was working for the city of Nevada in conjunction with Marin County Flood Control, and we were looking at flood control projects on Nevada Creek. And this was one of those projects. But we weren't really thinking about water supply, but this could be an interesting project where we either build a detention basin, which is depicted by this, and capture that water, and then as Stafford is drawn down, we pump it into Stafford. Or we could just let it go into the ground and put in a well and pump that water into Stafford. So a little bit more difficult to do, but something we're keeping our eyes on. So a pretty modest CIP budget for this year, but we do have, we earmarked $1.5 million specifically for the dam. We think it's going to be much less than that, but you never know about these things. From an engineering standpoint, I know we have some engineers in the room, it's a really simple project. I mean, we literally could build this in a month or two. From a regulatory standpoint, it's really complicated. And that's putting it mildly. We have had some consultations with the Division of Safety of Dams, and, you know, we will, we will look very closely at that additional three feet of head pressure on the dam. We don't think it'll be a problem. And that obviously causes potentially more seepage through the dam, so we want to look at that very carefully. You know, as a dam owner, it's a very nerve-wracking asset. It's pretty much a quiet thing off on its own, but if something happens to it, it's very detrimental. So we're going to be very cautious about that. But the Division of Safety of Dams process is pretty simple. You fill out a form, you make sure you've done CEQA, you make sure you provide those engineering analysis, and then they do their review. So that part's easy. We've had some consultation with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There is potentially impacts both upstream and downstream by holding back this water. So we want to make sure we look at that. We're lucky in the fact that we have one shoreline property owner, and that's the County of Marin. We own the rest of the shoreline. We lease it out to the Indian Valley Golf Course. There is a golf cart path that gets really close to being inundated at that additional three feet. But from a stakeholder standpoint, it's pretty simple as well. But we want to do our due diligence, and we're working right now on CEQA, kind of developing a strategy and analyzing what additional information we need to do. Just real quickly, West Marin, like I said, we cover Point Ray Station, Olima, Bear Valley. And we are 100% reliant on groundwater out there. We just completed the Gallagher. I'm just going to skip through Gallagher. Is our upstream wells not susceptible to sea level rise? And well number two took a long time to get through all the environmental hurdles, but that was approved on Halloween night and is now in full production. The Department of Water Resources, in my opinion, is one of the greatest agencies to get grant funding with because they're, it's pretty, it's pretty hands-off. They don't make you fill out a million forms. We had a really young project manager. She was fantastic. We just got $200,000 amendment, so we're close to $700,000 was contributed, or was supplemented for this well number two project. As you know, groundwater is a very difficult thing. We're lucky that the Lagunitas Creek watershed is not part of the state's sort of groundwater basins. I'm going to skip through some of this. But we are, we are very tied to Marin Municipal, or Marin Water, excuse me, in that we coordinate releases from the Kent Reservoir. We have provisions if we need to. We can ask for water out of Nacasio. So we're kind of, we're kind of tied together with this, I don't know if everyone's seen this goofy graph, but, and Sean and I have talked about this a lot. There are normal versus dry years, and it depends on what you guys have to release downstream. We don't, we don't draw directly out of the creek. It's not a well that's directly influenced by surface water, but surface water is the main, you know, that's how groundwater is formed in that basin. I think that's, that's it. I can answer any questions before I turn it over to...
I just wanted to, you know, stuffing my face in here, Tony, so it's selfish question. I apologize for that. And I did really want to thank Tony and Grant, who was our next speaker, for making the time and really introducing themselves and their agencies to the new board members that we have, three of them, of course, as you know. And, you know, these are our key partners, our key collaborators currently and, you know, likely well into the future. So these are good connections to make and hopefully, so anyway, I don't want to get in front of questions you may have for Tony. I just wanted to do that.
Tony, great to meet you. Looking forward to ongoing discussions and good collaboration.
Absolutely.
You didn't talk much about your, well, you didn't address your water efficiency programs. And I believe you've had AMI now running for a while. Would be great to hear
Yeah.
A little bit about both the pros and cons that you've experienced with AMI.
AMI is a fantastic program. There's no, there's no two ways about it. I'm a customer. I look at my AMI readouts. You can see a leak right away. You can try to understand what's causing that leak. I wasn't around when we implemented that. I know that was a little bit painful to try to swap out all the, but all of our residential customers in Nevada are on AMI. All new customers get the AMI system. We don't have our commercial customers on that, but we are, we are trying to implement that over the next couple of years because those are big users, and it sometimes helps for them to see what's happening. Our, we used to call them customer service reps, and now consumer service reps. They use that system daily to see if something's happening. They use that to notify customers that there's a problem. They use it to follow up with customers to see why there might be a problem, try to narrow it down. We do not have it in our West Marin system because of the technology. There's a lot of hills, the radio transmission is potentially a problem. But it's also an economiescale. I was talking with Brett about, we have 800 customers. It's hard to spread that cost over 800 customers, but it is a fantastic program.
Great. Good to have that.
Have you quantified water savings from AMI? Do you look at it as a water savings, a customer tool? How do you think about it in terms of the value it brings?
You know, I don't know, Ben, if we've actually, you know, quantified it, but I think we probably could over time. It is definitely a tool, and it works both ways. It works for the customer if you get savvy with it. It's not, it's not so technically challenging that you can kind of pick it up. But like for me, I can look at and see, okay, we need to get a new washing machine because we see these spikes on Sunday when we do wash. And it's like, you can see it graphically. And so it's a tool for the customers, and like I said, not only do our consumer reps use it daily, but our water conservation coordinator also is super savvy with it and looks at it for different purposes. So it's a tool both ways.
I have one other quick one. You said you have 100% sign-up, I believe, of your residential customers. Of course, the service areas are a bit different in a whole lot of ways. Did you get any pushback? And if so, how you dealt with both fears of the, you know, electric flux stuff as well as kind of Big Brother? Those are two kind of areas of concern from our customers.
Yeah, I don't think there was a lot of pushback during the implementation, but we do have a policy that, and since I've been with the district for three years now, just close to three years, there's only been one customer who brought something to the board asking to be taken out of AMI. And it was, it was like a health thing, which was kind of a stretch because it's, you know, it's out on the street. It's not near their house. But we really didn't experience like what PGE experienced with smart meters. You know, I can't explain that, but we do have a policy that allows customers to opt out if they want to.
Do you charge them for the meter read if they...
Yes. Yeah. It's pretty nominal, but it does trigger a manual read cost.
Are you using cell phone to transmit?
You know, I'm not sure if it's a cell modem that's, it's, there are little transmitters in the...
It's probably cell.
Yeah, it's probably a cell that receives all those.
Yeah, they send it on the carrier frequency instead of on the transmission.
Yeah.
Are you doing monthly billing?
Bimonthly.
Still bimonthly? Have you looked at monthly?
God, you sound like one of my board members. No, it's come up every once in a while, but we haven't, we haven't made that switch.
Because you now have the tools.
Right. It is, it is a little bit of a burden from just an accounting standpoint, but we're still doing the bimonthly.
I'll just jump on appreciation of your AMI leadership. I mean, you're, I think, nine years ahead of where we plan to be, and that's if we implement that plan. So I want to encourage us to accelerate our AMI implementation. I mean, this is, this is, you know, decades that we're, that we're, that we need to catch up in terms of just using data to make our system more efficient and help our customers get it. So I hope that this is a big part of our investment plan, and I hope we accelerate it from what I've seen before. I think we're, I think it's 2028 where we expect to have it out. So thank you for showing us the way and showing us it can be helpful. Similar question on the recycling effort. I'm just curious about your investment in that and ROI and your community's pushback because we're hearing a lot of pushback. It's expensive, and we're also hearing folks saying we need to get more independent from rain, and that is one way to go about it. So how did that go in your community and what lessons can you teach us as we try to think about implementing it here?
Well, so we only have just under 100 customers for our recycled system. So it's mostly commercial, it's all commercial customers. And to be honest, to expand that to residential use is very, it's highly regulated, and I would argue it's more regulated than it needs to be. We are still paying off loans for that work and will be for the next 15 years. That's, that troubles me as a general manager because I see that debt and it just drives me crazy.
Which we share with you.
Yeah. And so, and, and, you know, we're lucky that we have, I mean, we talked about partnerships. We have a good partnership with Los Colinas Valley Sanitary District and Nevada Sanitary District. So we don't make the stuff, right? We just distribute it. And so without that kind of partnership, it would really be a challenge. It is weird that there's three agencies involved in delivering that product. Are, you guys, we wish we could have a recycled program or a residential program like you have. You have a, you have the Civic Center, you have this big parking lot. We don't have anything like that in Nevada. And quite frankly, where we've been doing it, I'm surprised the city of Nevada hasn't come down on us for like traffic control and things like that because it's a little, it's a little sketchy. So there are definitely challenges with the system. As I said, we're not really looking at expanding that other than through 2030, with what we know of development in Nevada, it's going to continue to offset our potable demand, but by 2030, we sort of break even. And so maybe we revisit expansion at that point, but it's very expensive, and there's a lot in the ground, right? I mean, right now, I don't know about the rest of Marin, but Nevada's going crazy with fiber optic. There are 15 crews out there digging up the streets. So it's a real challenge, but it's, you know, I'm glad we made that investment.
Last question that may relate to Grant as well. Curious about your thoughts on the regional approaches to getting grants, not just getting grant, but grants. And like how, you know, with a lot of the effort that North Bay Water Association is putting into helping us think through regional approaches, what are your thoughts on how we could partner with you and potentially Sonoma and other water districts to leverage the need for both state and federal grants? And how do you feel like that's going right now, and how can we be supportive?
So we are part of a contingent that was sponsored by Sonoma Water that's up in Sacramento right now. So our, my chief engineer's on that trip. We don't have, and I was talking to Brett, we don't have the staff, we don't have a grant staff. So we're huge proponents of regional collaboration. We joined the Marin County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, so we're part of a regional approach for FEMA funding, which we actually have a FEMA grant for our sewer system. We're looking at some grants for our Nevada and West Marin water systems. And I think that regional collaboration has really helped that and leveraged, you know, getting that money. So I'm a huge fan of that. And I think we've got, you know, between the MBWA and MBWRA, you know, groups in place, we have that ability to do that. So I'm a big fan of that. So I'm a big fan of that.
I'll quickly chime in here, my full time, and we have Grant to present still. So I'm very excited about regional partnerships. I think, in my own personal feeling, is that that's where a lot of resilience comes from in the future. So we're glad that we have an existing partnership and more opportunities coming. One question I have for you that you didn't mention in your project to raise Stanford was the State Water Resources Control Board. And I don't know whether your water right is being a bent, allows for that raise? Or is it opening up your water right to new terms and conditions?
Yeah, really good question. I mentioned, we were right in the middle of a full analysis of our water rights because our West Marin water rights are really complicated. So through our district council, we had Wagner and Bon Signori, great outfit. They're mostly engineers. But what we concluded is within our existing Nevada Creek water rights, as long as we don't, let's say we fill the lake up that extra three feet, as long as we don't draw it down to its lowest point every year, we would stay within our water rights. So we think we can manage within our existing rights and we wanted to avoid any kind of modification.
Thank you.
Well, we'll come back to public after Grant.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. I'm Greg Davis, the general manager at Sonoma Water. And I really appreciate having the opportunity, the invitation of Ben and Paul to come down and be with you for a short period of time today. I know you've probably had a bunch of PowerPoints, so I consciously took mine out. So don't take that as a slight, but I just kind of figured if you're working all day in this load, I can just do a couple of ones and then we'll go into a Q and A. But first thing I'd be right out of business to say, you took probably one of the best staff members out of Sonoma Water that we have that does water conservation and Carrie Pollard, and we sorely miss her. But in the spirit of regional cooperation, this is the next best thing to come down in Marin. I want to briefly go through kind of a tale of two years, basically. We're all really quite shocked with what's happened in the last month. And I can't hide the fact that I'm almost giddy about it as long as it didn't derive too much destruction. But literally nine atmospheric rivers coming in and hitting our facilities is absolutely stunning. I've never seen anything like it. And I'll go through a little bit of what it actually means for water supply. But my main message here today is I was born and raised in Marin, went to Redwood High School, spent over half my career in Marin County. And I really want to work with the new board members and the existing ones that I have relationships with and stress to you that I am absolutely confident some of the bright minds that are in this room and the engineers that are in this room can figure out the incremental benefits and projects that we can jointly work on together as a region. That question that was asked about regional leveraging for state and federal funding, that is what we have to do better than other regions, quite frankly. We are length at the hip. The north coast, the North Bay is this logical region. And the better we work together, the better we do. And the example of that is today, as Tony mentioned, one of our directors and a whole crew of the water contractors are up meeting with Chris Trenell, who is probably the person that's going to make the decisions on these integrated water management approaches, the drought resiliency planning. If that's not good enough, they're going up to Nancy Vogel in the governor's office. At the end of the day, we're pitching what we do here, how we are consciously leading the way on water conservation. That's what, in the last round of funds, we got money from the state, specifically because we were out ahead of LA and San Diego. We were actually meeting the numbers and then some on water efficiency, helping the governor and the state meet their goals of water conservation in severe drought. And we've done that. First year, we ended up with three ASR wells that we're in the process of establishing right now. They're not easy and we'll get it done, but it took state money to do it. Best thing after that was Chris said, well, you know what? Your contractors, your region excelled and we got a significant number of state grants for projects for drought relief. And then what you want to do is leverage those on a federal level. So you've got a contiguous area here with one congressman essentially representing us, who is steeped in water, your colleague, former board member here. And he wants us to work together and find a way forward. That's my message. And so take it or leave it, but I'm telling you, we are looking forward to helping make this whole region more resilient. That's take home. So this is Lake Mendocino from 2019 up to 2023 here. And I'm just going to orient you why I'm optimistic. We've proven that we can actually succeed with forecast-informed reservoir operations. It's called FERO. And we're actually in the FERO pool right now in Lake Mendocino. And I think we're going to get there in Lake Sonoma, which is what I want to focus on today. So this is just your normal storage curve. But in here, above the 68,000 acre feet to 8,000 is what's now a FERO pool. Means as we co-manage our water supply with the Army Corps of Engineers, they get it for winter, store it for flood control purposes, and we manage it for water supply. Well, for the last decade, we've been working to get them comfortable with holding back, taking a little bit more risk based on the fact that we have much better precipitation modeling, much better able to predict where the atmospheric rivers are going to come, how long they're going to be, are they going to go above our dams or below? And as a result, we went from, on an average year, you can see what tends to cycle here. This is the average through four years of water supply at Lake Mendocino. It's a smaller reservoir. And this year is the average storage that we get from historical models. And this is what actually happened. So you can start to see, back in 19, we got up into the pool. The Corps has to, they don't have a choice. Currently, they don't have a choice. They must release water when it's at 68,000 acre feet. It's a smaller reservoir. We had to go there first because it was the one that was most pressed. And this started, by the way, back in 2014 when the Corps released 25,000 acre feet of water out of Lake Mendocino in two days. That is not the way to manage a reservoir. We didn't see a drop of water after that and we ended up in severe drought. So we said we got to do better. And that's actually what we embarked upon with our colleagues at Scripps and with NOAA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So this is the story. Come to this year, we're down really in historic lows in Lake Mendocino as of December. And we're thinking, here we go again, fourth year of a drought. We're really going to have to come up with some dynamic options. Christmas hits and we're looking at this incredible spike that you're seeing there. And in a very short order, we went from, what is that? About 38,000 acre feet up above the flood control pool, up into 90,000 acre feet of water. And here's the signal, the Corps had to make releases here to get down to the flood FERO pool. They did that after getting water vacated to make sure Gurnville and other places didn't flood. That's the key. It takes about four days to take a water molecule out of Mendo out to Jenner. So it's an astounding occurrence, really, when you think about it. And the fact that the Corps is managing that reservoir right now at this level, the high end of our FERO pool, and they're going to maintain that as long as they can. And as these spring rains come in, that is the target, to keep that water all the way through the end of the spring to start the year at 80,000 instead of 68,000. This is another way of looking at it. So the FERO pool actually goes up around mid-March. And it's working. I guess that's the bottom line. It's working. We've got an additional 11,000 acre feet and that will start to trend up a little bit further as we go into the spring. Lake Sonoma, this is our larger reservoir where the majority of the water supply actually comes. And you'll notice something different here. This is the storage curve. It's a straight line. You can't call it a curve. It's a line. And that is what the Corps does. They have to, this is the water conservation pool. That's the flood control pool. And the same sort of business is currently, if we get up to 245,000 acre feet, the Corps starts releasing and it's just a flat line. And we've had to work consciously to say, if you can tell an atmospheric river is not coming, which is the art form, you can keep on to that water. And as they come in, we've got a really good improved forecast seven to 10 days out. So Scripps and the water modelers put out pretty rigorous, twice a day, you can watch this and see, what's not coming is as important as what is coming. So that is basically the average storage that continues on a year, four years. You can see that's what it's looked like. And this is what actually happened. So here we are, looking at about, what was it? Just under 100,000 acre feet, maybe 97,000 acre feet of water in our largest reservoir before the end of December. And in one month's time, we shot up beyond the average and we are excitingly close to the actual flood control pool for the Corps. We could be in a situation this year where the Corps is managing deviations on both reservoirs. It's never happened. Here's the kicker. If you took this, the logical sequence out into that area, this is the full FERO pool that we've got. It's called a minor deviation. It's allowing the Corps to hold back 11,000 acre feet of water. It can take that all the way up to 19,000 acre feet of water as you get out into March. So that spike there means the pool can hold that water back and the Corps is going to manage it for this. So when you start thinking about the magnitude of this, that's 30,000 acre feet of water that we're going to get basically by reoperating a reservoir and changing the rules. That's not cement. That's not pipes. That's actually better water management. And it's amazing. We've three years running, got plenty of opportunity to show them how this works. I'm very confident that we're going to get FERO established in the Lake Sonoma permanently with the same plan, the same sort of team we did with Mendocino. So Mendocino, you're going to have a rule curve that's written in including FERO for the first time on a reservoir ever. And I think we will share that with other communities. So Orange County right now, Prado Dam, they've got their FERO working, their groundwater basin, and they take water out of the reservoir and get it into the ground for later use. Proof in the pudding, they're doing it now. So that's kind of an exciting way. This is just another way of looking at this pump that as you get into the spring, you go up from 11,000 closer to 19,000 acre feet. It's a lot of water. You think about, we saw 41,000 to 45,000 acre feet of water in an entire year. Between these two reservoirs, we could be looking at, you know, almost that double that supply.
So if I could, just a quick point of clarification, right? We have seven dams and lakes. None of them are flood control, these co-lakes. So this is awesome and this benefits all the contractors for sure, us as well, with the work they've done. And it's really remarkable. But in terms of our lakes, it's not really in play for us. We aren't constrained by flood control pools.
That's all true. That's all true.
I just want to jump in and say, we hear a lot about how better data analytics and modeling are going to improve resilience. This is probably the first, this is the most striking example of that that I've seen.
Yeah, I would agree. The data, you're talking about AMI, you're looking at, looking at the science and the data to make decisions. That's what I'm asking us to consider too. Think about not just FERO, but other examples where you are looking now, and I can't keep up with it, I try to. Ben and Paul have done a very good job, I must say to the board, of keeping us urgently looking at, what are we going to do about supply? How are we going to look at these things together? And that's the sense that I know we can find a way. I'm looking at it, the same way you will look at it, is what would be the cost? What would the timeframe be? What would the net outcome be? And I tell my board that same thing. My message is, our board has plenty to do, but they don't just focus on water and they don't just do sanitation. They're looking at transportation, they're looking at healthcare, energy. And so you actually get the, in some ways, the luxury to hone in and really go deep on how do you make this region more resilient? How do you make sure you look at your reservoirs? I think with not too much difficulty, you could probably look at your reservoirs and possibly if you took the precision of the forecast coming in and maybe manage that way too, you could probably eke out, take a little bit more risk as long as you can vacate your reservoirs. This FERO concept doesn't require the Corps. So that makes me think you actually could probably do something along those lines at some point. Have to be safe, but you have a large number of reservoirs. They're linked. You can't do it now, but you don't have the Corps of Engineers that you're having to negotiate with. So it makes me think that you might have a good shot at something like this. I'm going to stop there because I think I've said enough in terms of the spirit of which I'm coming down here. I can vouch for your staff. They are diligently working, with Tony and I and our community. And I absolutely am convinced that working together regionally is going to reap huge rewards. We're going to, if we do that well, I think we're kind of competing with other regions. So I want us to be better prepared than San Diego, better prepared than LA. God knows they get enough. The Central Valley, everybody has needs. If we band together with high priority projects, and here's the best example before I quit. Last year, this is a perfect example. Ben and Paul and I were working on how do we get through this drought? And we, the year before, had worked with Petaluma and Ben and Paul led with a letter of agreement to basically transfer water to make up for some restrictions that we had to get down here. It was a brilliant piece of work and we were able to pull off a very important transfer and coordination on our water supply. Last year, about April, I mean, October, when we knew an atmospheric river was coming, we could see it, just about seven days out, we had been working with the state board. We're regulated by the same State Water Resources Control Board that you are. And we said, look, Marin is really in need of additional supply. Currently, we were in a 20% demand reduction out of the Russian River by our temporary urgency change petition, which is what guides our water year. And we went to the, with that knowledge, we went to the state board and said, we need relief. We want to capture that storm, get it into our system and get it down to Marin County. And in fact, we did. About 450 million gallons of water over a period of time to do that. That's staggering. And that's called winter water. It's water when it's available. And the state is aware that that is an opportunity for us. We need to do more of that, look at the wintertime water supply, the capacity in there and figure out how to get it here. And that is, I think, a lot of our work that's going to come. So I'll stop there.
Yeah, I'm going to jump on that. I'm coming at this role with the lens that a stronger, deeper, more secure partnership with your agency is going to be critical to our success in the short, medium, and long term.
Right.
I, and I point towards the winter water and the storage capabilities as being probably the key way to do it. And what I want to know, it doesn't have to be right now, but maybe you can start, to turn the relationship around a little bit from Marin is taking your water to what can Marin do for Sonoma? What, how can we change the dialogue to open up a true long-term partnership? And let us know what we can do so that we can come to the table with some really clear regional proposals? And, you know, I think you know what our needs are, but I'd love to know more about how we can help you.
I can short answer and then I think that's for future discussions. But honestly, Marin, thinking about, for example, we have about six caissons that we use to divert water out of the Russian River and they need to be maintained. And there, three of them are down right now. For us to maximize the winter water component means we have to be less seasonal in our operation. We need to be more annual. And that means we're not used to running our systems that way. If Marin could approach our contractors, again, the contractors is really the target. We're wanting to work. I think it's the contractors that want to hear from Marin that you see investing in our systems to make us all more resilient is a path we all benefit from. You already pay a little bit more than some of the other water contractors based off of not being a prime contractor. There's an option later on. But I would say investing in systems that make sense and make us all more resilient is a pathway I think we're all going to agree on. And I'm really heartened to hear that that's sort of how you see it because I think it can happen. I'd love to be able to be putting some dollars from Marin, designed to make us more resilient, looking at groundwater banking, making sure our pumps are running throughout the year without going down. We could use that. And that's just the good cost to deal with business and it is about relationships.
And money.
And money? Yeah, yeah, to owe money, that's right.
I'd just like to thank you, Grant, for your leadership in this. I think you've done a phenomenal job here. Also, I think it's important to recognize Jared Houghlin's role because he pounded on the Corps of Engineers to change the management of those reservoirs.
That's right.
Was a very hard task for him and for your guys to continue to pound on it because of the need jerk about the flood site. You know, everybody knows the Yuba River and all those kind of things that all these dams were built for at various times to stop flooding. And it's really hard to change the thinking of an agency like the Corps who is risk adverse to the extreme on these issues like this. But thank you very much for your help.
Appreciate your leadership too.
Any other board questions for either Tony or Grant? Yeah. Just one very basic one. Could you explain the winter water concept? How reliable is that? We hear that even in the driest years, we can expect, you know, substantial winter waters that'll be available. Is that correct?
It is correct. Even in the dry years, you can pull water off the river safely with our own water right. Paul, I'm looking at you right there. You've looked at this, I mean, from your own staff. How reliable do you think that might be in given year? I mean, from your own staff, how, how reliable do you think that might be in given, given years?
Because... Yeah, I mean, Grant and Director Kish, so over the period from 2020 to 2021, we've obviously had some very dry years in that period of time with 2020 being one of the very driest. Even during that year, there's still 80,000 acre feet of water that go out to the ocean. That's, that's the minimum that we've seen. The maximums are above 3 million acre feet.
Yeah, as I recall, the
Huge range.
The Germville peak flood flow is 30,000 acre feet a day.
Yeah.
Something in that order.
The trick in dry years, not the trick, the challenge so to speak, is grabbing it when it's available and having the capacity to grab it as much as you can when it's available and where do you park the water? Right? So it's ability to take it because during a very dry year, you may get one good storm and you see it coming. You need a way in how much, right? So it goes in sizing and costing and trade-offs. And that will be, if we go this direction in the roadmap, you know, one of the early things we'll need to look at is sizing that facility and the trade-offs of cost and yield.
Yes, but again, very, very basic. Even in the driest years, those small amounts of precipitation add up because of the watershed, the Russian River watershed, to produce a very substantial winter water flow.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, that's, that's quite, you know, I don't think, most of us certainly, myself, do not appreciate.
Honestly, we didn't know until we looked at that deeply too. What's the historical trend? And until you go all the way back, you know the wet ones you can do it. But boy, finding out that just about every year you could do this is pretty reliable. So then it is a matter of sizing and teeing up, how do you get that water off into storage and down? So yeah, it's pretty heartening to know that pathways are doing it. In some ways, it's going to be the relationships to pull off and make sure we're functioning to be able to say what makes most sense. And honestly, there's been a long history here. Let's go all the way back and you think about just the construction of Water Springs Dam. That was highly controversial, divided communities up, you know. But now that it's built, let's take full advantage of it and make it work for our whole region.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I would say, Grant, thank you again for coming down. And I think that focus on relationships is really kind of a key one because I think we are eager to have a stronger regional partnership with Sonoma and all of our neighbors recognizing the benefit. The challenge being helping us to identify what we can do in the near term in the sense that we're, we're eager to make decisions and commitments to build our water supply resiliency because the experience that we went through recently is just, is not replicable. We can't do that again. So we're, we're, and part of when we look at our options for, for water supply resiliency, feasibility is, you know, is one of our key factors. And when we look at what we control within our own watershed, that's, that's much more of a known factor. Relationships with Sonoma are out of our control and they're, and they're driven by a lot of different factors. Your partnership and leadership in helping us to identify what we can do for Sonoma, what do we, what do we bring to the table that, that helps bring partnerships to see what we can do and how we can be better? I think the stars are very well aligned with Congressman Huffman and our longstanding relationships. I think we're really well set. Time is not our best friend right this second. In the sense that we have this, we have this word of appropriation that we want to get, we don't want to have disappear and our, our need to make some real commitments with our, our ability to improve our water supply resilience kind of puts us really on a, on the, he is on us. And even though we've all were loving the water that we've gotten in the last two years, the pressure is on us, just like as though our reservoirs are still at 30%.
I recognize that. Thanks for reinforcing that, Bonnie. You know, just that I think we were having some pretty healthy dialogues over the last couple of years. I think there's a sincere ability, you've got Tony and me here. We're going to be talking to the validity of how that partnership can work in a pretty, pretty quick order. I think you're probably going to get some good info and that info will help you probably guide where you think it's likely. I'm just trying to send a message as strongly as I can that we ought to be able to take advantage of the circumstances and the ability to predict and the ability to look at incremental projects that make sense and look at the cost and the feasibility. And I know that that's, we've got to try that, that, that pathway exists. And that's why I can, that's why I want to stress, get us into a decision to talk. We've got wire agreements that are, that have been reached before. But I think in many ways, new, new players are on the horizon. There's enough change that I don't think there's baggage that, that used to be built up. Years ago, there was admittedly some baggage and different ways of doing business. So I'm hoping we can focus on the stuff that works.
Now, the public quickly, we've got to move along. Sir, you have the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I? Grant, it's nice to meet you. Thanks for your time. And I feel what the colleague said about building relationships and strength, that was a big focus for me as well. I was wondering if you could touch on briefly the potential for the groundwater storage? We hear a lot about groundwater banking is a new upcoming thing, but if you could touch on that in terms of potential, our partnerships.
If you let me briefly, that's a great question. I mean, just this week, Sonoma County had a Part III groundwater basin approved by the state of California. It's unheard of. There's only 12 in the entire state. I'm really proud of that. And these are medium to high priority groundwater basins. Santa Rosa is the one I look at that's probably got the most promise. And the ability to have ASR dollars in, to start thinking about that as an opportunity. I'm convinced that that storage is, is real. Now, there are limitations and you've got to look at it. It may not be like the traditional bank per se where you would grab water and put it in there for five years and pull it back out. I think we're much more likely to come up with a more short-term loan type of winter-spring type of situation where you can buy in, hedge your bet. I guess for me, one option might be if per se, you're looking at how much water do you want to take out of, out of Sonoma water and hedging your bet? If you had a place to not have to own all the spillage if it happened to spill, then how would you take advantage of that to hedge your bet? Those are the types of things we've got to think through. But the groundwater basins are there. We do have groundwater agencies that are going to have to be part of that because that's their stewardship. But the fact that they were approved should give us confidence that the state is going to reward folks that have set the bar high and are willing to go do that. So I think it's, it's a classic opportunity, but we're going to need to kind of jointly say, let's go after it, make it work.
Grant, what are ASR dollars?
Oh, I'm sorry. Aquifer storage and recharge. So you're looking at the groundwater basin, the aquifer itself, and you're trying to recharge it by injecting water in and then pulling it back out when you need it.
And are there funding sources for doing that when you say ASR dollars?
Yeah, we got three, three of them from the state supporting, we're in the process. I wish they could be quicker. They're more difficult than you'll find. They require, sometimes the water's a little bit harder and you've got to look at some of the chemical components of it. But the design is to find the basin, use your existing infrastructure as much as possible to inject the water into the groundwater basin and create this bubble. And that bubble gets to the pump where you can actually then take it back out when you need it.
In places like Arvin, they're bringing 800,000 acre feet a year into the groundwater in Arvin. The courses we have is San Jose. When you're driving on 17, on the right-hand side towards Santa Cruz, there's three big spreading basins that Santa Clara Valley operates, which are exactly what they're doing is they're recharging from surface water sources into the groundwater. The one part you didn't mention, Ben, is treatment. You know, that's the tricky part. If you can do the ASR and you don't plug your spreading basins, otherwise you've got to treat the water. The rainies don't require treatment. So that's a little bit of a hooker there, you know, this, as was described by Larry Minnekey, that muddy water, Russia's pretty muddy, that's pretty histrionical. So that's kind of a hooker.
Thank you.
Okay, now to the public. Sir, you at first?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. The first has to do with your Pharaoh Pool. A year and a half ago, we got the word that Sonoma Water would be cutting our allocation to only 4,000 acre feet. The next year to 3,500 acre feet, which was a pretty draconian cut. Was the Pharaoh Pool in place when that was announced or is this good news subsequently?
The Pharaoh Pool hadn't been tested and that point is relatively new. And the, the cuts were state mandated on all the contractors. We all had the
Enhance that somewhat then?
Oh, yeah. Yes, it's going to be allowing us to Pardon me?
By 10 or 20%?
Well, you figure we got 11,000 acre feet in there. If we're able to hang on to that, that's the type of water that you can count on for minimum in-stream flows and allows you to bring more water south. So yeah.
My other question was, has to do with regional D cell. I attended, I think, March of last year, there was a strategic, strategic planning meeting. And if I remember right, there was no interest whatsoever in Sonoma Waters Park for D cell. If you had a D cell facility, you might want 20 or 30 for yourself MGD, 15 for us, five for North Marin. That's 40 to 50 MGD total. Is the Petaluma River at all capable of that? And what are your thoughts on the potential for regional D cell up here?
I think you may know more than I do. You're engineering firm, of course, I'm, I'm looking at that.
I can't help it.
So I, I'm open to that. I think we, I have to look at honestly, cost, you look at viability, feasibility. And if there's a brackish D cell component up there that could be a regional project, that should be one that we look very closely at.
So something you've looked into really?
Sir, the hat? Are there any possible reservoir sites that have not yet been developed in Sonoma that might be done on a joint basis?
That was my question.
That doesn't exist in Marin, but it may exist in Sonoma County. So I ask the question.
Yeah, I think my take on that is actually the, the best reservoir sites have been taken and, and they're being used and, and put to their fullest. So I like to think about groundwater as probably the next storage basin, underground storage instead of surface storage is where I think our future out of light. The other ones are, to permit a dam in this day and age is darn near impossible, as many in the room know. And so if we went after that, it'd be multiple years and fraught with delay and costs. And I just think we'd be much better off looking at figuring out the groundwater basins for storage.
Thank you. Kim?
A quick question. I've read in both your supply assessment and, and the Marin one that about the Petaluma D cell plant. And someone said once that it was going to be at the mouth of the Petaluma River and I think we all know what that would entail. Where is this being proposed to be built?
Well, I actually, I don't have a current feasibility study on that at all. I actually think Marin Municipal will probably get a better shot at where the options might be for that through your work. And we'll learn from, from your engineers about where that might work. I've got no opinions, but I'd love to see some more advanced engineering on it.
Yes, sir.
Grant, Tony, I'd like to thank you both. And Roger stole my question because I was going to ask the same exact thing. Is there an opportunity to partner on above-ground storage somewhere? Knowing that you hadn't been speaking of it, the assumption was probably not. On AMI, I want to come back to AMI for a second. Be very interesting to know per capita if there was a change once AMI was fully implemented in North Marin. And is there AMI in Sonoma or is there any plans for AMI in Sonoma? And the last thing is, will these presentations be available on the website after? Yeah, so all of them will be available. Yeah, so my question is really more around AMI at this point. Thank you.
So I can take that, Grant. I don't know, it, it folds into our whole suite of water conservation measures. So I don't know if, I'm not aware of a number specific to AMI, but I think it's definitely contributed to overall per capita use coming down. It's, it's an awareness thing. It's people aware, like I said, for my own benefit, I can see where we're sort of not using water efficiently in my home. So, but I don't, I don't have a number for you. And just real quick on the, we did look at a, at a site in Nevada for a dam, but it was 700 acre feet. It's, there's no bang for the buck and the permitting sort of, sort of threw that, threw that out.
So I just wanted to thank Tony and Grant for taking the time here and sharing with us, engaging with us.
Before I turn it over to water efficiencies, I, just from my perspective, science is really helping you guys. The, the local politics is helping this all move together because this cooperation is not as common as you might think. Corpus agencies up and down the state, water agencies and other agencies. This is, this is a nice thing to see. It looks really good. Getting it to move ahead is great. I applaud you all, but you got to do, you know, make hay while the sun's shining, right? And that's what you're doing, very good. And now you're even talking about water efficiencies. Doing it even better.
There you go. Carrie Pollard, your Water Emergency Manager. So I was going to cover these three primary priorities that are outlined here. The first is implementation of the Strategic Water Supply Assessment's Water Conservation Program. The second would be the development of the Water Efficiency Master Plan, which really builds on this idea of the SUSA Conservation Program being like a baseline and the master plan being what is above and beyond? What is the maximum potential for water savings within our community? And what do we want that to look like, right? And when we develop these types of programs, especially these top two bullets, there's really three key components to establishing effective water saving programs. They are incentives, regulations, and community engagement. Each of these three play a really important, these, these components play a really important role in achieving long-term and in continuing to advance water savings. Especially when you think about the relationship between community engagement and incentives. Incentives in of themselves will not save water, right? We have to develop incentive programs that our customers are interested in participating in because it's a partnership to get those water savings from them. From, you know, taking our incentives, utilizing these incentives that we're offering requires them to participate, requires them to take direct action so that we can quantify those water savings and count them towards our programs. So that's important. The third bullet would be our system water loss study. So this is separate and distinct. This is again kind of looking at that partnership. We're not only asking our customers to be more efficient, we want to look at our own systems and see where their efficiency opportunities can be more efficient kind of internally as well. Under water loss, we do have state regulatory requirements. So it's annual reporting. We actually have state target objectives for what's an acceptable level of water loss, which we are currently meeting as of today. But looking forward, we know there's new technologies and water loss actually is really kind of, is coming up as a front runner across utilities as opportunities and new technologies are, are being launched and, you know, being tested and have proven themselves to be effective. And so we want to look at those, see where are there opportunities within our system? You know, while we're doing good today, we want to continue to build on that and do better tomorrow. So that will be what our system water loss study would, would evaluate. So taking a little bit of a deeper dive into pursuing demand reductions through efficiencies. If we think of our water efficiency program as an umbrella and underneath that umbrella, you know, there's rain all around. Underneath the umbrella, there's various buckets. There are three of these buckets that I've listed here. The first one being the SUSA's Water Conservation Element. This is separate and distinct from our overall, or any other conservation programs that we may be launching. The SUSA Conservation Element is voluntary and it's incentive-based, right? So what we did is we looked at quantifiable programs, meaning they're generally widget-based, right? So it's a piece of hardware that's installed that we can count the water savings from that installation. We looked at those and we said, well, what's a level of participation that makes sense, right? That we feel that we can actually achieve through our incentive offerings? And when we did that evaluation, we came up with a demand reduction goal that's about 200 acre feet per year. And so you may think, okay, that, that might not be as large as one might want. But you have to think about it, every year we'd be implementing these programs. And when we get out to 2045, it's about 4,000 acre feet, demand reduction in 2045. Additionally, and we'll look at this in a moment, there's cumulative savings. So a long replaced today, or last year during the drought, is continuing to provide us water savings today and into the future. And so there's these cumulative savings. So there's a lot of various ways to kind of look at, you know, the impact of, of these savings through these programs. So setting the SUSA Conservation Element aside, which is again very kind of widget-based, development of this Water Efficiency Master Plan would be what else can we do? What are our short, medium, and long-term goals to maximize the potential savings within our community? And what's reasonable for water use within our community? What, what does that look like? And that's not just something for, you know, me and my team to decide or, you know, Marin Water to decide, but for the board's input, right? So we can engage and figure out what makes sense for us moving forward. The master plan would include leading edge initiatives, right? So we don't want to just keep doing the same things we've always done. We want to say, what else is out there? What other opportunities have we not considered before? Or that we see others doing well and consider them as well? It would continue to offer incentivized and voluntary incentive programs beyond SUSA, right? So say we want, or we say through SUSA, we think we can achieve 70,000 acre feet per year replacement. If we can get another 30,000 and that puts us up to 100,000 square feet, did I say acre feet? Square feet per year, that would be great, right? That's just icing on the cake. So it's what else can we do to drive customers to our programs? It may also include It may also include adaptations or current ordinances or even new ordinances, right? Recognizing that regulations do drive water savings, especially when we think about new construction or rehabilitated sites, right? So we want to make sure that those sites install the most efficient technology when they're being built. So we don't have to pay for an incentive down the road for someone to make a change, to get additional water savings. The third bucket would be this drought response actions. These would be short-term, low-frequency, initially they'd be voluntary. They would, you know, whether it's voluntary or mandatory would align with the water shortage stage that we were currently at.
Do I have engineering services for the front calendar?
First time today, it's good.
Engineering.
We also, you know, the reason why I want to include this here is because we want to recognize that when there is drought response actions that are being implemented, we do still get some long-term benefit from those savings, right? As we carry on forward. So someone who say replace their clothes washer like Tony needs to during the drought, we will continue to see those water savings moving forward. So in addition to, let's provide a little bit more detail on what is the SWUSA program, right? I think that this has come up a number of times. And I realize when I made this presentation, I'm used to looking at it on my screen and thinking we're all going to be on Zoom looking at it right here. Not the case. But I do want to direct you all to a, the staff report from September 6th, which was the water supply update, has all the details on how basically this cable was developed. What are the various programs? What are the participation levels? How did we come up with those participation levels? What's the cost savings for each, per acre foot for each program that we're proposing? And then what is the cumulative water savings as well? All on here, I'm sure none of you can probably read this, even if you're here in the front. So let me just walk you through it briefly. On the far left is our program name, so the activity. The second column is our annual participation estimates. So how many, you know, smart irrigation controllers we think will incentivize each year going forward? The third column is our cost per acre foot with the total, the average on the bottom here at 1,800, which we've seen as part of the SWUSA presentations. And then finally, the cumulative water savings in 2045, which is about 22,000 acre feet. So again, starting from during the drought, going all the way up to 2045 would be 22,000 acre feet. I'm not going to go through each one of these, it's fairly redundant, but it's that important. September 6th has all the details and.
So just for clarity, the 22,000 is adding up all the water savings through 2045 compared to the annual savings will be at 2045, which is a 4,000 number you mentioned earlier.
Just about 160 to 200 acre feet per year, getting to 4,000 in 2045.
So this came up a bit. Does this clarify if we can bring more information as well? I also feel like the board's interested as we bring the Strategic Water Supply Assessment to be sharing this with the public as well. Is that a fair kind of capturing?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for. And having this effort and investment thought of in the same light as we think of supply. Because to me, this is reducing demand equals supply as far as I'm concerned. So let's have these dollars and these savings in there. And I mean, that's a pretty darn robust ROI compared to some of the other options that we're looking at. And let's take credit for it, but let's put it in there. And I think it'll be really, really well received in the faculty. There's probably other efforts that you're doing that don't cost that relate to PR, word of mouth, that we can measure efficiencies in other ways.
Quite possibly, but most of those would actually probably be non-quantifiable. We know there's benefit, but how do we assign a number and a cost per acre foot to them? You know, that's, can I, can I, just want to sit on this one, do you want?
Well, we can always go back.
I'm going to follow the rules here. I'm like Jen.
Ben started.
Keep going, right? That's one, one.
I'll add one time.
Okay, so moving on. So to your point that there are additional programs and activities, right? So that SWUSA again is a very small kind of contained component of our overall program. And we don't know what the master plan will look like, but I wanted to include some of the programs we do today because I think that they will likely be included in the master plan in some way, shape, or form, maybe with some changes if you will. So we have currently offering incentive programs. Here's our list of incentives. You can find all the details on our website. It is slightly different than what we're proposing for SWUSA. We have landscape plan review we handle, so that is, you know, reviewing new and rehabilitated landscapes. Make sure they comply with not only the state landscape model ordinance, but also the district's code, which is more restrictive than the state's code. We have youth, we have education programs for youth, for contractors, for homeowners. I don't call out renters because most renters have to run through their homeowner to make any changes. So it's really important that those homeowners have resources available to them. We do a lot of classes for them as well. Outreach events. We have state, local, and national partnerships. Everything from grassroots like our local gardening groups, master gardeners, et cetera, all the way up to national groups like the Alliance for Water Efficiency who promote policy, building code standards. They conduct studies. They really track kind of how do we quantify the work that we all do so that we can hopefully get to something where we can quantify a school education program. No one's kind of figured that out yet, but we know there's value, but we don't know how to put a dollar to it. We handle all of our water waste prohibitions. So any reported water waste that comes into the district comes to our team for follow-up, right? Or is there actually a water waste occurrence? You know, how do we provide the education to our customers so that they understand what our rules are? And finally, customer resources, extensive customer resources because we want someone to not only, you know, know that they can get a turf rebate for taking out their lawn, we want them to know what kind of plant material they should install. It doesn't have to be rocks and cactus. In fact, we don't want rocks and cactus. We want it to be beautiful, colorful, vibrant, you know, healthy landscapes for our, that are adapted to our weather here. Example I have is our weekly watering schedule. So every Friday, we send out an email to any customer who's signed up to tell them how long they should be irrigating their various types of plant material. So just another tool that we use. When we look at the program budget, Paul kind of touched on this earlier, but I give a little bit more detail. Looking at our future annual program budget for SWUSA, it's 1.7 million. All of our other activities are currently estimated at 1.1 million. And the Water Efficiency Master Plan is still TDD, right? We don't know what that's going to be. It'll likely be, you know, a little bit from SWUSA, a little bit from other activities kind of molded together, but it may be above and beyond all of these. And so that would be something we bring back to board, of course, and you all would be brought along as part of the development of this plan. So we understand the impacts. We look historically at our annual budget, it's about 2.4 million. So the increase is about 400,000 that we would be requesting for implementation of the SWUSA essentially. I did want to include a little bit of detail on how do we compare to others, right? Especially in the region. So Sonoma Water, everyone who buys water from Sonoma County Water Agency is part of a Sonoma Marin-Salem Water Partnership. We all report how much money we spend on conservation programs. And I have the per capita list here, right? So you can see dollars spent per capita. We're the second bar there and we are the highest at about $11 per person. The other two that are outliers I would just call out would be Sonoma. This is how, this is proof that economies of scale do not benefit Sonoma. So mostly staff time, they only have 10,000 connections. You know, they have to have their programs in place and it is very expensive for them. The other one is Petaluma. So Petaluma has rolled AMI, the cost of implementing AMI into their conservation program budget. And so it's kind of a different way of looking at it. And then there's this. I mean, I'll just answer Larry Mankey's question. So Petaluma has AMI, City of Santa Rosa has AMI, Sonoma has AMI, and those are the ones I know for sure. The others may, and I just don't know.
So the one that's closest to our size is probably Santa Rosa?
Yes, absolutely. Santa Rosa is closest to our size, yeah. So when we look at our goals and milestones, so, you know, we're ready to launch and begin implementation of the SWUSA Conservation Element. You know, anytime we get the go-ahead. Looking at the master plan, we're starting our initial, we have a consultant onboard. We're initially doing our, you know, the upfront work to kind of start on that project. Now until July, we look at the master plan having a draft in September and then a final in October. And then as far as the water loss study, we're still looking at getting a consultant onboard to assist us with that. We'll then look to have a draft in August and also have that finalized in October. So with that, there are any questions that we have to take?
Board members?
I forgot my question.
Oh, good. See, that was my strategy.
We'll make this exception if you need to raise your hand.
No, sorry, sorry, Brett. I'm joking. There's two issues related to money, both around money. So when you calculate the cost of an acre foot that is, you know, resulting from conservation. Now, obviously, as people conserve, the district is also losing revenue. So there's another cost associated with that. And I would just be interested in understanding at some point, you know, how do we bring those together? So the cost of implementing the conservation and the cost it then places on the district in terms of lost revenue. I think that's an interesting metric. But maybe more practically, Carrie, I'm really uncomfortable with these comparisons of levels of investment in water efficiency that you just showed. What I really would hope to see is our cost effectiveness. So we could, you know, how much, and I know that we're doing really good in terms of water reduction. That was one of Ben's highlights. So presumably, we are really cost effective. We're investing and we're realizing, you know, good savings on that. But that would be, but are there districts that are realizing a lot more in terms of conservation per dollar investment invested in conservation programs? That's something that I would really like to see because we can't get better if we don't understand where we sit with respect to cost effectiveness.
I think that would be, I mean, will capture all these comments, but that could be a good element from the water master plan to understand that.
And looking at over years of, you know, we can see GPCD change over time. And we also can look back and see what was our investment at that point. Recognizing as well, the level of investment doesn't always necessarily reflect why people are saving, right? So statewide drought, you know, doesn't have a.
That's what I want to understand. That's what we need to understand if we're going to have great programs, right? What is driving that, you know? So maybe we should invest a lot less because the levels of investment are less correlated. So now.
So sort of relatedly in terms of the idea of cost effectiveness, how much of your cost estimates are based on just if that was out of pocket? If we were paying for them versus what is the potential to secure state dollars to help pay for those things? And so that's, yeah, that's my first question.
So we pursue grant funding actively. We actually currently have two grants that we're working through that offset some of our costs for flu. And we just put in for a turf replacement incentive. So we pursue the grants as often as we can and we work closely with Sonoma Water staff. We actually, most of our grants are coming through them at this point as, you know, funding.
So do our cost estimates reflect, that don't reflect the offset by funds that have come in?
Only for, for example, flu that was installed during the drought.
Yeah.
Because we know, we can look back and say, we've received that grant, we, you know, we've already approved for that grant funding, so yes. Going forward, you know, because we don't know, we don't want to, we don't want to count grant funding until we know we have it for sure.
Sure, of course.
This would be worst case scenario without any additional funding.
Let me just clarify that a little bit. Do water agency grants require or have, always have a component of a conservation?
That's not my question.
No, but I, I know you, I'm sorry. I thought it was in terms of the benefit of that being part of the equation.
There may be a connected benefit, but I, my, just again, we're trying to do these things about like the cost versus benefit. You know, understanding how much of it is something we have to pay for versus to what degree they're going to be, their grants now. I know there's lots of money on there for drought resiliency and climate resiliency, stuff that we assume aggressively going after however we can. So just, I don't know, I know you don't want to count dollars that we haven't gotten, but like having a sense of, you know, that cost is that like, like what is the potential for us to offset that? Because it changes our calculus tremendously. If it was all free, we'd be like, do it, you know? If it was half, if we were getting reimbursed half the cost of that, again, we'd change our calculus about investment. The other thing too, I think, just as maybe as a comment too, is I think that there are also out of this, out of the drought that we are maybe still in, despite all the rain that we've gotten, is there are, I think, are a lot of legislative initiatives out there about requiring more conservation. And I know that there's even a bill being looked at that would ban non-functional turf. And that, if that passes, you know, who knows? We don't even have, there's no cost of implementing it to us, it just happens. And that could be a tremendous water savings.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, there's no way to plan for it, but there, I think the legislative universe and sort of state requirement universe is going to hopefully win our sales.
I didn't even touch on regulations around conservation, but you're absolutely right. There's a number of them that either have passed and have not been implemented or currently under rulemaking process that will absolutely impact us. But until those are done, you know, it's difficult to kind of guess at what the impacts would be.
Carrie? Thank you. You indicated that we're doing better than the state guidelines for our size water district on vacation. What is the state guideline?
So the, we have a standard that the state has assigned to us, which is 24.5 gallons per connection per day. And we are below that, I want to say it was like 22 right in there. Right on the cusp, to be honest, right? I mean, it's close enough to be, we need to stay on it, right? We need to continue to maintain either the processes in the systems we utilize or look at whatever opportunities there might be.
Is there a hammer too?
State funding.
That's stopping, if you're leaving.
Right, I mean, if you're not compliant with, you know, the standards. But water loss is just one of the five standards and they'll all kind of be bundled together. And that's really kind of tease that kind of to Mark's question.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
I think I'd ask the same question of you that I asked of Sean, which is to look at your dream list of investments for us to consider during this budgeting process. And as opposed to this is what we're doing, I'd love to see everything you're thinking about prioritized by Ranjiv's, you know, return on investment and wish list. So let's just look at it all. You know, the, we have to take into account that the better you are at what you're doing, the less we have to invest in major supply options in the future. So there are savings that we can, that by putting off those massive investments. You know, I hear from our community that, you know, we've squeezed too much out of us already. We can't squeeze anymore. We've already conserved as much as we possibly can. And I think I'd love to turn the message around to being a positive one, like, yes, what an awesome job you have done and we have done in Marin to save water and to reduce waste. And we can do better. Like as a community, we can step up and do even better. And although 75% of our current customers are in tier one, there's still 1,000 residences that are in tier four. And I think we can help. And it may generate dollar revenues, but it's also a waste for a community approach to looking at how we think of our water resource. So, you know, partnering with Adrian around that positive message as opposed to you squeezed enough out of us, like congratulations. Let's try to be the best that we possibly can and come up with your dream wish list and then we can discuss it at the board.
Yeah, I think the master plan will kind of help feed into that as well, what's realistic for the community.
Do you have a board question? From the public? Yes, ma'am.
Carrie, I was just wondering as regards to the water loss study. You said that you mentioned acceptable levels of water loss. And I was wondering, sorry, am I not loud enough? What the like percentage of water loss is that's considered acceptable? And then the second question is, you mentioned new technologies. And I'm just curious, do you, have you actually examined some of these new technologies yet? Or are you just going to find out from a consultant what the new technologies are that are available that might help to measure water loss?
So every utility has a different standard established by the state using their design model. So I'm not going to even offer up a. model, so I'm not going to even offer up a percent necessarily. We currently are at about 10% water loss, which for us correlates to that 24 and a half gallons per connection per day. It's different for every utility. And as far as technologies, I would, I'm going to defer to the, to the study, right? Because, I mean, we don't know, I'm not sure yet exactly what it's going to tell us, and that's why we're going through that process to figure out what are the opportunities, if there are any.
This happens to be a long water loss as well, and I know that we talked recently about a roughly a 10% water loss. And what I'm curious about is, does this include evaporation, or is evaporation from the reservoirs calculated separately?
Evaporation is calculated separately. This is a comparison of production essentially compared to consumption or sales.
So do we measure evaporation? Anything else? Sir?
I don't know if this question is for Carrie or for Ben and Paul. Sometimes when you talk about, one talks about deep conservation success, including massive reductions in landscape water use. Sometimes that prompts an analysis of demand hardening and what that does in a drought or climate drought scenario to the ability to cut. So you've got lots of turf, tell people to water their grass, relatively painless. You have no turf, tell people to cut their indoor water use quite painful. I'm not suggesting that we're in close to that place at all, but I'm wondering if that figures into the water supply and drought management planning that we're doing now.
Yeah, I think it's a good thoughtful question, David. And yes, you can't count the savings twice. And we're trying to be aware and cognizant of that, and it's partly why some people are looking at the amount projected from the strategic supply as being somewhat conservative. But we are working with Jacobs, and we're thinking about, okay, how much are we suggesting we could save through drought actions? And, you know, having some measure of confidence that that's in addition to the projected long-term savings, because they really are different. And as, exactly what you're saying, as you move through conservation program generally, you have to expect there's less savings in a drought emergency, which, you know, speaks to the broader supply needs as well. So it's all integrated. It's a good point. We've thought about it, I don't know, we've landed in a detailed analysis, but as time goes on, I think we have to think about that some more.
Ben, I would add, if I could, to that, that, right, the roadmap is adaptive by nature. So as we go along, if we find in the conservation process that we're wildly successful, for example, with turf removal, we'll need to think about demand hardening and those types of issues.
Okay, I'll just maybe just end by simply saying thank you, Carrie, for the work you do. It's an unusual thing in a business concept to be rewarding somebody within the business that is reducing your sales. So you're, you know, it's, and everybody, we all consume water, and so you deal with a sector of our water use that we're all experts in, because we all use water and we all have our sense about how we conserve or save water. So it's a particularly challenging position to be in. And yet, it's, and it's one that is of passionate interest to us. So thank you for, for the tough work.
Very nice. Next is finance.
Are you going backwards or?
Water efficiency and then forward.
Yeah, you're backwards. Yeah, yeah.
Point three. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Excuse me, my name is Brett Upandall. I commonly introduce myself as the Finance Director, but technically, my job title is Administrative Services Director. And so I know that, you know, oftentimes I get lumped into just being the CFO or the head accountant, whatever that may be. And admittedly, I'm not going to focus a lot on everything else I do, but just to kind of generally point out, this is the Administrative Services Division overview dominated largely by financial issues. But we do have a team of 30 people, 35 people actually, that does everything from running the customer service window up front to being the primary point of contact for anybody that does have a question about the district, producing the bills. So, you know, the comment, you know, every two months you get the bill in the mail and or online to pay for your services. We also do all the meter reads, right? So we're out there every day, 300 meter reads per day, per meter reader, to get through the 60,000 residents and commercial outlets that we have. So there's a lot that goes on in Administrative Services. This being kind of a high-level planning session, I'm not going to cover all those today. I'll focus more on our priorities, the top priorities for the year. And for any of the parties here that have been listening to me over the last six months or so, the first one up there dominates pretty much everything we talk about in the public, right? Water rate development and implementation. And for, for good reason, right? I mean, that is the core source of what we need to do each and every day. So I think it's probably not by design, necessarily in the agenda, but I think it's not lost on me that coming up here after conservation and the comment that President Schmidt made, there's an inherent tension there, right? Between water supply, long-term planning, money supply, long-term planning, right? You can't do one without the other, and the converse is true, right? So there is this, always a relationship there. And I know that I haven't got through maybe one presentation to the public this year without being reminded of that by either a member of the public or a member of the board, that we do need to attack both sides of that message, right? There are two things going on at all times. Some are more long-term, some are more short-term, but we have to take both into account at all times. So that really is, you know, kind of one of the inherent challenges that I face, you know, I think personally and within my division, but that we all face, right? We have to find that right balance over time. So these three priorities you see on the board, or the three that I'll talk about today, I'll spend most of my time on the first one, right? Because that is obviously the most pertinent, and then the other two are kind of more longer-term and ongoing. So we'll get there. But before I kind of get too far into the water rate development, and I don't have a lot of slides, a lot of graphics here today, you'll definitely see those coming forward if you haven't already, but we'll get to all of those. I did want to also kind of take one step back before I get too far into this and to talk about just what it means when we talk about the water rate for bills, right? I mean, I think every community in the entire country, if not even more around the world, has some way of getting, you know, basic water to their residences and some way of paying for it, right? There's this natural relationship, right? I think three things that stand out to me, generally speaking, are utilities are a very unique, you know, industry, right? We're not a business, we're not a nonprofit, we're not a government necessarily, right? We are rate-funded utilities, right? That has its own layer of uniqueness. Marin is unique, right? I mean, Marin County, you know, our service area is very unique for a variety of reasons. And those contribute to the overall, you know, general kind of dynamics that go into our water rates, right? I mean, we have a watershed that many other agencies around here do not have. We have topography that many other agencies do not have. We have infrastructure. We're the first water district in California, right? We have hundreds of years of infrastructure that we're sitting on top of, literally sitting on top of, as we had tried to make, you know, incremental changes going forward. So nothing changes overnight, and nothing just happened yesterday, right? I mean, obviously, we got through a pretty historic drought, and, you know, there are lessons to be learned, and there's ways to, you know, kind of prevent that going forward, not prevented, but ways to adapt and mitigate on that going forward. But I do just want to recognize, I think the thing that we all have noticed is that those are unique factors, right? I think one other factor in here that's also very unique about what we have is we're in California, right? California's unique as it relates to this process because there's a thing called Prop 218, right? Proposition 218 puts a pretty clear boundary around how we can go about charging our customers or our consumers for the water we provide, right? I think that those three kind of, you know, general dynamics, utility, Prop 218, Marin County in general, really make for a challenging process. Challenging communications-wise, challenging just figuring out the numbers-wise, and there's no way to really get a perfect system, a perfect solution out there, right? In many ways, the other part of it, I would also say, is that, you know, our business model is providing water, clean, high-quality water 24/7, or infinity essentially, right? In perpetuity, in terms of our planning horizon. But the way that we make our money is based on how much water you use, right? So there's also that dynamic that's underneath all of this, that it's kind of a square peg and a round hole situation, right? You can't make a perfect system, there's no way to make, you know, the broad brush and say everyone is perfectly proportionally, you know, paying for their fair share, both for today's water, also for the future water, also for all the past, you know, decisions and or water use or infrastructure, whatever may be there. So just a long way of acknowledging that it's an imperfect process, that there's a lot of gray area that goes into it, and we essentially, it's a partnership that we have with the community, with staff, and how do we go about setting it in the fairest, most proportional way that we can, right? That being said, there's two things that have to happen. We have to do a cost of service study, so we're working right now with a consultant to analyze, you know, what does it cost us to provide the service? How can we best allocate those costs proportionally to our, to our customer base? And how do we best make sure we have enough funding for the future, right? So that we can do all of the things we've been talking about here today. How do we make sure we have the money to do those, right? We can't do any of that without money. We can't add staff, we can't expand programs, we can't, you know, improve our capital infrastructure. We cannot secure more water supply in the future if we don't have money. None of that will happen, right? There are ways to make it more efficient and to make it more feasible, but we can't do anything without money. So we have to find out what does it cost us, how do we get that revenue, and how do we essentially fold that into the planning? The next piece of that, after doing the cost of service study, is we have to do a rate hearing, right? Prescribed by Prop 218. We have to notice our customers, what's happening, let them give us feedback, let them participate in the rate hearing process, which, I'm speaking to that now in terms of requirement, but I think that's a great practice, right? We want to be in partnership with our community about what are the right priorities here? Are we going in the right direction? Have we heard from everybody? Does everyone know what we're doing, right? How do we outreach that message to them? Within all that, as I mentioned, there's gray area, right? I think, I mean, we know, I sit in a room here, especially, you know, here, but in the water district, we have a lot of engineers, and we have a lot of very, very intelligent people. When you're trying to figure out perfect cost effectiveness or perfect, you know, design for projects in the future, and then you talk about, you know, uncertainty of weather, uncertainty of demand, uncertainty of, you know, regulatory changes that come our way, there's going to be gray area, and it's never going to be perfect. You're always going to be kind of incrementally changing, building upon prior decisions, working forward so that you can give yourself the best options to move towards efficiency and perfection, but you're never going to be there. And so, you know, being a finance person underneath it all, I understand the gray area, but I just want to let you guys know that it's not uncommon, but it's also difficult when we're trying to talk about making a perfect decision, or talking about engineering a perfect project, or really finding that, you know, perfect metric that helps us move forward. So long way of saying, you know, this is the next step in that process going forward. I would also say that the two pieces that are key to that going forward, cost of service study well underway, rate hearing, what we schedule later this spring, everything we're doing is kind of in support of that going forward. And so I certainly appreciate, you know, the comments we receive from the public all the time in our board meetings about how to better go about this process, and I certainly appreciate all the advice we get from our consultant and the experience we have here as a team, knowing how we can get better at doing that, right? Don't just do it the same way we did it before. Don't just repeat the process of 2015 or 2017, but find a better way to go about that, right? And so that's what we're committed to in our department and certainly here in the entire organization. When I think, we look at the critical funding note there, I just think, I mentioned that earlier, that Marin's unique in the sense that, you know, our funding source for this comes 95% from our customers, right? Some utilities have other funding sources. Some utilities have, you know, part of their infrastructure that was paid 40 years ago in partnerships or by the state. In our case, 95% of our revenues come from our customers, and they pay for our local water supply, right? We obviously partner with Sonoma on supplemental water supply in other areas, but it's really important to us because we are essentially a homegrown and home-funded organization. The other thing I note throughout there, and again, this is not lost on anybody who knows, you know, the water reprocess, but inherently, it's a zero-sum game. There's no way to come up with the amount of money that we need to go forward as a district without, you know, essentially impacting one part of the customer base or the other. There's no free lunch, right? It's a zero-sum game. Sometimes it's explained as like a balloon. You squeeze the balloon, there's, you know, any way you change it, it's going to have an effect somewhere, right? There's no, no free lunch in the matter, and it is a zero-sum game. That being said, it is also an investment in our community going forward, right? It's an investment in today's generation and future generations. So I think the more, the better we are messaging that and kind of acknowledging that, I think the better off we all are. Not that it's an easy message or, you know, easy to explain, and certainly not easy to explain in a bunch of graphs and charts that tend to come out of reprocesses. So nonetheless, I think that's what we're committed to, and it's for, you know, these type of situations, I think are great for me personally, because you really realize all the work that goes into the rates, it's producing all this other great work in all the other departments. So going back to, you know, administrative services, much of that's behind the scenes. I'm not doing the work that everyone else is talking about today. There really is a lot of great work happening out there by a bunch of really dedicated and smart people. And so I think from my perspective, I just want to do my best job to provide the funding that the district needs to continue that great work. I'll go to the next, that's, that's all I have on just the water rates. I'm sure I'm happy to answer questions if there are, but that's all, all that we'll briefly have on water rates there, except to just again, mention that we are starting communications and community workshops, which will be starting next week and throughout early February, obviously continuing on all the way through the process. And we're aiming right now to be able to produce our Prop 218 mailer in the March timeframe to go out to the community. So the rate hearing will ideally happen in May 2023, and the effective date will be July 2023. And I know, you know, the reality of financing is not always easy, but I think, as I've been explaining the financial situation to the district, right now, we're in a place where our rate structure doesn't really match our demand pattern, right? The rates that we, that we have on the books from four years ago do not match the way our customers are using water. So that's a big shift. What that means to me is that, bottom line, we're losing about a million dollars a month. So if you start kind of doing the math on a million dollars a month that we're losing, plus the increasing costs coming our way, I mean, every day that we waste, we're losing another $30,000 or $40,000. Every day that we don't have new rates in here, we're losing $30,000 or $40,000. That's stark, right? If you really think about that, we don't have time to wait. I know that Mr. Bihar mentioned that, you know, you don't want to let, you know, the circumstances speed you up. On the same token, you can't just let yourself continue to go down that path, you know? You have to at least, you know, find a way to stop the deficit and kind of start to move forward, right? There's ways to do that in different incremental steps and different, different paces, but I think in general, we as a district know, we can't go much farther than July in terms of how, how and when we change the rate structure. So that is why the calendar is what it is going forward, and I definitely look forward to many other presentations coming forward in the next few months. Connection fees will be the second topic and taken high priority of my division. The reason I have this up here is because this is not something we're taking on right now, right? Connection fees are a whole other study, again, you know, providing the financial kind of parity and or proportionality to, you know, when we add any new development, how we calculate those fees, primarily paid for by developers. As it says up here, you know, we have to, as part of our Prop 218 and California legal requirements, conduct studies periodically to update what the burden is, the financial, you know, proportional burden is for new development for the right to connect to our water system. And, I mean, we've always had studies on the books for connection fees. I think as we talk about in the next 10 years here in Marin or so, we know that there are obviously the state arena numbers coming our way, so that that is a factor in all this, but we have to update this anyway. We haven't updated it since 2018. We need to go through and update it with our new, you know, water situation, with our new rate structure, with our, you know, planning purposes going forward. So regularly, you would update this anyway. Another director, Russell, had mentioned how, you know, we are not a land use planning agency, so this is not a land use decision. It is truly just updating our calculations for what the burden is, the proportional burden is of, you know, new development to connect to our system.
So this brings up, it's interesting, someone was talking about how we're different or unique to some extent. And another way is growth. Around the Bay Area, for example, tremendous growth in so many service areas, and the connection fees have funded a huge portion of their capital investments in the last 10, 20 years. Here, right, it's different, and that is to some extent, again, reflected in the rates, the relative rates when we look. We do, from a revenue standpoint, have an opportunity with arena numbers to bring in some of that revenue through connection fees, assuming that growth plays out. And we have an opportunity in looking at our connection fees in a number of ways, including creative ways to think about new water supply and other things. So this is really going to be an important, exciting initiative that we'll be talking about in the coming year or two.
Okay, and as Ben mentioned, this will be something we start to take on after the rate cycle this year, then we'll be bringing it back to the board in terms of longer-term planning.
You don't want to do it in parallel too.
I prefer not to. But it is not, but as Ben mentioned, it's no small undertaking, and it's very important for our district, I think, to keep these updated.
You might want to mention what they are right
You might want to mention what they are right now, just so people have a perspective on that.
What the connection fees are. I don't have them right in front of me here.
I can help you out with that.
Crystal, and you were answering back at the envelope numbers applying into Rena. You may want to share that as well.
Yeah, sure. So the 1,400 apartments that are going to go in Northgate would generate about $6 million in connection fees. So if you extrapolate that to 14,000 new homes, which we are expecting to be constructed with Rena, that's $60 million, right? So.
And that's with the current fees.
That's with the current fees. But $60 million is not enough for new water supply, as we know. So we need to take another look at it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, it costs about $100,000 to build a house in Marin, about $47,000 to us and similar number to this or agencies. So that's what I was looking for, is that per house.
I think I'm way off by the fact that Paul's doing the numbers.
No, no.
Are there also pressure on the cities for densification incentives?
Yes, statewide mandates for all cities.
So build, even if they're not new, they're changed to a higher use, higher water use.
Increasing the housing numbers is really the mandates.
There's other land use rules that the cities are experiencing that also allow for densification within existing zoning. The state has kind of continually adopted new land use rules that sort of mandate or make it not discretionary for cities to have, you know, ADUs and split lots. And now the latest was actually automatic approval of housing in commercial zone without a REZO. So there's a lot of those kinds of tendencies happening at the state level that are pushing down on the cities.
So my last slide here, you know, kind of just builds on, you know, some of what I guess, I think we were just starting to talk about in the sense that, you know, we are a water agency, we have many laws on the books, we have our rate plans on the books, we have our connection fees on the books. Those have to be updated periodically to kind of adapt to, you know, what's changing around us, whether it's our financial situation, our demand patterns, whether it's, you know, state and or other legislative, you know, actions around us. Financial policies would be a subset of that, right? Financial policies, to most people, you probably never even realize our financial policies that we do have, but internally as administrative services, we have to have them, right? We have to run an efficient organization. We have to spend money wisely. We have to make sure we're, you know, not letting ourselves, you know, sort of veer off that best practices path. And so I have four of them listed up here, reserve policy, debt management policy, procurement and investments. And some of these have come up in recent board discussions, some are coming up as part of the reprocess, you know, what is the right target? How do we develop these targets? You know, how do they change over time as inflation just changes the underlying numbers on, you know, something as small as like contract sign offs to something, you know, larger, like how much percent of our operating budget should we have in reserves, right? But I think anytime you look at policies and practices and procedures, you really need to kind of take that, you know, core step of each and every couple of years, taking a fresh look at it, giving a new board a look at it, giving your new staff a look at it, making sure that it matches. And then internally too, it's making sure that all of our staff understands what that is and can they find it? Can they, you know, if you put it down on a piece of paper and you get it approved by a board and you talk about that, if your employees don't know where that is and they can't follow that, you know, every day of their life and adhere to that, then you've done nothing, right? You've just made a piece of paper that sits on a wall somewhere that you can eventually refer to. So there's this ongoing, you know, practice of making sure we're training internally, making sure we're keeping up with our staff turnover, you know, as we talked about, Vicki talked about the baby boomer generation, you know, retiring out and whatnot. With that goes institutional knowledge. And that's institutional knowledge, both on the engineering side and how to get projects done. It's also knowledge on how to administer the organization, how to, you know, keep up with, you know, payroll, with, you know, financial systems, with, you know, procurement policies, with all of that. And it's, you know, it may be boring and it may be kind of behind the scenes, but it's something that's important and something that definitely, you know, for in terms of my priorities, I added to the list here just to make sure that we're keeping up behind the scenes, that we don't have any issues in the future in terms of, you know, thinking we're doing something that's actually not happening on the ground. So wanted to add that, kind of a little bit of a lens on my priorities for the year. And then with that, I'll happy to take any questions from the board.
Great. Thanks a lot. You know, I have to admit, I didn't fully appreciate the standard administrative services under the recruitment. It's a lot. Makes me even, you know, more appreciative of what you've been doing with respect to the rate setting process and the information that you've been bringing to the board. You know, you constantly remind us of the urgency regarding the new rate structure based on the million dollars, you know, that we're losing every month. I think it might be important to include that we're losing a million dollars a month on operations that are not funded at nearly the level they should be. So we're losing a million dollars a month and we're not addressing capital improvement projects of the rate we would like. We're not addressing the HR needs of the rate we like. So we're actually, I would argue, well beyond a million dollars a month in terms of actual losses to the organization. One kind of high level issue is, you know, just learning about the cost of service analysis a little bit as we've been discussing this. You know, I understand the spirit of this and the reason that the legislature has Prop 218, but it's a pretty arcane process, at least from the little bit that I see. Be interesting to note, like as now you have gone through this or you're going through this at the end, if you have identified things that you wish were improved in the law. I just, you know, at some point, I'm sure all districts are facing the same things. There may be abilities with the right support from our legislatures to improve on that. So just your, you know, your analysis of this would be interesting.
And I don't have a legal analysis necessarily, but I would say, and Molly's here to prick me.
I'm not allowed to say, I'm getting in trouble.
No, no, no. I'm supporting this.
My understanding of it is it wasn't necessarily passed by the legislature, it was a voter approved initiative.
No, it's a proposition.
Propositioned by the legislature.
It has the lack of clarity in some of the detail about how it is applied. So it is, it has been messy in the process. There has been a lot of litigation that's developed the law for us over time. We had a legislative initiative that was incorporated into the California constitution that set forth these sort of broad requirements without a lot of detail. There have been legislative efforts and actually new law about some of the procedural aspects of Prop 218 that have been helpful. One recent one was SB 323, which changed the statute of limitations period for challenge. That goes into effect, is in effect now, just not last time we did our rates, but currently will be. There are other things on the horizon that are being looked at to help the procedural process. We cannot change the substance of the law without another vote of people. So we are confined to nibble around the edges of how it gets implemented, but we can't change the what of the law.
That's a big question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it comes from the desert. There was a small desert water agency and it had like, I don't know, 20 people hooked to it and they got in this big fight over their water bills. They said, ah, it's going to be killing us. And then they fought that and then they went and put the proposition on the ballot. And the problem is, that's why the numbers are fortunate in a sense, because the 50% requires 50% of the people to complain.
Or protest.
Which is doable when you have 20 connections. But, you know, in anything larger than that, it's just, it's absurd. But it's really a weakness in the California constitution.
Yeah, we got to stop this proposition.
Proposition.
That's a problem.
That's where the problem is.
Larger issue than we thought.
I have a proposition to stop the proposition.
But Rajiv, I think it's a good point about actually helping to get the message out to the voters, just some explanation on the guardrails that we have to follow for this process. I don't know if that'd be good in the community meetings, if it's not required that.
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just say, you know, in as much as, and this is kind of more my, you know, my analysis or my kind of thoughts on it, in as much as it makes our job more difficult and maybe less easy to explain and then, you know, one size fits all that was passed, you know, in the early 2000s as kind of a corollary to, you know, Prop 13, you know, statewide, you know, one size fits all for every fee imposed by government at any level, right? That's probably not what we would have decided for ourselves, right? However, it forces us to do, you know, go through the process and make sure we're crossing our t's and dotting our i's. And, you know, many of the tenets of it are not unreasonable, right? That you, like I said, you do a cost of service, you have a public hearing, you make sure you're involving, you know, your whole community in the process. You're not just from on high saying, I'll have this and there is no recourse.
But it's what Molly said, the problem is in the details.
In the details.
The lack of detail.
Exactly. Yeah. But I'm just trying to kind of say, on the other side of it, the reason why I'm there is to, you know, make sure we as, you know, government who are going to extract funds from our constituency, that we've done our work correctly.
Sort of. It's a little more punitive than that.
Any other board thoughts or questions? Mr. Chair, will we do the public? Please, sir, you and the hat. I'm glad Molly's here. Is it possible under the COSA process to build into the rate structure an automatic inflator according to a CPI index so that you don't have to deal with the inflation issue as part of the COSA, which you, which sort of puts you in a corner?
Yes.
It is possible to do that?
It's possible to build an inflator. In fact, we have one currently for our CNA. We do have a cap, but it is indexed and we do have an annual.
That's helpful anyway.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you.
Thank you very much Brett for your good presentation. I was just, in terms of your water rate development speech, which I thought was really good, I think a lot of people think about comparing rates across water districts without realizing that not all water districts are made the same. I mean, not only are we the oldest water district in California, but we also, I mean, with 100-year-old infrastructure still in the ground, but we have to manage a watershed with all these reservoirs and includes, you know, natural habitat, maintenance, restoration, all that stuff. But in addition to that, we have one of the most complex water delivery systems probably anywhere in California. We have, you know, more pump stations, I think, than EvMed and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Even though we're a smaller water agency, we have complex topography and water has to travel in two different directions depending upon the time of day, depending upon the pressure system, you know. So delivering the water to a particular tap in Marin County is much more difficult than someplace like, say, San Diego where it's all flat and you only have a couple of pump stations. So I was wondering, in the COSA, does it factor in of the complexity of our particular water district?
So I would say the COSA definitely does, but the COSA is a, you know, 300-page document that is not necessarily easy to, you know, explain to the public. And so I think what you're really getting at is how do we explain to our public why our water rates may be different than what they see up north or in the East Bay or show in the Central Valley, right? So that to me is part of, you know, our challenge to explain, you know, the uniqueness of Marin, as I mentioned, and for a variety of reasons. I think what you're talking about is the engineering challenges, the infrastructure overall need as kind of a driver of the overall kind of base cost. You know, as I look at it just from a numbers basis, I think the other part of it is economies of scale in the sense of, you know, kind of like as Tony Williams mentioned, you know, in West Marin, they have 800, you know, customers. To divide a brand new system is almost impossible. Anything divided by 800 is not going to be a very favorable number, right? Marin is not necessarily that much different, right? I mean, we're a medium-sized, you know, some might even call us a smaller-sized, you know, district that is fully self-sustaining, you know, the absence of the imported water from Sonoma. So we don't have that, you know, dividing by 300,000 or kind of sharing a state water project, you know, that's been paid for over 60 years with state funds or those pieces that have much better economies of scale don't translate here in Marin to our actual rates. And so again, the COSA itself is just really kind of a very technical document that captures what you're saying in the bottom line rate that you end up going forward with, but it's more the messaging, I think, that you're getting at that we need to make sure we're incorporating into, into our discussions with the public as to why rates may be higher than they expect or than they would prefer.
Sure.
You mentioned the March 218 mailer and the May public hearing for the July 1 adoption. At what point is it all locked? Like your options in terms of rates? Can you make changes post-mailer? Can you make changes at the May hearing? Probably not after, because you don't have another hearing, in advance of July 1? Or is it locked at the point at which you decide when you put together the March mailer?
Well, let me, the basics of that would be that the legal requirements of the March mailer provide the maximum rates that you can apply under that cycle. And the cycle being the COSA, the mailer, the hearing, right? Those three have to be in lockstep. So when you do your COSA, it's going to tell you, here's what we've determined your rates to be. Those rates would go out in the mailer and you cannot go higher than that, right? Without a whole new rate study and a whole new process. So there's always an option to go lower. It's kind of the flip side of that. You cannot go higher, that is, you notice the customers, this is the highest that we charging you under this rate cycle, so the options is down from there.
And the mailer presents a single rate structure that emerges from all that other stuff, right? It's one, it's one option. This is what we proposed to do.
Yes.
Yes. This is more a statement. I want to go back to something Director Russell said much earlier, which is about our high quality of water. And that reliable, high-quality water raises the value actually of living in Marin. And this is something that homeowners need to understand, that when we're paying these fees, it's in a way an insurance policy toward the future to protecting our supply and keeping the value within our community. And it's something that rate payers need to understand.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
It's a Pandora's box question. I don't expect an answer, but I'm wondering how the economies of scale could be improved if there was some kind of merger of all the different districts, much like what they've been doing with Southern Marin Fire, excuse me, and Central Marin Fire. If there's something that could be done along those lines.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I think it's casually been looked at over time. In Marin, there's something around 20 sanitary districts, for example, and, you know, maybe compared to three, four, maybe a bit more in the West water agencies. And there was a big effort for consolidation over years and it didn't happen. And the answer is complicated, but it gets to the difficulty in doing mergers. And for us, you know, where of a size, I guess you'd look at North or in, there's been some discussions, they're about a third of our size. I don't know what would be a game changer in terms of economies of scale, in terms of costs. You'd have some efficiencies potentially, but it doesn't seem like a striking opportunity necessarily, given our size relative to the others.
You'd get rid of a lot of board members.
Well, that is largely why the sanitary districts.
But it doesn't work.
Because, of course.
I think your regional coordination that was discussed earlier is kind of a counterpoint to, you know, that's where we can look to try to leverage resources.
There was a report done in the 60s that recommended exactly that, that MMWD and North Marin joined together. In fact, North Marin was managed by MMWD when it began. And Rajiv is exactly right. The pushback comes from the electives. That's where the resistance has been. And, you know, clearly you eliminate the two managers, the two, all the doubling of staff, but it's only at the very top. The rest pretty much stays the same. The real issue is what's in it for North Marin? You can see what's in it for us because it would be pretty simple for us to take it over. But for them, they look at us as the high-priced water. They have the low-priced water.
Less of a penny or gallon.
Yeah, yeah. Because they don't have all the overhead we have. They don't have the watershed. They have a pipeline that brings them the water. Stafford is interesting. Even to them, it's basically a puddle. It's like 4,000 acre feet. It's really, I mean, our reservoirs are 30,000 acre feet and ours are small. The ones at Grant David's about 800,000 acre feet. And that's small. Shasta is like 3 million acre feet, you know. So in the scope of things, these are small reservoirs. But in the scope of North Marin, that's even small for them, 4,000 acre feet. It's a very, very small little place. So they have very little overhead on that kind of stuff. They pick up, because they're a county water district. You should have asked that question to Tony when he was here because that's where the pushback comes. But they're a county water district, so they can basically do anything. And they do. They run sanitary districts out in the West. They do all kinds of stuff similar to Sonoma. They're also a county water district. That's a very special, powerful legal entity in California. So, yeah, the issue would be selling it to North Marin. It's like your logic is perfect. You're absolutely right. It's like the joining of the Southern Marin Fire. Perfect. I've been trying to join Belvedere and Tiburon Police Departments since I moved to Tiburon. Yeah. Good luck. We have 11 police cars 24 hours a day for 77 miles of road. Think about that. You know, it's just they're not interested. And it's a similar thing. Belvedere is not interested. Tiburon's interested, Belvedere's not. It's the same kind of issue with North Marin and Marin. So great idea, though.
Any further comment, thoughts, questions? Engineering?
Uh huh.
Thank you, Brett.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
I have no idea.
Thank you, sir.
All right, everybody. I'm the closer of the day, so saving the best for last round. All right, so Engineering Division, they're in charge of everything, planning, designing, construction for our capital program. Putting out about 20 to 25 million dollars in projects a year as of today, but hopefully that'll go up. It's a lot of work. We have a lot of things happening over there. We also have our information technology department and our development services for new service connections, records, GIS, AutoCAD, mark and locate. We get 20 to 100 mark and locate USA tickets a day. So we're sending folks out there marking up the street. But today I'm going to go over some key initiatives for the coming year. And so we're going to focus in on just four, four items. And those are long term capital planning, SAP conversion or of our enterprise resource planning program, and then help desk service contract and district paving program. All right, so with that, long term planning. So historically, CIP has been a budgeted two year plan where we identify the projects and the programmatic budgets for capital maintenance. And that's approved by the board. And so moving forward, and then also in the budget book that is published is a 10 year outlook. And when you look at it in out years, the projects aren't typically identified specifically. It's more programmatic budgets for pipeline replacement, tank, tank maintenance, or tank capital projects, et cetera. So in 2019, we underwent an effort to come up with a 10 year financial plan or model for specific projects. And so miles of pipe, number of tanks to recode each year. And there were many workshops that we had with the public to develop different scenarios for capital projects and then how much those would cost. And we ended up with a hybrid model, which at the time was sort of like a, we had the baseline, you know, we went up in different levels of investment. And we took, we picked a few projects from the, that were out in terms of, you know, exceptional projects such as AMI. And we moved them into this hybrid model. And since that time, though, there's been quite a bit more planning efforts that have gone forward. So for example, our strategic water supply, that's going to come up with a whole nother suite of projects that were not included in that 10 year financial model. In addition, we're currently engaged in a water system master plan that will also come up with new projects that weren't in that 10 year planning effort back in 2019. So water system master plan, for example, will be looking at fire flow requirements, sizing of our pump stations and our tanks and meeting new fire flow requirements. So seismic improvement to some of our sites. So so there's a lot of planning studies that are in progress right now. The master plan, the water supply assessment, the roadmap, the roadmap that will come out of that. There's the rec management plan. I'm sure Sean's going to have some capital projects that come out of that. Conservation plan, IT strategic plan is also currently in draft. And so so what we're going to be doing over the next year is coming up with a 30 year and a 10 year plan that's project specific. And so the work that we're doing now is determining our capital requirements. What is it? What are the projects that we need to accomplish over the next 10, 30 years? And so we'll begin that planning process in September. We'll get all of these project lists together and come up with costs for these specific projects, which ones are priorities, the timing for the projects over 10 to 30 years. We'll have categories. We'll have categories for renewal and replacement. We'll have categories for new water supply projects, a category for system improvement, system efficiencies. And so that process will start in September and we'll also need funding for anticipated emergencies. Moving forward, after after we've determined the capital requirements, then we get into developing the financial alternatives. So here we are with just, you know, the multi year capital improvement plans, but there's so many issues that come into play when you determine how to fund it, right? So there's the external factors like, you know, weather, economics. There's internal factors, culture, condition assessments. There's goals for water supply operations, rate goals, you know, how much is too much, you know, financial goals? How do you, you know, leverage different opportunities for funding to come up with the financial plan? So we're hoping that by May of next year, not only will we have identified projects, specific projects for 10 and 30 year timeframes, but we'll also be looking at how we're going to pay for it. So it'll be a long term capital plan. That's the one big initiative that we'll be working on over the next year. The next one is the IT strategic plan. So I mentioned that we have a strategic plan in process right now and we're identifying needs for that. And we're going to actually go into detail on one specific project, which is the SAP conversion or enterprise resource planning program that we use because that has to be replaced. So I'll get into that in just a minute. But the IT strategic plan has identified quite a few initiatives that need to move forward in the coming year for IT in the coming years. For example, besides SAP, there's our GIS system uses a geographic spatial model and we're going to convert that to a utility network model. So we'll be doing that work. We also are going to be hopefully phasing out our Microsoft Exchange servers to Office 365. So we'll be getting rid of our Cisco phone system, which tends to break all the time and moving on to something that's more online for phone systems. Other efforts are, you know, we're looking at improving the cellular coverage in the watershed. So we've got studies going on for additional towers. You know, we have, we have areas where people lose coverage, they get lost all the time. 95% of our search and rescue is in one area of the watershed where we know we don't have cellular coverage. So and then another big initiative in the IT plan would be the AMI integration. I mean, AMI is great, but there's a lot behind it that goes into AMI integration, getting all of our software, billing, our meter reading programs, talking together and making it work. So going forward, so we're hoping to get our IT strategic plan out for a peer level review this year and we'll finalize it and bring it back to the board in August. Okay, so let's get into detail on SAP conversion. So that's an enterprise resource planning. It refers to a type of software that manages day to day activities such as accounting, human resources, budgeting, procurement, inventory, project maintenance management, and customer relations. And we've been using it for over 23 years. And, you know, I have to say, I've worked for a few different large water agencies that have software packages that are, they don't talk to each other. So the the computerized maintenance management program doesn't talk to the accounting program. And so there's a lot of double data entry or your GIS system isn't integrated with your, with the asset inventory for your accounting and depreciation. But when I came here to Marin, Little Marin, I was so pleased to see how well they had integrated all of these different systems into one. I mean, we can pull up a GIS map, click on the asset, open a work order, right? And charge time and materials to it and then transfer it to our timesheets. Likewise, if we have a customer that needs a new water service connection, we send out a vehicle and a crew. We're tracking the time so that when we go to charge the customer for the new installation, we can deduct it from their deposit and give them the deposit back. So everything's really well integrated here and it's going to be hard to replace. But the problem is that SAP is at end of life. So we've just finished the last available upgrade for SAP. They're not going to give any more upgrades and it's a very complex system. We have it integrated with all those different software packages, including GIS, our Itron meter readers. We have this, this third party application called Liquid UI for user entry screens that tie to GIS to SAP. We could even, when we open a work order, click on a button and it opens up the encroachment permit for that local jurisdiction. So everything we can insert, we can upload photos of the pipe break. I mean, there's lots we can do with it, but the problem is it's at end of life. And so right now we've got a number of consultants on board that help us support SAP. They help us with our tax updates for payroll, you know, every year there's different payroll tax percentages. We have, we have consultants that help us with how SAP talks to our billing software and we put out our billing, our bills to our customers. We have consultants that help us with security patches, login certificates, credentials for our users. We have consultants that help us with training and help us with budget prep, like we're preparing the budget for the next budget cycle. And then also Microsoft Windows integrations. There's always new Microsoft Windows updates that are coming and we have to update SAP to so that they can talk to each other. So that, so now that it's at end of life, at some point, all these external software programs are going to change their communication protocols. And SAP isn't going to keep up with it because they're not going to put out new, any new versions. So while it's talking to all those other external software packages now, it's unreasonable to assume that SAP is going to continue to communicate with all of these other softwares that are out there in the world moving forward. So so we do have to upgrade. There's a number of products that are out there. And so what we plan on doing with SAP is phase one, we'll be issuing an RFP this fall for a needs assessment and doing options review. We'll have vendor demonstrations of all the different packages that are out there. Then after that, we'll have probably that same consultant will have them help us with contract development. So the actual like purchase agreements, hiring all the different consultants and professionals that we're going to need to migrate all of our data over to a new system. So we'll do vendor and consultant selection by the end of next year. And then phase three, implementation. This is already included in our baseline CIP. We have to do it. This is not an extra unfunded project. We're actually, we're making room. We have to do this project. So in us, and so in 25, 2025 to 2026, we'll be sort of setting up the new program. We'll have purchased it. We'll be migrating all the data. We'll be testing it. Then we'll do staff training in the spring. And the hope is that on July 1st, the start of our new budget year for 2026, we'll go live with whatever the new product is that we're going to select. So this is a big effort in the coming years for the engineering information technology department. All right, let's move on to the next initiative. The next initiative is the help desk service contract. So we recently had a number of retirements in our IT department. And so with that, we needed to augment the help desk staff so that because we were, we put a freeze on hiring, a hold on hiring because of all of our budget deficits. So until we can refill those positions, we said, okay, well, let's get a help desk consultant on board. And so we, we put out some RFP, we had different vendors show us their products and we ended up selecting Team Logic. We felt that they were a great fit. They're local, they're in Santa Rosa. If they need to send texts down, they will on time and materials. And so we set up a four month sort of contract just to see if it would work. And so we started on January 3rd and since then we get weekly reports on the number of tickets that were open, how they were resolved, how we're dealing with it. And so we're currently looking, working on that contract. And, and, you know, it helps us with tracking the tickets and also you can see what tickets come in often. You can come up with protocols to fix, you know, common problems. But if it's successful, then as we refill the IT department, we'll be able to utilize those staff, not for sitting at a help desk and delivering keyboards or whatnot, but also helping us with some of these larger initiatives that are coming up in the IT strategic plan. So as, and I went over those at the beginning, you know, some of the efforts that we'll be having over the next couple of years with IT. Okay. So here's some goals for that. We're, we have the contract in place right now. We beta tested it through December. We went live in January. People are logging tickets now and we're working out all the bugs and we'll have a two month review in March, a four month review in May. But we're actually meeting weekly to look over the ticket queue and see how they've been resolved and things are working now. We'll have evaluation of the statistics, the metrics, the pros and cons, and we'll report out to the board in May. So that's the plan with the help desk service company. Okay. Paving program. All right, this is the big mic drop at the end of the day, last topic. And it's really big for us because this is significant cost impact to the district. And I'm going to go through this and in my opinion, something needs to be done about it, but we will get into that. So paving. So when we do paving repairs, we get an encroach requirement from the local jurisdiction. Or when we initiate a capital project, we meet with the, their public works department to determine out, to determine the paving requirements for the permits from the local jurisdiction. Operations pays, the operations budget pays for paving for pipe repairs. The capital budget pays for paving when it's a capital project because it's, it's either subcontracted out by the primary contractor or the primary contractor has equipment to do it themselves. We have a multi year paving contract that's in place. It goes to the board for approval on a periodic basis. All right, paving. Paving has increased 927% since 2012. I say that again, 927% since 2012. So in, in 2018, right here, the County of Marin adopted new paving standards, uniform county standards. And but if you look at the E and R increases in orange, relatively, you know, gradual increase. If you look at our line item contract unit costs from our paving contract, it's about a 10% increase per year, which would amount to about 160% of this number. But this dramatic increase in the cost of paving, 80% of that 900% is due to the increase in paving standards by the county and local jurisdictions. So I'm going to go into more detail on with that.
E and R, is that like a standard engineering measure?
Yeah, engineering.
Construction's a magazine, engineering.
Yeah, it's like a inflation. It's like a CPA.
So there's a Bay Area E and R.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so let me show you what some of these, what this means when they increase the paving requirements. Okay, I, we've shaded this in red so you can see it. The paving isn't really red, it was black. So so this would have been a patch for, say, a new service install pre 2018. Now that it's after 2018, that patch is now curb to curb and further on either feet of the patch. So I'm going to give you a couple of more examples. Here is a patch from pre 2018. Here's a service of repair, maybe this is a leak repair or something. Here's the patch that was required by the county post 2018. Right? Here's one more. Again, here's the actual work. This is where we dug up the street, maybe like a three foot by two foot hole. The paving that the county is requiring now is maybe 25 feet across, maybe 40 feet this way. So you can see why we went from having, you know, a certain cost for paving where the patch would have been here to now it's like, you know, it's like 100 times bigger, right? The patch. So we surveyed nine, this is unique to Marin. I just have to say this, this is unique to Marin. We surveyed 19 neighboring jurisdictions, including Sonoma, Napa, Santa Rosa, Berkeley, Richmond, Pittsburgh. We've been looking all over. Marin County has paving standards that are 60% more paving than others, these other 19 jurisdictions. We're continuing to look out, look throughout California. Now, this is crazy. City of San Rafael in 2022 went even further. Their paving standards are now 130 to 340% greater than these 19 neighboring jurisdictions. I'll give you an example. When we put a new pipeline in the street, we make a trench line that's parallel to the street that's maybe two feet wide. We dig out a hole two feet wide, lay the pipe in. It used to be that we would put in paving four feet wide. We'd overlap the hole a little bit and we'd have a patch down the street four feet wide. Well, the county in 2018 said, no, now it needs to be eight feet wide. San Rafael said if the street is less than 25 feet across, you have to go curb to curb, pave the entire street for a mile. So now instead of a two foot trench, we're paving 25 feet of paving curb to curb for a mile.
So they're getting us to take over road maintenance.
And there was just an article in the IJ that said, look how great Larkspur's doing on their paving. And so this is huge. So what is this doing to us? And it's continued, the trend's continuing to increase. Local jurisdictions are starting to increase their paving standards beyond the Marin County standard, which a lot of them had adopted. So what is it doing to us? So what is it doing to us? The impacts are that we're not doing as much capital projects. We just can't afford it because of the paving costs. Or when they go to repave a road as part of a city project and they say, hey, do you want to replace your pipeline? We say, no, because we can't afford to do our portion of the paving. So when there's a break in the future, you know, the cost of repairing the break becomes more expensive because now they say it's a moratorium street and we have to pave even more than the standard they came up with trees that are old. So it's really having an impact on our costs of service in order to replace pipelines and make repairs. So we're pursuing, so what are we going to do about it? So one thing we're doing is we've increased our paving budget for next fiscal year by 60%. So you'll see that in the current budget. At some point, you would hope that it would plateau, that, you know, we'd finally meet their standard and it would stop going up. What we haven't seen is stop going up yet. And the local jurisdictions are starting to put in even more stringent standards beyond the Marin County standards. So what are we doing? Well, we're hoping to pursue some MOUs for paving exemptions in exchange for performance guarantees because it's our contention that it's not structurally necessary to do that much paving. It's aesthetic is what it is. I mean, it's not that the roadway is going to crack or there's going to be, you know, some failing of the road structure itself. So, you know, can we just do less paving and monitor it? And if you see cracking, then okay, yes, we'll replace it. I mean, we're not going anywhere. We're not like a contractor that's installing something for a homeowner and, you know, is going to complain bankruptcy and walk away. I mean, if something, if a paving patch fails for us, we're going to go out and fix it. I mean, we're not going anywhere. We've been here for over 100 years. Another thing that we're looking into is developing understanding about the legal bounds for increased paving under Prop 218. Because if City of San Rafael requires us to pave curb to curb, you know, for 5,000 feet, then that means that customers from Southern Marin are subsidizing San Rafael's paving requirements because they're so much more stringent, right? So it's not equitable for our customer base to be paving, paving for more strict paving standards in other jurisdictions. So what are the bounds, the legal bounds for Prop 218 and cost of service? I mean, is aesthetic paving really required for water supply and water delivery? So we need to look into that. We're going to bring on an expert to analyze industry standards. And we're going to evaluate discussions, whether or not elevate discussions between our elected officials and other elected officials if necessary. Because a lot of these increased paving standards were created through administrative actions. They never went to their councils, they never went to their board of directors for approval. It was administratively set by, you know, some public works director somewhere. So we might have to elevate discussions between elected someone else. Longer term, we'll consider lobbying for legislative changes through Aqua. So on a stay level, is there some sort of, you know, point in which it's too much paving, you know, for utility repairs and installations? And then also working with legal for legal strategies moving forward. Okay, with that.
So board, board questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
What's the term cost per square foot?
For paving? Cost per square foot for paving, I don't, Mark?
It's a good question. Depending on the thickness, I would say 75 to 100 bucks a square foot. Depends on economy of scale, of course. It's really not the unit price that's.
No, I understand that. I just want the folks, the new guys to understand what we're talking about so they can get a feel for it. And the second question is, what did it cost on Paradise Drive? When you repaired that, what did paving cost?
Paving on Paradise?
You know, when you just fixed, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was getting 60.
So it's about almost a third of the cost or something like that.
Oh, the repair, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could have a break, a pipe break on, say, Sir Francis Street. The paving can cost us $160,000 for a pipe break, well above the timing materials and actually the cost for our crews to go out there and make the repair.
Sure.
The paving is really the most expensive part of the repair.
Maybe we should rent it to the city. Yeah, we'll put it in, but you got to fight back.
The flip side, and right, it's important to understand this, is the history of utilities digging up streets and not high-quality patches necessarily have killed cities, right? The biggest cost center other than public safety is street maintenance. So the way I look at this, the pendulum had probably been in the wrong place, but as pendulums do, it kind of is probably swinging too far. And how do we find that sweet spot? Trying to work collaboratively, but maybe escalating it with other kinds of pressures over time.
Yeah, and two points. Some cities have told us that they give exemptions to homeowners. They don't make the homework do as much as they require us to do. Also, we've also heard from some city managers that, well, they love our news, they love their new plant paving standards because when they call PG&E on their not meeting it, PG&E just cuts them a check. So then they can use it for whatever purpose they like.
Well, you know, if I put the mile of, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I brought this up to one of our prominent county supervisors, and they are ready to talk to us.
Okay.
Because it feels like there's unintended consequences for some of these actions. So although you've said over time, we'll get it and raise the level of conversation, I'd say let's just do it now. All right, let's go, bring those slides, show the impact, and come up with a broad county policy that can be helped facilitate that.
Yeah, likewise with San Rafael. I mean, we're about to go through a resetting process. And if they don't want us highlighting them as the cost of their water bill going up, I mean, which it is, I mean, not to blackmail them into change, but that outstanding difference is just, is so glaring that it's really, and given that it wasn't something that was run by the supervisors, but it was done administratively, that's crazy.
Yeah, they're ready to talk to us.
What we're thinking, I mean, it's awesome for that support, and I think we're going to need it. We do need to develop alternatives, you know? What are alternatives to this uber stringent paving standard? And I think having a paving consultant help lay that groundwork. And, you know, this presentation certainly, and engaging staff at some level. But I agree that this is such a big issue and the escalation is so dramatic, we do need to, all the above.
We need a consultant.
Have we used the same patch, who does the patch work for us? Is it the same company that?
Yeah, we, the on-call paving contract for operational expenses, McClellan.
Yeah, but have we used the same people for a long time?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Can we go back and look at patchwork that we've done over the years and be able to show that the patch? I mean, that to me tells the story potentially is that we can go back and look at patching all throughout our service area and show what has happened. And if it's, you know, if it's not shown.
That's what the draft was, buddy.
What's that?
That's what the draft was.
I think he's talking about like. I'm telling you, showing different. Patches are still good.
We do good work.
Performance.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if they're trying to, I get the problem they were trying to solve, and we're not that problem. And, you know, and I think if we can show that, you know, it strikes me that there may be still something that needs to be done. But it strikes me that like, this is such a 900% increase is an insane change that should have, that should just be rolled back now and then figure out going forward what is the right thing versus continuing something like this because it's super prohibitive.
So I want to also recognize the work you did on IT in your presentation. Because what I loved about it is that you were action-oriented. You had clear plans. You had dates when you want to implement it, and they're soon. They're not like, we'll have another study and we're going to figure it out. I mean, and so I really, I found that refreshing and I appreciate it. I want to make sure that the SAP numbers are all in our budget. And like I've asked some of the other ones, I want to make sure your wish list is out there for us to look at. And let's look at everything that you think you might want, what's not in there so that we can as a board review it and discuss it in detail.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
To follow up on that, I think it's a lot of capital projects before that, you know, especially. And I think this board's motivated to try to get those funded to get back on track. So whatever you need to make that happen, can your staff right now support that with your bandwidth that you have open? It seems like a lot of management on those projects.
We actually have a number of projects where the design is complete and we don't have the construction dollars to move forward. So we're, yeah, we're ready to put them out to bid. It's just for baseline. I'm not talking about water supply or, you know, master planning projects, but baseline miles of pipe and, you know, yeah.
When the SAP subject was discussed last, which was maybe six years ago or something like that, SAP, as I understood it, isn't getting out of enterprise software. Is they're not supporting the package we have.
Right.
There will be a bidder potentially for replacement.
They have a new product called Hana.
Yeah.
Also about a $5 million project. So, yeah, if we were to choose that as our solution, yeah.
Yeah, it was, again, very expensive.
Yeah.
But on that, their new product is not compatible with our product. So it'd be a full scale.
Yeah, yeah. That's not an accident, right? And it's also of interest that the County of Marin tried to put SAP into place for their system. We're unable. And we offered to do it for them, to fix it, and they turned us down. I don't know what that was all about, but that was pretty interesting that our guys could, they thought they could fix the problem the county was having.
I think what SAP, it's just not very user-friendly.
Yeah.
It's at all, I mean.
It's nerdy.
We went through an SAP conversion up in Portland, Oregon, when I worked for the Water Bureau up there. We moved to SAP and they had all sorts of staff training and everybody hated it. But ultimately, they, it's now live and that's what they use. It's a very powerful software. It can do so much. But yes, it's not very pretty. And so maybe that could have been one of the reasons.
Well, Mr. Ellison will be happy to bring Oracle.
Yeah, Oracle, PeopleSoft is great. I love Oracle. But, you know, they have another asset management program called Oracle Work and Asset Management. There's lots of products out there on the market now. So it's city works, I mean, there's many things to look at, which is why we'll be bringing on a consultant for vendor demonstrations, so.
But we're still looking, like you said, five million or three million or some number like that.
Three to five, yeah, big bucks, yeah, yeah.
Crystal, coming back to the infrastructure and asset management plan, we've talked a lot in the past about how to prioritize activities by risk. When you do, you know, present that plan or bring it up for discussion, hopefully that will be, you know, well spelled out. And I'm curious about a risk management process that's fairly common in for big utilities in other countries, starting in Australia and now a lot in Europe, called water safety planning. It's a hazard risk management process. Is that something that we've considered implementing here? Or is, or do we already have enough parallel procedures that we don't have to, you know, reinvent the whole thing?
Australia is known as having the gold standard for asset management. And at my time in Portland Water Bureau, we adopted Australian methods. It's also known as reliability-centered maintenance. We sent folks to Australia to get trained and back and forth. So what we do here today at Marin Water is very similar with condition assessments, you know, risks-based prioritization of, you know, the asset risk based on the probability of failure and the consequence of failure. And so then figuring out which projects to do first. So yes, certainly that's what we're doing today. And we have pipe models and tank model condition assessments. So we are utilizing those techniques to come up with our capital program today.
Right, I mean, it's not that far from common sense.
Right, yeah.
It's just a matter of, but it's probably, it takes some effort to implement.
Yes, very much so, yes.
Other board questions? Sir with the hat?
Potholing. Does it apply to potholing this problem? And can you do more repairs on a potholing basis?
Well, potholing is typically used to get depths of pipe, right? Or depth of the surrounding utilities that may be in conflict. And it's used normally for design purposes so that when you're coming up with your plans, with your profiles and your plan sets, you can tell the contractor ahead of time, watch out for this PG&E line and, you know, this is how deep you're going to have to dig. We can determine quantities on backfill material and disposals for spoils. Potholing cannot, is not typically used for repair. However, we did use potholing, you know, back vector extraction for some of our cathodic protection units where you have to dig down for the wires and replace for the anodes. So it can't vacuum, vacuuming out a hole can be used sometimes. But, and the amount of paving that's required for a pothole certainly is a lot less than, you know, but we can't get down and make a pipe repair without digging back at least two or three feet, you know, on either side, so.
Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to put in my two cents for SAP. I know it's a complex database system, but it's an enterprise relational database. And no matter what, you know, we move to from SAP, it's going to be a complex system. And trying to migrate our data regardless of whether it's SAP, Hana, or Oracle, or whatever, is a very huge project. And it will be costly. But I just wanted to say SAP's been, you know, this particular product, as Larry said, is reaching its end of life. But SAP, the company, is still state of the art. And its product SAP Hana is very widely used and completely legitimate in the GIS world for sure. So I just wanted to put in my two cents. And thank you for your presentation.
Crystal, one thing you didn't touch upon is the cost you have to pay on each repair for water that goes to the bay, treated water that's going to New Bay. And I know the fines are high there. But Ben touched upon something that's been a craw with me for years. I think it was about 2017, our street Coleman Drive, we got new mains put in. By the way, Coleman, I found out who it was named after. It was the first water manager here. Interesting, you know? And the, down the street from me is the original, it's still flowing, the original well is on Robert Dollar Drive, and it still flows all year long. But what I'm going to bring up is I kind of see why this happened, even though it's kind of insane that you've got to do all that. Because on my street, the contractor, the, the, the district was great. I was able to move my meter right to my home because it was four doors down is how they designed it. They put four of them together in one place. That's another thing. So working with the district was wonderful on this. But now our street is, our street had been repaved maybe two years before the project came in. I go, well, now, why wasn't it done? That's besides the point. It has broken apart. It has sunk. It's completely uneven. I've been upset, I am upset about it. Every time I walk there, I'm like, I want to talk to you guys about getting that contractor back out, doing the job correctly. But I can see where a city may have looked at this and go, look what we have now, because you can see it's all cut, where the pipe was laid years ago. I mean, it's so clear because it's just, it wasn't a good job.
When was it done?
When?
Yeah, approximately.
Ben, I think maybe 2017, but I'm not certain.
But the city came in and repaved?
No, 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 no. The contractor only did the strip. So now, they did the job poorly is what I, and I'm talking as a layperson.
Okay.
Because the street was really beautiful with the repaving. We were so happy. It took forever to have that happen. Now the street looks actually worse than it did prior to the repaving because it would, it would seem that when they compacted the soil underneath and on top of the pipe, they didn't really put the effort in that they should have.
Yeah, we do have a compaction testing firm on call, you know, under contract.
Yeah.
But it, I'll have to look into it. It could have been the homeowners paid for the contractor.
No.
Sometimes that happens where.
No, it was all the way down Coleman.
Okay, we'll look into it, we'll look into it. Sometimes.
When the new main was cleared.
Okay, we'll look into it, yeah.
Yes, particularly right where I live.
Okay, sure, yeah. Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah.
All right, I have one more question. Do we still have paving moratoriums if we, you know, so if we break pavement to fix a main, a break, that we have to pay more for those under moratorium?
Yeah, they, streets that are under moratorium have even more extensive paving requirements. So the patch is bigger, you know, the extent of paving goes higher when it's a moratorium street versus, you know, a 50-year-old street that's cracked and looks like alligator, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Expect some pushback on this. I'm involved in the city of Paris, France, with the same issue. They're doing exactly the same thing. They argue about checkerboarding. That's what they call it, when you've got a series of laterals being dug up, like lead pipe replacement. They don't allow them to pave over the patch.
Right, and that's.
They have to pave the whole thing.
That's one of the new standards now, is that, let's say there was a PG&E patch next to where we did a pipe break patch. And we'll have to pave all the way over to the other side of the PG&E patch, because they don't want patches next to patches.
Yep.
So yeah, we'll have to, that isn't part of the new regulations, yes. Okay, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Crystal. That wraps up the presentations. What we want to make sure of is that you all have, that we, they, have, have connected with you on the things you need connected with, first of all. Is there anything that you want to discuss or you thought about that didn't get discussed today?
And I, I would add to that if I could.
Sure.
Kind of two general, maybe, categories. One is items that we didn't talk about that you'd like us to go back and think about in terms of this annual goals, annual priorities. And then, did anything get stimulated that you want us to put on our tracking list for the strategic plan discussions? I mean, some, some of the comments I captured some, but I think those two are important questions for the board in terms of where we're going, of having, you know, generally agreed upon, these are the priorities and goals for the coming year, and then prepping for the deep discussions on the strategic plan.
I think a unified theme for me would be for the board to see more clarity on the alternatives for investment opportunities in each of these areas as part of the finance committee, I believe, so that we can understand what's baked into these plans that you're showing us in terms of budget and rates, and what is the wish list items that might be missing from it that we should be able to see and consider.
Ben, do you feel like there's anything that you need from the board, you know, while we're here? I mean, it seems like the big thing, one of the big things going on is rate study and all that's built into that, and that's going to be really big for you all.
Yeah, I mean, to, to me, the, you know, we're going to get to the end goal of today at a follow-on meeting and bring kind of a more refined set of goals informed by the discussion. And I think we have a good place to go there. And then we're going to get on with all of the work. And, right, the board appreciates this is work that's on top of the day-to-day baseline and the unexpected stuff that hits. So, I mean, it does feel like to me we're, and I know, you know, in some discussions with staff, this felt stretched some of these milestone dates and goals. And I think that's healthy. And what I've told staff is, these are not commitments for dates. We're going to have ongoing conversations with the board and talk about, like, our 360. I mean, you know, I promised our board president milestones we have implemented on that, and we've had a problem with the system, and I talk, explain it. So anyway, what we'll come reporting out to the board generally where these are and deep dives on committees, and really the way we're thinking about it, these items reflect, you know, to a general extent, what you'll be seeing in committees, in the work of committees to further delve into these and refine them and build on them and all that. And I, I thought Brent had a good point in an earlier discussion on, this in a way can be looked at, and I wasn't really thinking about that, but to some extent as a warm-up in a way for the strategic plan. Although I do want to say, that's going to be far bigger in its breadth and depth in so many ways. And talk about, you know, organizational strength and, you know, visioning of what we want to be in 10 years and 20 years. Then talk about things we haven't talked about. I think most of you probably know we had a pipe failure this morning. It happened to be in this building, right? But the, you know, this, this is an aging infrastructure building, and that's something we're thinking about too. So there's a lot in the strategic plan that we really haven't delved into with the board, and certainly not today. And I, I do think you're kind of appreciating annual versus long-term strategic planning that we're going to get into. No, I, I'm personally feeling good. I mean, we've got really some good feedback, good comments, and I think, you know, a lot of times, right, success is in the journey. So hopefully today, you know, has been, you know, at the end of the day, worthwhile for you. You're all busy, you, we have a brutal February schedule. I mean, I'm appreciative of your time and input, and that's really my hope, that this day felt well-spent, you know, in how it was designed. But I, I'm interested, you know, it can be direct outside of this, or now, either way, you know, what didn't work and how to think about these going forward. And those will be ongoing discussions. And the strategic plan certainly will be developed differently in terms of early engagement of the board. You know, it's going to feel very different and more roll up our sleeves, more collaborative. This was more of a one-way conversation than is ideal in a planning session, and I recognize that, and, you know, there's a lot of reasons it was designed this way to get it done. But, you know, with experience of our new board members, we're going to be well-positioned for a more interactive process in our ongoing planning efforts.
Well, I, I just say then, that thank you again, like, in my short tenure on the board, this meeting helped bring me to focus the body of work in our different committees than, far better than I've, than I see. And I think that this work should continue in the committees. And I think, you know, where the milestone dates and so forth need to change, I would, I would look to the committees, I would hope, for the ones I'm on and others are, that to track these and if they adjust, so be it, but like, let that be something that's tracked by the committee and then brought back to the regular board. Because this is, you know, we're, you know, step back to who we are. We are elected people, elected to represent our division, the people who live in our community, and to be able to talk about them and talk about these things. This is a great list of things, to be able to talk about all the things that we do, in addition to providing water that comes out of your tap when you turn it on, and you don't think about it most days, but it takes a lot to be able to do that. And this really gives us a lot of material to be able to talk about. And, and I see a lot of, of really, really critical work that we have to do just to keep, make sure that we do have that reliable water. I think it's easy to let things like HR slip, because you're like, well, is that really what makes a drop of water come out of your tap? And the answer is yes. But, and so I appreciate that we've brought up, you know, to a higher level of awareness, a lot of the other things that are more peripheral to delivering that drop of water. And I think that's embodied in this list of deadlines. And so I appreciate the work and the, and the probably the scary commitment that maybe a number of staff here and others are feeling about these, but, you know, we want to see these things move forward, and we're here to be supportive about that.
Yeah, and I, just a couple other very quick comments. Wanted to note that, just as an indicator, the first cut where I was asking for, you know, priorities for the coming year to, as we started to develop this, probably got three or four pages from engineering, right? It's not what you saw today, but that gives a sense of what you didn't see, right? And the others were more routine projects and work. And lastly, of course, we didn't have Darren in operations of talking, and part of that is, their work is largely routine. It's the bulk of the work of the organization, the most vital work. So it felt a bit awkward to me not having it here in this sort of planning session. And certainly, when we get into the strategic plan, we'll be talking about that area and all areas of how do we strengthen it in different ways going forward.
Mr. Chair, there is a comment from the public. If you want to take anything.
Let's finish up the beginning first.
Thanks, Ben. Ben, one, one request, you know, I, you know, there's so many experts in the room on different topics, but we, you know, we're, we're a small part of the bigger water sector of California, much less the world. There are so many other groups facing similar issues. There are so many researchers that are on the cutting edge of water resilience, probably the best in the world are just across the bay or not very far away. Do we have options for learning from those, you know, having maybe a quarterly presentation, you know, from a Berkeley professor who's looking at the latest in data modeling or technology? And then just related to that is, what, what's, what are your directions on engaging with Aqua?
Yeah, so, great, two opportunistic comments. I'd say generally, and we fall right in it, as a utility sector, whatever, we haven't yet mined the incredible resources we have with these world-class universities and academics. And it, it's really a good comment, and there's some opportunities out there that we are plugged into, and we've worked with Davis and others. But it, it's a very good comment and something we need to think about and build upon for sure. And really as an initiative, that would be, I think, you know, something good, strategic plan. Get it in there, map out what we're going to do, and really have a deeper discussion on it. The, what was the other one?
Aqua.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I think my predecessor was maybe a member or some getting this.
Yeah, so there's two associations that I've been meaning, and this is a great opportunity to talk to the board about. There's Aqua in the state and AWWA nationally. There's far more, but just to take those two. Aqua is a statewide association that I feel all board members should have the opportunity at least once, and, you know, you may, as we've had other board members, choose to get more engaged. And we do send staff, you know, a modest number to these conferences, but to have board, because it, it really is eye-opening, as you'd imagine, that everyone's struggling. This could be an annual planning session for any water utility in the state, and we don't have to recreate the wheel. And these associations are such a powerful way to look at the broader picture and learn from others. And Aqua is really designed for electeds. Probably 50% of attendees are elected officials at Aqua. So the agendas and the material are really towards that. There's two conferences a year. The one that's coming up is in May, right around our scheduled rate hearing. We'll see how that goes and.
There's one in the north and one in the south.
Right, every year. AWWA is the national association that's very different than Aqua, right? Aqua is more kind of policy, legislative, those sorts of things, with other things as well. AWWA is just like, welcome to the water utility world. And, you know, you have a showroom with equipment that, you know, you can't get through in a full day, that, and just multiple tracts of symposiums and papers. And that's a very, it's very different, right? It's kind of probably more designed for the water practitioner, but no question, board members going to that, there's just so much value in all the sessions and everything else. So, you know, and that's supported by the district to encourage attendance. So, you know, talk to me individually or however, and as he's come up, I'll be in communication in terms of your interest. I mean, I know, you know, it's not, you, you guys probably have a life outside being board members, you know? So, but, you know, at least trying to, maybe in the next year or so, find the opportunity to attend one of these and just get a feel for the industry beyond what you're seeing here, really would add value.
AWWA is in Toronto this year, early June, like, June 4th or something like that, just for reference.
Do you generally go?
I do.
Also to Aqua?
No, I don't go to Aqua. I've, I've never warmed up to Aqua personally. What they're called in the industry is water buffaloes. You can kind of picture how that fits in. You know, it's, it's, Ben's right, it's a good group for certain things. I just never warmed up to it as an information transfer from my interest level. There's also the California Nevada Water Rush Association, which has meetings in California or Nevada. And it's, it's kind of a base version of a, of annual conference for the AWWA. But it's important to realize, they're both trade associations, they're both lobbyists. It's, it's what they really do, you know?
And we'll put a plug in for Aqua, just because Larry and I have obviously different expertise backgrounds. So for, for legal issues and maybe not the engineering issues the same, but for legal issues and what's going on from kind of a more generic or general perspective, it's very helpful. California law is specific to California, so it doesn't always translate nationally. And so I think it is probably more helpful for, for that, from that aspect, and some, maybe some more like regional localized issues that come up. So it's just a different.
Legislative advocacy.
Legislative at the state level.
What Larry really said.
Yeah, so there's just different.
And they choose great locations. I mean, Aqua is frequently in Monterey and places like that, you know, it's a nice thing to go. I mean, it's pleasant.
Palm Springs.
Palm Springs.
Palm Springs, yeah.
Sir?
I think Ben will be sympathetic to this fire risk. The last major fire in Marin was in 1945, and it burned almost the entire watershed for the water districts had it been in place. Oh, yes, it was in place, but the water district got burned over. And that's a, a major risk. It's, it's sort of an elephant in the room that hasn't been discussed and what the cost might be to protect against it, whether or not you need more fire insurance as a district, I don't know. But fire risk is a major problem in Marin, and we've been lucky, and we've not been hit yet. But there's a very good chance that that is not likely to be the case. So I would, I would like somewhere in the table of review of looking at fire risk and how to take care of it and what the capital cost might be to do so.
Put a note on there, so we, but let, let me just tell you what's going to hap, you're going to, on the website is going to be this video eventually. I don't know exactly when. We're all going to make notes and compare them and get those out from the, from this today, from your input, and the PowerPoint will also be there. So I think Ben will probably then take this, those apart and say this belong, you know, sort them on committees, on maybe some go to the strategic plan, some go to committees. But that's how you hopefully won't lose track of this, is we're going to keep it up on.
I guarantee commit. We aren't going to lose track of any comment that was raised. No, I mean, we aren't. We, I think the board knows, we track, that comes from a board member, weekly at staff meetings and decide, we bring it to a committee, do we respond directly to a board member? Some end up with a longer shelf life as we're trying to figure out what to do with that comment. But feel free, if there's any time that is extended. But today, these are all going to come back to the board with specifically how we're proposing to address them and what format and what way. Because otherwise, it's a waste of time.
I'll drop it back to the board chair and the GM, and you two can decide what to do.
Anything else I think we're doing? Okay, well, I'll just say the obvious thing, which is, again, thank you to, first to the staff for all the work. I know what we saw was the tip of an iceberg of a lot of other things, and you did a great job at not overwhelming us with too much. I mean, I think it was really gripping, frankly. Every presentation was great information that we need to understand and continue to work on with you folks. It demonstrates, frankly, the expertise that you all have. You're all experts at what you do. And I know we are not the experts that any of you are in what you do. And hence, you know, humbly, we're, we're here as elected officials to, to hear what you have to say about how we should approach our finances or conservation, or how we manage our watershed, and give our feedback. But also, at the same time, respect the fact that you folks are experts at what you do, and we're really, really lucky to have a district that has great staff and make sure we retain that staff. And, and just really, a, a huge thank you to all the work that's been done and to the, again, to the public that has come today to participate. Many of you are seen unregulably at board meetings, much appreciated, and, and it's because you care about the watershed and you care about our district, and that really matters. And, and, and I just can't say thank you enough to. And, and I just can't say thank you enough to all the support work that we did, just pulling the presentation together.
And one very quick add-on, but significant, a day like today doesn't just happen. So I just wanted to thank Adrian and a number of other folks for helping put this on, the logistics and coordination. So thank you, Adrian.
I would very appreciate it over here.
And it's great to see you all, not on screen, with a number and...
Okay, with that, we're done. Thank you.